Call the rigor meeting of the Pennington County Commission Order. Just encourage you to silence your cell phones or pagers. There's copies of the agenda and speaker request forms in the back of the room. If you want to speak on a subject, ask you to fill out one of those speaker request forms and turn it into Holly Hennies sitting at your right. So we'll start with a moment of silent reflection and a pledge of allegiance led by Commissioner Laster.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States.
To the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Laster. Just point out Commissioner Roskinak is joining us via Zoom today, healing up from a little surgery. And so the next item is to review and approve the agenda.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second to approve the agenda. All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Consent agenda, Holly Hennies.
Good morning, Commissioners. For public notice, the Board of Commissioners uses a consent agenda to act on non-controversial and routine items. The consent agenda is acted upon by one motion and vote of the board. Items may be removed from the consent agenda and placed on the regular agenda at the request of a board member or a citizen. Today's consent agenda contains the following items. Approval of the minutes from the special meeting of November 10th, 2022. Approval of the minutes from the regular meeting of November 15th, 2022. Number seven is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle from Black Hill Studio of the Arts. Number eight is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Fraternal Order of Police Lodge, number two. Number nine is to acknowledge the notice of intent to conduct a raffle for the Najah Shriners. Number 10, approval of the 2022 memorandum of understanding between SDSU Extension and Pennington County. Number 11, to approve the 2023 scenic township maintenance and snow removal agreement as submitted by the Highway Department. Number 12 is to appoint Thomas Valet and Lee Bories as Pennington County Veteran Service Officers through the first Monday in January 2027 per South Dakota Codified Law 33A-1-22. Number 13 is to declare surplus for the purpose of sale, 1Glock 43, serial number BHYK533. And finally, number 14 is to declare a surplus for the purpose of disposal outdated and inoperable equipment as submitted by the Sheriff's Office.
Are there any members of the public that wish to have any items that are listed on the consent calendar removed from the consent calendar for discussion? Seeing none, is there any commissioner that would like to have any item removed from the consent calendar?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Just for clarification, Holly, item number 10, I thought you said 2022 for the MOU of the SDSU Extension, and it's 2023, right?
2023, next year's, yes, sir.
I just wanted to clarify.
Okay. Carry none, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So move to approve the consent agenda.
Yeah, we've got a motion and a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Motion carried. This time, I would ask for a motion for an executive session for contractual pending litigation.
Mr. Chair, I move we go into executive session pursuant to SDCL 1-25-234 contractual pending litigation.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Motion carried. Take a motion to move to come out of executive session.
So move.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Motion carried. Next item, item 16, Commissioner Laster, this is relative to your draft letter.
Yes, sir. I made some tweaks to it, and basically after our last conversation, I made some of the tweaks that were concerns, and so now I have it presented in a final format for us to either discuss and take action on. I think it kind of fits what everybody was looking at, and I hadn't heard any negative since it had been changed, since I edited it. So I stand for any questions.
I think you've improved it greatly. Appreciate the effort on it.
All right.
Would you like to read it at this point, since it has changed substantially?
Sure, I can do that. Absolutely. This letter is to the Honorable Governor Noem, Honorable Senators, Representatives, Honorable Secretary of State, technically, I believe that is, it's Monae Johnson, I heard she just got sworn in, so we'll just have to tweak that right there, and then in the Honorable State Board of Elections that proposed changes to the South Dakota election laws and establishing post-election audits. The Pennington County Board of Commissioners hereby request the Honorable Governor Noem, State Legislators, Monae Johnson, Board Elections to support changes to the South Dakota election laws in 2023 in the 2023 legislative session which strengthen the integrity, transparency, and the public trust in the election results. The election law changes requested are follows. Establish a post-election audit committee or establish a post-election audit criteria for the state. Review which breaks down to reviewing the National Association of Secretaries of State Task Force on their voter verification, post-election audit recommendations, and establish a PEA criteria for South Dakota. Mind you, we're only one of six states that does not have that. Establish quality checks on all items utilized in an election. Contracts for electronic voting or tabulation devices must include machines must be open and inspected by the Secretary of State's office or designated to ensure machines are in compliance with state law. Second part of this is strengthen the requirements in South Dakota Codified Law 1217B-2 as shown. Requirements for automatic tabulating, electronic ballot marking, and election voting equipment systems, approval of changes or modifications. Any automatic tabulating or electronic ballot marking system used in election shall enable the voter to cast a vote for all offices and on all measures on which the voter is entitled to vote. No automatic tabulating, electronic ballot marking, or electronic voting equipment system shall be connected to the Internet, nor shall it have any hardware installed to allow it to be connected to the Internet. Any equipment making a connection to any network is considered compromised. No ballot marking device, and that's the bulk of the change in that particular SDCL, I won't read the rest of it. Review South Dakota Codified Law concerning residency requirements and consider strengthening the residency requirement to establish residency for 30 days prior to voter registration. Criteria for voting residence, for the purpose of this title, the term residence means the place in which a person has fixed his or her habitation for the last 30 days prior to registration and to which the person, whenever absent, intends to return. That's the main change to South Dakota Codified Law 121-4. And then review South Dakota Codified Law concerning all voter laws and established harsh penalties when the laws are broken. Public trust will be maintained or restored when they see that the law has a penalty if not followed. And finally, review the South Dakota voter registry and registration form and ensure South Dakota Codified Law makes it clear for the auditor and the public what the standard is for each of the items in box 12. Thank you for your consideration of the above recommended changes in order to protect and strengthen the integrity of the elections in South Dakota. We are happy to be of assistance in any way necessary as you work through these challenging issues. Please support recommended changes that will ensure South Dakota and the voters' voices are upheld with integrity and transparency. Sincerely, the Pennington County Board of Commissioners.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
I move to approve the chairman's signature on the letter proposing changes to the election laws as presented.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Back to the commission, any further discussion by the commission?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
I'd like to thank Travis again for all his hard work on this. Holly helped with some of the information to find it, and Cindy, but Travis did the legwork on it. He worked with many citizens as well to get that information and called many, many people to make these changes for our commission and to move this forward as is. So I appreciate all your work, Commissioner Laster.
Thank you, Commissioner Hickock, and thank you for all those who played a part in helping get this scored away in the right format and tweaking it so that it meets what we need to have happen for the state of South Dakota, or at least from our concerns in moving it forward.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Evidence from the auditor, Cindy Muller.
Good morning, Commissioners. Cindy Muller, Pennington County Auditor. The first item that I have is on our Corona State and Local Fiscal Recovery Funds, or as they've been called, ARPA funds. And originally, we had you make the motion to designate the $10 million that was claimed as lost revenue to the jail project. Now, we've looked at some other things with the bonding that we've done and with some of the reporting requirements that are laid out, and I would ask you to rescind that motion and then make a motion to designate that $10 million to use as operations in the general fund.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Just a question, why are we changing it, Cindy, are we, is it because rules changed and we have to?
It's because of the reporting requirements that we would have to go through with all of the purchasing and that sort of thing, contracts and such for the jail. It's just going to be an easier switch for us to pay for those things out of the general or put that money in the general fund, pay for it with that, because the restrictions are going to be a lot less, and we can use it in a manner that's not going to require all of those pieces being met.
So it would still be used for the jail, it's just, and when appropriating it or appropriating it to the jail, those, that transfers and things just, audit-wise, just look, not look, they are?
The ARPA funds will not be used for the jail. That's the main goal of having you rescind that. But by putting the operation, or you know, using that $10 million for operations in the general fund, that will free up money in the general fund to be used for that project.
Okay, I think that's what I said.
I know, it's kind of just clear with money, but.
You're okay, it's just how the transfers are done, and it makes it, I don't know the word, easier, but it follows the rules and the guidelines of which we have to follow.
Yes.
Thank you, Ms. Cindy.
It'll simplify your accounting process.
Exactly, exactly. That's probably the best way.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move to rescind the motion to utilize the $10 million of the state and local physical recovery funds, ARPA, that was claimed as revenue loss for the future needs as outlined in the Pennington County Jail Study, and that was made April 5th, 2022, Board of Commissioners meeting.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Further discussion by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move to designate the $10 million of the state and local physical recovery funds, ARPA, that was claimed as revenue loss to operations in the general fund.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second. Any public comment on this? Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried.
And then the other part of that memo was to let you know that I'm working on a contract with Clifton Larson Allen to help with monitoring, setting up the monitoring, meeting all the requirements for the subrecipient grant for Rabbit Belly Sanitary. And then the second part of that contract is going to be helping Casey and I work through the reporting on the state, making sure that we have all of the documentation that we need, getting any questions answered as to if we're using something in the right way as far as the ARPA funds go, or if we've got something in there that can't be claimed.
Okay, thank you, Cindy.
Thank you.
Item B, operating transfer, accumulated building fund.
Yes, this is to move money into the accumulated building fund for the purchase that we made of the 900 concourse. I know we've done the purchase, this is just to clean up on the books for me.
Is there a motion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
So how much do we have in there besides the $10 million we just transferred for building, for buildings?
In the accumulated building fund, I did not bring that number with me.
How about general fund?
I don't have that number either. I would have to go through and look at the budget.
So it's a $10 million plus more, or we're using the $10 million we just transferred?
The $10 million is offset in the general fund by the money that we put, that we're going to be using of the ARPA funds in the general fund. This is 6.9 million of that $10 million could be used for this.
Okay, so we had put $10 million for jail and $10 million for this, or again, we're transferring the $10 million and then we're using this?
What you just did with the $10 million is totally separate from me being able to put the cash in the accumulated building fund, so we don't have a negative cash balance at the end of here.
That's all I needed to know, thank you, Cindy. Appreciate that.
Mr. Chair.
LaCroy.
I'd make the motion to approve an operating transfer in the amount of $6,970,000 from general fund to the accumulated building fund.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Back to the commission, any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried. Item C.
This is the renewal of retail on sale liquor with Sunday sales for Sweet Grass Skin Shipwreck Bar and Grill. We would ask for approval of the renewal of that license. So moved.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second?
Second.
Any, is this change of ownership, is that what we're dealing with here?
This isn't a transfer, it is a renewal. Were they late in getting their renewal in for the year?
Yeah, they got it too late. Forgot to go with the rest of them last time.
Okay, okay. Any public comment? Back to the commission, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you.
Item 18, Buildings and Grounds, Mike Cool or Kevin Burton?
Morning Commissioners, Kevin Burton, project manager with Buildings and Grounds, here before you today to seek authorization to proceed with a request for proposals for a design team for the new 900 concourse building so that we can renovate it to fit the administrative offices that we'll be moving out there. Want to try to utilize local talent or give everybody an opportunity to have fair competition to be able to design this particular project. We're still going to utilize BKV as that 30,000-foot level overseer to make sure it still coordinates with our needs assessment and the future plans we've got for the rest of our campuses.
Chairman.
Questions, yeah, Commissioner Adcock.
So the 1.5 to 3.5, do we already have that budgeted, Kevin?
No, that's just, without getting further into some design processes and really understanding where we're at, we can't really establish too solid of a budget yet. Typically, when we've reached 30% design or through schematic design, we'll be able to put a lot better price, we'll have a lot further understanding of how the price reflects in this.
Okay, and then with the funding source, or as a commission, Holly, do we have a funding source for remodels on, are we using accumulated building, do you know that? Building. Cindy, maybe you know. Miss Cindy, our auditor. Thank you, Miss Cindy. I think we talked about this, but I can't remember it and it'd be nice for the public to know.
We did the bonding, so we can either use accumulated building funds and draw that down, or we can draw down the bond funds.
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, Kevin, for all your work on this. I know it takes a lot of work to get where you guys are today, and I know you've probably basically been on these buildings, been overwhelmed with Mike and your crew, because that's a lot of stuff that we're remodeling and doing, plus you're taking on what we already had, so thank you for everything you guys do. And for the future, I think it's going to be good, and I'm glad they brought you on, Kevin.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner Roskinak.
I'll move the grant, the authorization, the solicitor request for proposals for design firms for the 900 concourse drive remodel project.
Got a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
And a second. Any public comment? Back to the commission, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 19, Carol Bancroft. So Carol, welcome. Just a quick introduction, Carol has joined Pennington County as the new Human Resources Director, and she's been on the job now for a week, so we expect you to know everything.
Gosh, I knew everything already last Friday, Gary.
Okay. That's a good answer.
So, good morning, Commissioners, that, as Gary indicated, Carol Bancroft, the Human Resources Director for Pennington County, and the Compensation Committee that we met to review Policy 3.18, the Compensation Administration, and the committee agreed to the proposed revisions that we would cover today, and you'll find those in your packet in Exhibit A. So in this packet, that in Exhibit A, you're also going to find that the original policy, 3.18, is what you will be referencing, and it has the deletions to the policy are with a strike-through, so you've got that as your reference, and then the recommended revisions to the policy are highlighted in yellow. So the following revisions are in these sections, and if we're looking at the first page of Exhibit A, that new hires, that one addresses the adjustments to the starting rate, that it may be made at the highest step based on documented variable, or verifiable experience. So that's the key phrases in there is the documented, verifiable experience. And then under the section of transfers that we removed, as far as lateral transfers, and made it more general in terms of outline transfers and how that is treated. And then under annual steps, that the section is no longer relevant, so that has been removed from the policy in its entirety. And then if you'll turn to Page 2 of the policy, that under performance steps, the language has been simplified to recognize that the documented performance levels and to include the department head and elected officials can exercise their discretion if the budget supports it. And then under time of service is probably some of the bigger changes that you'll see in this, that the committee is recommending that time of service bonuses be awarded each year after an employee has achieved 10 years of continuous benefit service. And Exhibit B in your packet outlines as far as there would be 208 employees that would be awarded this in the year of 2023. So when you're looking at Exhibit B, that in the first three columns on that document, that that is the calculation to show the estimated cost. So on that left-hand side, in those three columns, that the first column indicates the years of service on each line, and then the second column indicates how many employees qualify for that year. So for example, for 10 years, there's 18 employees. And then the third column within that section of the document indicates as far as what the estimated cost would be for those 18 employees. So as you work down that portion of the document, you'll see that the total estimated cost for making this revision would be $178,100. And just to compare that, to get some historical information, that in prior years is the information that's on the right-hand side of that document. So in 2019, you'll see that the cost, and it was calculated on all employees that were over 10 years, so similar strategy, and that was $143,770. And likewise, in 2020, for all employees over 10 years, was $141,384. And then in 2021, the policy was revised to pay the bonus to landmark and off-scale employees, and so the cost of that was $56,162. And then in 2022, the cost will be estimated at $59,671. So the next section is compensation levels for elected officials, and the committee is revising that to mirror any wage scale adjustments that are made for the same year for all employees. And then the compensation scale review section, that replaces the verbiage of Pennington County Human Resources with the Compensation Committee is the one that is responsible for reviewing market wage data annually. So adopting the proposed revisions in this recommendation of the Compensation Committee, and as such, it cannot be acted on until the next meeting on December 20th. Thank you.
Questions for Carol?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Thank you, Carol, for doing this, and I have a couple of questions. The Compensation Committee was just revamped, rebrought back.
Yes.
And so this is probably your first experience with it, what are some of your thoughts?
We had very good discussion, I was able to participate in the Compensation Committee last week, and so I was very impressed with the work that had already been done and the format that had been laid out. And we did have some discussion that I was able to interject to talk about as far as non-exempt and exempt employees and how those are treated and such, but that was more like in the holidays. In this one, we were going in and cleaning up more of the grammar that a lot of the work had already been done, so I'm impressed.
Okay, and I do like the part about the elected officials being the same as the employees. I think we worked hard to get us up to state where we should be, and I think doing the 4% like the employees is good to try and keep up with market, so good work, thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Carol?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adcock.
Any questions, welcome, Carol. I enjoyed having Carol in our meeting for being new, she knew her stuff, and she's willing to look up and work at what we've already done, and then put her input on some of the things that were very beneficial for this committee, so thank you, Ms. Carol.
You're very welcome.
This committee is a really good committee, I like it because it brings more trust to the department heads on what they're doing. For longevity, I always thought our employees that have been with us over 10 years should get that longevity pay. Most people do in their jobs, or whether it's private or government jobs, I think. When you have that time in, especially today, because we're lucky to retain people for a couple of years, then we have 18 employees that have been with us over 10 years, and that's pretty amazing. So it's been the most interesting committee I've been on in a long time because of all the things I'm learning and all the people on there that are teaching me a lot about some of the stuff I thought I knew, but I did not know. So it's very interesting, and it's interesting to see how that, the Condry and the Gallagher study is just, needs to be revamped, or combined, or something else done with it, so it works for all departments in Pennington County, because we have 842 employees, that's a lot of employees. And that's 17 departments that you're trying to maneuver a Condry or a Gallagher study that is, as you probably figured out from having employees and working in big companies before, Carol. It's hard to please everybody in a sense, but you want to bring some solution to it. So I thank you for coming to our county and be willing to be our HR person, because that's a big, big responsibility, and I just think you're going to do a wonderful job, and just seeing you at work already has been pretty awesome. But I really like this committee and what they've done for the changes and for our employees as well, so thank you, committee, for all your work, because it took us a lot of meetings to get where we are today.
Well, thank you, Commissioner, and it's an honor and a privilege to serve. So the next, any other questions?
Any other questions for Carol? Any other questions for Carol? Okay.
So, the next item that we reviewed was Policy 4.2, that deals with holidays, and the committee did agree to these proposed revisions, and they're in Exhibit A, and there's not quite as much to look at here in this policy, that you'll find in Exhibit A that there are no deletions, so you are looking at the original policy, there are additions to the policy that were made, and so those are highlighted in yellow. Then, in the first paragraph, you're going to see that the language includes the proposal to address holiday policy for the 24/7 operations, including options for the usage of vacation time or comp time, and so this is necessary, as the 24/7 operations do operate on all holidays. Then, in second paragraph, in a similar manner, this paragraph includes recommended language to address holiday policies for administrative, the non-24-hour offices. In the third paragraph, revise the language, and it includes proposal to address options for non-exempt employees to use vacation, comp time, or leave without pay for hours they normally would have scheduled to work for the county offices would have been open, so particularly the Friday after Thanksgiving is being addressed here. It also addresses that for exempt employees, that they are not required to accrue leave on any non-holiday closures. So, in the fourth paragraph, it clarifies the 24/7 and on-call employees who are scheduled to work on a holiday may receive their holiday pay, or save these holiday hours to a later date. And it also addresses the rate of pay is one and a half times on the actual holiday only, and so not the day the holiday is observed, so for example, Christmas this year is an excellent example, Christmas falls on Sunday, so if they're working on Sunday, they get time and a half for that day, and then, if they work on the observed day when the offices are closed, but they are working on the 26th, that they would not get that time and a half. The compensation levels for elected officials, excuse me, that this is revised to mirror any wage scale, I think we already covered that, excuse me, disregard that. So, adopting the proposed revisions in this is the recommendation of the Compensation Committee, and as such, cannot be acted on until the December 20th meeting.
So, these will be placed back on the agenda for December 20.
Yes.
Any other questions for Carol? Carol, thank you.
Thank you.
Well done.
Thank you, and welcome.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Dustin Willett, item 20.
Good morning, Commissioner, Dustin Willett, Pennington County Emergency Manager. Two items before you, the first one, Item A, is the BRIC grant application on behalf of West River Electric. So, back in 20, December of 2020, the commission agreed to be a pass-through grant administrator for West River Electric, so West River Electric can't apply to the FEMA program itself, it's an eligible recipient, just not an eligible applicant, so the county is acting as the applicant on West River Electric's behalf. We have finally gotten to the point where those applications are being submitted through FEMA's electronic grant application process, and as part of that grant application process, we as the county, as the applicant, need to provide match commitment letters, so those BRIC grants are 75%, 25% grant, so FEMA pays 75% of the cost, and the person or the entity doing the project, in this case, West River Electric, is responsible for 25% of those costs. Now, with the county being the applicant to FEMA, we have to provide FEMA with that match commitment letter, saying yes, that 25% will be matched. So, the important thing here is, is with the agreement, the signed agreement that we have with West River Electric, that money never comes out of Pennington County, West River Electric pays all that money in the signed agreement that they have with Pennington County, but Pennington County does need to provide that commitment letter to FEMA as the applicant. So, this first item that's before you this morning, and Cindy is still here, so we had a discussion yesterday with Jim Poppin, the South Dakota Hazard Mitigation Officer, who oversees the state portion of the BRIC grants, and Cindy, I don't know if you want to add anything to the discussion, but I think the outcome of that meeting is Cindy's office and my office are satisfied with this process, and that process will be clarified in some documents that will come before you, probably at the next meeting, but all of this before you today is a request for the Chair to sign the match commitment letters from Pennington County that we will then attach to those electronic FEMA applications. Happy to stand for any questions.
Questions for Dustin? Being done, is there a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd moved to authorize Chair's signature on the match commitment letter in the amount of $319,098 in state and local agreement for West River Electric Co-op Project 359, Radar Hill Road North, the BRIC application.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second, any public comment? Being done, back to the commission, any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Motion two, move to authorize the Chair's signature on the match commitment letter in the amount of $614,881 in state and local agreement for West River Electric Co-op Project 390, Radar Hill Road South, BRIC application.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, public comment on this one? Being done, back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
Motion number three, move to authorize Chair's signature on the match commitment letter in the amount of $270,539 in state and local agreement for West River Electric Co-op Project 391, Wall Circuit Number Three, BRIC application.
Is there a second? And a second, any public comment? Not, back to the commission, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much, Agent.
Thank you, Dustin.
Item B, under Emergency Management, is our pre-disaster mitigation plan contract, so I will, Jennifer, introduce yourself to the commission, even though they know you.
Good morning, Commissioner. This is Jennifer Seetsmuth, Black Hills Council of Local Governments.
So, I'm going to bow out, unless there's any questions specifically for me, and Jennifer is going to present the contract before you, this is our engagement contract with Black Hills Council of Local Governments to manage our next pre-disaster mitigation plan update, so, Jennifer.
Morning, Jennifer.
Good morning. Pretty standard, just formally getting the contract approved through the commission. As you may recall, the contract is for $52,500, and 100% of that cost will be covered by a grant that we assisted, or that we worked with Dustin to secure, to cover the cost of this. The other 25% of the cost is secured through in-kind match, and that match is met by engaging stakeholders, and hosting meetings to get public input, and then engaging the staff within Pennington County, and then the municipalities within the county. So, really, this is a project that has a $0 cost to the county, because you'll be reimbursed through the grant, and I guess I'll stand by for any questions specifically, if there are any about the contract or the mitigation process.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
Thank you for everything you do for us, I know you work very hard, not just for us, but many counties, and this is just a piece of what you do for this county, and that's why we did, on this commission, join the Black Hills Council, so you work very hard, Jennifer, so thanks for what you do, and I think this is a pretty awesome part, a piece that's going to help Pennington County, so.
Thank you.
Any questions for Jennifer?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
So, Jennifer, the $25,000 match, you just said it's going to be holding the meetings, gathering the information, and that's going to be part of your contract?
Sure, so actually, today, we can collect in-kind, and I believe Dustin has a sign-in sheet, so even anybody who's here today is considered a participant, anytime we come and present an update on the plan, we can collect an in-kind. The in-kind is figured at the FEMA standard rate for South Dakota, which I believe is around $25 and some change right now, so every hour that is committed through, to this, whether it's through county staff or volunteers, we'll engage the fire departments, we'll engage the universities, we'll engage the, you know, the game fish and parks, anybody that would have a stake in the mitigation planning process can be involved, we invite them to the table. We do believe that the best plan is derived from engaging all of the correct and appropriate stakeholders, and that will also include, we'll go out and engage, and engage each of the municipalities within your county, so this is a multi-jurisdictional plan, the county does the bulk of the work, and that you're responsible for getting the contract with us, having the updates, but under the umbrella of the county, you're providing this service essentially to Keystone and Hill City, Wall, Bucksel, or Rapid City, and they all get to participate in the plan, and really, I think the best mitigation is going to be derived by having all of those stakeholders at the table or around the table at one time. A really good example would be, it doesn't do much good if you have a community or a city managing their floodplain really well, but then you're not doing anything on the outskirts, or vice versa, it doesn't do any good if the county's doing an awesome job at managing their floodplain and ensuring that things aren't built in there, if somebody else is putting a lot of things in the floodplain and causing the water to go where it wouldn't naturally go. So, having all the right people around the table to ensure that we're doing a real cohesive job of planning throughout the county for wildfire and flood and things like that, is really going to give you the best benefit through this process.
I agree, I mean, I've been on the board of YFS for a bit of years, and they have a similar type of grant like this, getting stakeholders together, and their time counts as part of that, and that's one good way to get the feedback and input, so I think this, I like grants like this, because it encourages you to get out there and make more contacts.
Yes, and because your county is big, and there are a lot of stakeholders, we'll break that down to probably fire groups, maybe some of your response and recovery-minded people, your planning groups, but hopefully, the idea is that the planning groups from each of the municipalities would also participate in meetings at the county level, and so really engaging and making sure that the right experts are in the room together, so they can have those valuable conversations.
Thank you.
Anything else? Any other questions? I need a motion.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd moved to authorize Chair's signature on the performance control between Pennington County and the Black Hills Council of Local Governments for the Pennington County Hazard Mitigation Plan update.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second, any public comment in regard to this contract? Back to the commission, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you so much for your time this morning.
Thank you.
Yes.
Item 21, Shannon.
Good morning, Shannon Whitberger, Director of Equalization, I have two requests for abatement before you, one is a mobile home, the other is a deck that was attached to Camper, Sheridan Lake, both of these left several years ago without us knowing it, and one of them, the Sheriff's Office declared uncollectible last year, and the abatement would take them off the tax roll since they're not there anymore.
Chairman.
Commissioner Adka.
Move to approve both abatements, so Finnick Parcel Number 8008429 for $10.90 in red bag, Parcel Number 46726, $17.74.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second, any public comment? Any further discussion by the commission? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you. Item 22. Jerome Harvey.
Jerome Harvey, Fire Administrator, Pennington County, South Dakota, with me today is Chief Sleaf, with the Silver City Volunteer Fire Department, and Assistant Chief Chagru, discuss briefly about the agreement, and they have worked really hard as far as putting their land usage together, getting their plan together, and just with the rapid response by the U.S. Forest Service as far as the land usage, has really put them ahead of WASTA as far as being able to move forward with it. WASTA's still working really hard, we're close on getting the land used worked out on those issues there, and you'll see that coming as soon as those things are worked out, but Chief Sleaf and Jeff, have any specific questions if you want to, they have drawings and all sorts of stuff you can look at, as far as any specific questions. I'll take, if I may, Mr. Chairman, discussed this Thursday night and Friday, we had a pretty good fire bust Thursday night, and our first go-around was in the town site of Silver City, and Chief Sleaf organized a very rapid response, and they were able to keep the fire under some pretty windy conditions from becoming a potential disaster there, and then later on, they were called up to deal with the incident up at Rochford, and just goes to show you again, the support of the commission, we have superior communications, we have superior support from our county commissioners, and once again, paid off the other night with the amount of fires that we're dealing with. If you have any specific questions of, on the building?
Dave? Thanks. Commissioner Adka.
So, this is one of the fire departments that we didn't have a funding source at first, and now, it sounds like in 2023, we do have the funding source, so I'm always in agreement, and you guys know that as firemen, of anything we can do to help our Fire Service Board and our volunteers to be able to function and have their buildings and their equipment well-furnished in order to fight fires, and for safety and protection, so I'm glad that this came forward, and that you guys followed through with everything you said you were going to do, because not only did you get it done, you got it done before some of the other ones, so, good job, and I am in agreement with moving this forward, and again, that area needs this fire department, it's very crucial for them, and our fire department, our volunteers, in order to keep that area safe, so it's a no-brainer for me. Phil and Sir, thank you for all your work on this, you guys were persistent, and Phil said he was going to be, and he actually, so, thank you, Phil.
Thank you, Commissioner.
So, Chief, it seems like it's taken a long time, but I know you're hard at it, working very diligently in order to get this accomplished, tell us a little bit about what did take place, and where you ended up with it, here.
So, when we were here a year ago, we were talking about trying to find private property, and that search just really didn't go anywhere, so we reached out to the Forest Service and connected with Jim Goobles from the Forest Service here up on Mystic, and they worked with us wonderfully, we've had a great relationship with them for many years, and it continues today. They have arranged to lease us for five years, for a beginning for the construction piece, and then we complete that, and then we'll do a 30-year lease on four acres just north of Broad Gulch, just south of the Sugar Shack, an excellent location for that north end of our district, and for any of the incidents that might happen on 385. I'd just like to mention again that that whole area has been kind of a black hole for multiple agencies, the, you know, that corner, Rochford Road, Merritt Estes Road, and 385, has four departments, Nemo, Brownsville, Rochford to the west, us to the southwest, and Johnson siding on the southeast, and for any of us to get there from our current stations takes a long time. For us to get For us to get our engine or tender up to that corner is about twenty minutes. And we can get a brush truck up there quicker, we have a brush truck in the area, so we have firefighters on Rochford Road, so this is perfect for us. And it's perfect for all of those other locations too, because we can get somebody there. And so it's wonderful and I just, I thank the commission also for, for, you know, looking at all this, we've had a fair amount of paperwork coming back and the lease agreement, I think you've seen the lease agreement. And, and so that's where we're at today, we're ready, we have some preliminary drawings, we have some general contractors ready to, to really take a close look at it and get us moving. We have local folks that do some dirtwork, so they're ready to put shovels in the ground, so.
Mr. Chair.
Good, thank you, Chief. Other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, Commissioner LaCroy.
Well, thank you guys for your hard work and determination on this. You know, I was just talking about, you bring up WASTA, one of the volunteer people in WASTA and how, I asked him how he was doing up there with the new building stuff and these guys are, you guys are excited. And it's, I'm really appreciative of this commission, but also our department heads, because if I remember right, a lot of the money that we had extra to be able to fund these projects was cuts in our budgets from when the coronavirus was going and we'd asked our departments to cut budgets and then we ended up having some money left over. This commission made the decision to, to do these projects. And so it really goes to show that it's, it's a community thing. It's the whole administration, jail, everybody else helped out with this. And so I just wanted to make, make that known that this wasn't just ARPA funds that came out and we had to spend, and this was some cuts for some people that had to make it happen. And so the good use of it, they see it and we appreciate all the work you guys do.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Kinnock.
I'd like to extend a special thanks to Jim Goebbels, District Ranger for Mystic. He was very helpful in helping put that thirty-year lease agreement together. And with that said, I'm going to go ahead and make the motion to approve the agreement between Pennington County and the Silver City Volunteer Fire Department for the donation of five hundred thousand to be used for the construction of a fire station.
Is there a second? I'm sorry.
Second.
Okay, got a motion and a second. Any public comment in regard to this? Being done, back to the commission, any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
So thank you very much, Commissioners. Happy holidays, Merry Christmas.
And so next month, we will have this, the funding back on the agenda for final action on this.
Correct, that's my understanding, yeah.
Yep. Super, thank you. Item twenty-three, Joe Miller.
All right. Good morning, Commissioner Joe Miller, Pennington County Highway Department. Up in front of you here, early in 2022, we began the process of searching for a firm to do the, our pavement condition index or gather our PCI data. Years passed, we've had our engineering techs go out and manually do this, which, which worked for several years and we actually figured out that our data that we gathered over those times was, was fairly accurate, but we wanted to look for a way to automate that process, save staff time and hopefully get some more accurate data. Along with that, the firm that we selected had a, a part of their package that did some budget model forecasting for us to say, okay, if you want to maintain this, this PCI or the PCI that you currently have, this is the amount of funding you have, or if you maintain the funding that you have, you'll, you'll get to this PCI. So with that, without further ado, I'll get Zach from Roadway Asset Services up here to do the presentation and I'll be, if you have any questions that Zach can't answer or John can answer, we'll tackle those together, so.
Morning Zach, could you just identify yourself, please?
Good morning, Commissioners, my name is Zach Thomason with Roadway Asset Services and it is an absolute pleasure to be here today. And lucky for me, I get to talk about one of my favorite topics, which is pavements and asphalt and pavement management. Also lucky for me is I'm the bearer of good news today as well, it's not always the case, there are a lot of agencies that are struggling across the country, conditions vary greatly across the country. So I'm going to take you through what we did, how we did it, what the condition data tells us, what it means, and then also answer those big ticket questions in terms of what budgetary models did we run and what do they show and forecast in terms of conditions as we look five years down the road. So we'll go ahead and jump right into it. The first thing that I'd like to review is talk about some basic terminology. So we will have a final report that's being drafted now, Joe will probably see that first draft by end of this week, you folks will get a chance to see that as well. What you'll notice is we use a lot of different acronyms and terms and terminology, so I'm going to clean some of that up and simplify this a bit right now as well. One of the terms that we use is centerline mileage. Okay, centerline mileage is very simple, if you take your average road and you simply draw a line down the middle of that road and draw it for a mile long, that represents the centerline mile of a roadway, does not take into account width or area, okay? So we talk about centerline miles, we know that the county maintains three hundred and forty-three centerline miles of paved roadway. Doesn't sound like a lot to a lot of folks, but it's a lot of pavement and a lot of area that Joe and his team are tasked with maintaining on a daily basis. So let's talk about paved area. What that equates to is the county maintains about four point six million square yards of pavement on a daily basis. That's enough material to pave a small two-lane road all the way from Rapid City to Colorado Springs. So this is a big asset on the books that you folks are tasked with maintaining on a daily basis. The network replacement value, so a lot of folks don't think about pavements as an asset to be maintained, they are an asset. And if we calculated an average network replacement value to replace all roads in light new condition, that magic number would be on the order of about two hundred and thirty million dollars. So we're nearly at about a quarter billion dollar asset that needs to be maintained to make sure that we're maximizing those dollars on the roadway network. Lane miles is something that you hear that simply takes into account the width of a lane. So you could have a four-lane road, that's a mile long, that is four-lane miles, because it accounts for each lane of that road. Primarily in Pennington County, we're talking about two-lane county highway type roadways as well. Pavement condition index, we're going to talk about that, if you're not familiar with the pavement condition index, it is a zero to one hundred score that ranks the health of a roadway. Zero is pretty darn bad and turning back to gravel, one hundred is a perfectly brand-new road that was paved yesterday. Preservation, we're going to talk about that. Pavement preservation is typically lightweight maintenance activities that we can do that impact the total life of a roadway. They're very cost-effective, they seal the roads, they prevent mother nature from getting into the roads and they extend the life, which was, which result in a lower cost of roadway ownership. You're going to hear me reference ASTMD sixty-four thirty-three, those are simply the rules that we use to collect the data, to calculate a PCI score. And those rules were originally developed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So if you see that scale there on the side, that scale represents the ASTMD sixty-four thirty-three scale. And you'll see there's different categories ranging from good all the way to fail. Now, if we all talked about what's good to you and what's good to me, our perception is going to be different, it's a matter of interpretation. So for this study, we adopted ASTMD sixty-four thirty-three. So these descriptive terms that you see here are related to the scale that was originally developed by the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. So that, let's talk about the purpose of pavement management real quick, and the purpose is simple, the purpose is to select the right treatment on the right road at the right time. And that's very, very important. As you can see here, that, that first line there, if I, if I show my, my dot here, the first line that you see here, and I'll circle, circle it for those that can't see my red dot, this is the average deterioration of a roadway. And it behooves us to maintain roads that are in good condition. By doing so, we spend approximately four dollars a square yard maintaining roads in good condition, as opposed to deferring all maintenance, letting them deteriorate, and then spending twenty-two dollars per square yard later to do a major rehab on that road. So if we maintain our roads in good condition, we can maximize the total life of that pavement. It's no different than the cars that we drive on a daily basis, we change the oil, we flush the fuel and we rotate the cars, not because we enjoy doing so, but because we want to maximize the life of that vehicle as long as possible. Roads are the very same way. So we take care of good roads that are in good condition, in addition to taking care of our backlog, which is all the big ticket work, the total reconstruction and partial reconstruction candidates. This is the van that drove around the county, some folks call it the Ghostbusters looking van, but this is the technology that was used to drive all roads and assess the pavement conditions. I won't go into the detail for the sake of brevity here, but that fin on the back end, that is a series of two high-resolution camera and laser sensors. And they are basically measuring the width and depth of all the cracks and then classifying all of the different crack types so that we can use that to follow the U.S. Army Corps rules to calculate that PCI score for every segment of road in the county. We've got camera imagery up here, similar to Google, that's a five-lens panoramic camera that's taking imagery that we use not only for pavement QC purposes, but it can be used to literally inventory any roadside feature or asset that is seen. That was not done as a part of this scope, but that imagery can be used in the future to do that type of asset extraction. And then we also have three laser profilers up here, these are certified at test tracks around the, around the country. Their job is simple, it is to measure rutting and roughness and do it very, very accurately. And then lastly, I'll point out, the vans are equipped with GPS and inertial navigation. Everything we collect and report is tied back to your GIS centerline files. So we live in a spatial environment, we live on the map, everybody wants to see data on the map, so every bit of information that we collect and report today is available on the map as well. So we take all of that imagery from the van, which you're seeing there in that upper left-hand corner, this is the downward imagery that comes off the back end of that fin. And we use a piece of software called Road Trip. And Road Trip takes that high-resolution laser and camera imagery, it starts drawing in all the cracks, measuring the crack width and depth, and then classifying all the different distress types, whether it's fatigue cracking caused by traffic loading or truck loading, or whether it's weathering and ravelling caused by mother nature and oxidation. We take all of this information that we then use to calculate a PCI score on each segment of road. One of the other things that we did as a part of this project too is we conducted a pilot field trip. This is something that we do for all of our clients. So yes, we drive the van around on all of the roads, but we also come out on-site and we physically walk and assess about ten miles of road with county staff. And we do that to, one, make sure that the data we're getting is representative, but two, to also make sure that our interpretation of the data is the same. And if it's not, then we sit down and have discussions on why it's not the same. So we conducted this, this field pilot, we did it on ten miles of road with Joe and his team. Scott Warden, the president of RAS, came up for that a few months ago. So it gives us an early indication of doing some quality assurance and some quality control on the data before we finish off with processing all of the results. And you can see a blown-up image there of the, of the laser imagery that it stitched together and all the cracks that begin to be colored in as a part of the process. So the first thing that we do when we started this project is we adopted the county's existing GIS centerline files. So again, I mentioned every bit of information that we collect is tagged to that GIS centerline and those purple dots simply represent the GPS breadcrumbs from that van. Now, as we start processing the data, we can then plot maps. And what you're seeing here is a typical PCI distribution map there on the left-hand side. And the colors are kind of like a stoplight, green is good, red is bad, yellow is all the subtle levels in between. You're seeing a lot of green there, that is a good thing, okay? That means the network is in relatively good shape, and we'll talk more about that and dig into the details here in the next few slides. And again, if you look at that image on the right-hand side, you can see we zoomed in and there's a PCI score that is assigned to each segment of road there in the county. So as we dig a little deeper, this is a PCI distribution graph. So you've got condition on the x-axis and then you've got percent of the network by area on the y-axis there. And we're using those same U.S. Army Corps descriptive terms here from good all the way to fail. This can give us, before we do an analysis, this can kind of write the story of how the roadways have been managed in the county over the last five, ten, or even twenty years. Gives us a snapshot in time of where we're at. In this particular case, we can see, just by looking at this graph before we do any analysis, we can see that the county has been good stewards to the pavements, to the roadway network, has reinvested back in the roadway network as well. So there's typically three metrics that we use to assess any given agency using this graph here. And the first is the network average PCI score. Nationally, scores are all over the place. There's folks in the eighties, there's folks in the forties, there's folks struggling, it's kind of all over. So it's not a big surprise, the average is kind of being somewhere between about a sixty and a sixty-five. Most agencies are trying to get that up into the low seventy range if they're struggling to manage their network. Less than one in ten agencies will score above a seventy-five, less than one in twenty will actually score above an eighty, folks are an eighty-three. So your network average, if we throw everything into a blender, is an eighty-three for the county, that's a great position to be in. That means your roads are in relatively great condition and you can focus on lightweight preservation activities that extend the design life of roads and they cost a heck of a lot less as well. The second metric that we look at is the percent of good roads. So generally, on average, we see your average agency across the country is going to have about fifteen percent of their network in the good road category, you folks are at about fifty percent. So you excel well beyond the averages that we see across the nation, that's also a good thing. The last thing that I generally talk to folks about, which is a non-issue here in Pennington County, is backlog. A lot of folks are struggling to control the growth of backlog, which is basically all of your poor, serious, and failed routes. Anything that scores below a PCI score of forty, it's the expensive, partial, and total reconstruction work. From a financial perspective, generally, anything less than ten percent is considerably financially ideal from a, from a pavement management perspective. If you folks are less than three percent, you're in a very, very solid place to be in terms of backlog. If we look at the asphalt distresses, I'm not going to spend much time here, but we do analyze the presence of distresses. What distresses are causing the county grief here locally? It can give us an indication if maybe we have base stabilization issues or traffic loading issues. And in this case, the primary culprit, the primary distress that we're seeing is weathering. Weathering is wonderful mother nature, it is oxidation of roads that is caused by water infiltration, UV rays, and things like that. What we're not seeing is this green here, alligator cracking and rutting. It's there, it's present, but it's not predominant. If it were predominant, that would tell us we do have base stabilization issues or we have traffic loading issues that need to be considered as a part of the program, not the case here. So seeing this, this tells me there's a lot of opportunity for lightweight pavement preservation that's very cost-effective as well across the county. So the next part, we have all this condition data, the next step is to run the analysis, to run the models, to develop a prioritized or systematized way of selecting which roadway candidates get picked over the next five years. So the first step is to program the pavement management system with the rehab activities that the county currently does. And you can see a full swath of different maintenance and rehab types. We have preservation that results in chip seals, maintenance in crack seals, thin overlays, milling overlays, and full depth reconstruction as well. So it's a full suite, a full toolbox of tools that we can use on roadways throughout their entire lifecycle, so that we are maintaining roads that are in good condition as well. And those costs, I should mention too, that's key and vital, all of those costs are local dollars within the model. Folks always want to know, well, we developed a five-year plan, why was this road picked and this one was not? It's a typical question. And there's things that we use to prioritize, we don't have a blank check, we have finite funds, we have to pick which ones get selected and which ones do not. So there's two, there's two terms that come up, one is prioritization, prioritization is just a list, we are creating a list from highest to lowest, and I'll show you what metrics we use to create that list on the next slide. The other is financial optimization. So when we start picking rehab candidates, we do so on the basis of getting the biggest bang for your buck here in the county. We start looking at things from a cost of deferral perspective, meaning if we defer road A, what is it going to cost us next year? If the cost is exponential and too great, it behooves us to do something now. But if we can get away with deferring it a little bit in favor of capturing other roads that we cannot defer, from a financial perspective, it is very ideal. So how we do that, when we look at the different prioritization types, yes, we use condition and we use PCI score. we use condition and we use PCI score. We use traffic volume. So your higher-volume roads are going to have a higher priority than your lower-volume roads. They serve more people. They serve commerce. They serve heavier trucks. So those are going to have a higher priority type. Pavement type comes into play, not as big of a deal here in Pennington County, but typically asphalt is a higher priority over concrete because it degrades at a more rapid rate. And then what I want to point out here is critical roads, and I'm going to talk about that here on the next couple of slides. Critical roads are those roads I just mentioned that are within 2 to 4 points of dropping into the next more expensive rehab category. They're critical because if we don't do something now, it costs us more later. So when we infuse that financial optimization, we use that component to determine where is our money best spent as we prioritize roads. So to show that graphically, rather than a very complicated graph that we use on the engineering side, I've got two roads here, okay? And it's not exactly, when you look at the roads and when you think about which ones were picked for rehab and which ones were not, it's not the easiest to understand. So if we look at the road on the left here, it has a PCI score of a 71. It falls in the rehab category of a chip seal, which costs about $4.50 a square yard. This is a critical roadway in the system. It's not the highest priority roadway, but it's a critical road. That's within 2 to 4 points of costing us a lot more if we defer maintenance on this road. So it gets selected a lot sooner in the pavement management program. The road on the right, folks that are watching this would think, well, hey, this one needs to be done. Something needs to be done. And they are right. This road has had a long life. It has served the constituents well. Something needs to be done at some point, but right now, it's not critical. It won't become critical until it becomes about a 34 in the pavement management program. So if there's enough funds after we optimize the rehab plan, if there's enough funds left over, then we start going in and we grabbing and selecting non-critical rehab segments as well. Now, one thing I would like to note, too, roads in this category that are critical are the highest priority in the county. So they get first selection when we start sequencing based on optimization. So let's talk about the budget graphs, the budget models. This is where everything really ends up when it comes to the condition data. So what you're seeing there, that is a typical budget scenario graph there on the right-hand side, and it has several models that we're illustrating here. We'll start at the bottom, and then I'll kind of jump to the top, but the bottom is a do-nothing graph. So we can see if we spend $0 on our roadway network, conditions do deteriorate rather rapidly over the next five years. The top one is a fix-all. If we fixed everything all at once and infused a large chunk of capital, that's that model. We run those to create a ceiling and a floor for the models. So they're not representative of anything that's happening here. That's just typical models that we run. The two that I want to point out to you is this green and this blue one that fall kind of there in the middle. They both represent $2 million budgets, but the outcome is slightly different, and I'll explain that. The blue line on the bottom, oops, got ahead of myself there, wrong button. The blue line on the bottom represents a $2 million optimized budget, meaning we're spending the funds as optimized as we possibly can, but it does not account for other work that the county may be doing outside of the pavement management program. So the $2 million budget that we're using, that's the average budget that the county has spent on pavement management, on roadways over the last 10 years. Some years were lower, 1.2, 1.5, some years were higher, but there's other things that the county does that involves bridges and ditches and culvert work and safety realignments, other things that are outside of these models here. So this $2 million budget model results in a PCI of an 86. So the county right now is at an 83. This will elevate it to an 86. The green one is the county's current budget and planned work. So nothing changes here in terms of how we optimize the rehab selections, but what does change is there's a lot of planned work that the county is doing over the next several years that are being done as a result of those other factors that are outside of the pavement management program. And we do not want the analysis or system re-selecting them because Joe has recently gone out and done a safety realignment or done extensive work as a result of factors that are outside the prerogative of the pavement management program. And then lastly, we can see here, this is the steady state budget. So roughly speaking, to maintain the existing status quo in the county of a PCI of an 83, the county would need approximately $1.2 million annually to do so. This is another budget scenario graph. Looks at things, takes a slightly different perspective, same story here, but now we have the annual budget for five years on the x-axis and the resulting PCI on the y-axis. This red line is simply the trend line. We ran 10 different models to establish the trend between funding and the outcome of network average PCI scores. So again, I've already mentioned it, but you can see here, the county's current budget with planned work that comes out of other dollars results in a network average PCI of an 88. There's the steady state that results in an 83.7, which we should ground up. Technically, it's an 84. The nice part about this graph is you folks can kind of play what-ifs on the fly. So, well, what if we spent 2.5 million? What if we spent 1.5 million? Rather than always having to rerun models, you can simply find the number you desire, 1.5 million. I'll do it on the mouse for those who can't see my pointer. Find 1.5 million, draw it up to where it intersects the trend line, and you can see it results in about a PCI of an 85. So it's a very informative graphic that allows us to view what-ifs very quickly. Again, the $2 million is for pavements only, does not include culvert ditch repairs, safety alignments, any gravel-to-asphalt conversion. Remember, these models are simply running models on existing asphalt and pavement as it is now. So it doesn't even take into account adding additional width. So if there's concerns with very skinny or very narrow county roads for safety purposes that were widening, that's not accounted for in the pavement management program either. And then, of course, the final step is to develop a five-year prioritized rehab plan that shows all of the roadways that are being selected over the next five years and what rehab activity is being selected for that. This is simply one year. It's hard to see because of PowerPoint and the image that was embedded, but this has been delivered to the county. It's all linked to GIS and can be seen in nice crystal-clear maps. That was a lot of information. We'd be happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LeCroy.
Can you do this for gravel?
Right. We cannot. So typically, you can do assessments of gravel roads. It's a visual assessment. Do not use the van with lasers and cameras. There are rating methodologies that are standardized for gravel roads. It can be done. The downside to them is that gravel road conditions can change rather quickly, especially if you have weather events that happen. It can completely change the dynamics. So capturing the data can be a good thing, but just recognize that you could have the data this month, but if you have a large weather event next month that impacts those conditions, it may not mean a whole lot to you after that.
So when you do your travel and route, I mean, you're saying this is GPS. Is it actually taking pictures, too, so that he can get up there and he can look up, like last year when you did this, this is what it looked like, so you can compare it to two years ago?
Yes, sir. Yep. So one thing I didn't mention, that panoramic camera that I showed you at the beginning, that's collecting five views of 360-degree imagery. The county is getting all five views. We collect and process that imagery every 20 feet. So you're going to get an image still every 20 feet down every road from that camera view, and we're also giving you folks the downward pavement view that's snapped every 20 feet as well. That's being loaded to a web viewer that Joe will have access to. That makes it easier.
So that would give you some information, because you know what the average life of a road is and if it's done well and so forth, but if something catastrophe happens with a road, you might be able to find out that maybe there's something else going on, a water main break, or, you know, something along those lines, or maybe it's the weather, but...
Absolutely.
So you'd be able to use it, judge from there.
Be able to use the imagery. So from the gravel road perspective, yes. So if you were to go down the path of doing an assessment on gravel roads, the imagery would be that snapshot in time of this is what the roadway looks like at that point in time. Absolutely.
And they're expected to carry a lot faster than asphalt. So, yeah, I can see. Okay. Thank you.
Other questions, Azar?
Yeah. Thank you.
Commissioner Edgar.
I just said he did a good job. I think anything to do with this and conditions of our roads, so we can determine when Joe brings up certain roads and certain areas that we have some facts and information that we can use and why he prioritized one road over another. I think that's huge instead of us. Makes it less political and more on facts and information, which I like. So I appreciate that, sir.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. Item B, Joe.
Item B is, get to it here, resolutions for 2022 big grant applications. So this would be our third year applying for a big grant application since the wheel tax was implemented in 2020. As of the last report, I believe that was sent out to, I don't know if it was this week or last week, on the wheel tax revenue, the county has collected approximately $1.358 million from revenue in 2022. This is up last year at this time by about $20,000. So last year this time, I think it was 1.35. So we're up just a little bit on revenue there. Currently, for the big grants, we've received over $2 million, about $2,88, $2,88,000 in big funds grants from that program. With the increase in the wheel tax in 2022 to for 2023, it actually allowed us to bid another project. Silver City Fire Department was here. We're doing, it allowed us to do the Sherbin Street Bridge going into Silver City there. So we'll assist them and be a lot better access for the residents there in Silver City. 2023, we have set to be completed a total of three reconstructions and four rehabilitation projects. The total for that is at $2,88,000. Included in that, or not included in that, is the construction engineering portion of that, which is about $300,000. So we've got a lot of funding out of the big grant or the big program so far, and we have a lot more on deck. So for 2023, we have six applications or six bridges that we're going to apply for rehabilitation or preservation, totaling about $1.8 million with the construction engineering about $156,000 also. So total funding of about $1.9 million is what we're applying for in 2023. So the big program is a very valuable program to Pennington County. It's helping us get our bridges up to where they need to be, hopefully getting more and more off the critical list or the, getting them reconstructed without load limits to better serve our citizens. So with that, I'll stand for any questions.
Questions, Joel.
Chairman.
Commissioner Edgar.
So since we've started the big program, how many bridges have we rehabilitated or did preservation on?
So that's, Sean and I were just talking about that this morning. Initially, when we first applied for these, we're like, all right, well, we can apply for them, get awarded, and build them in the same year. Unfortunately, as with any government program, it takes a little while. So 2023 is actually the first time that we'll be able to utilize those dollars just because of the timeframe on when they were awarded and funding sources and all that stuff. So 2023, we have four bridges that are, the three reconstructions and the four rehabilitations that are on the docket for 2023.
Nice. And how many bridges do we have to rehabilitate or do preservation on in Pennington County?
There's 127 total. As of this, you know, this year, I believe there's 21 that had load ratings on them. They added another one. I think Norris Peak was load-rated? I don't remember if, 21, 22, somewhere in there. I don't remember the exact number off the head, but...
Nice. Well, it's made a huge difference for Pennington County. Those bridges are well-needed and for the future, that preservation and rehabilitation funds, it's going to be adding more and more every year because some of those bridges are over 50 years old. So thank you to the Pennington County constituents and the people in this county that believe that roads, bridges, and infrastructure is something that is critical and makes a difference for our county.
Absolutely.
I think this is pretty awesome. Thank you.
So, Joe, on the six applications that you plan on making, for any of those that are awarded, what's the timeframe that you're looking at there, then? Are you looking...
So we've adjusted our approach, right? We learned a lot from the first couple of years. So any application that we're making for 2023, we will plan to construct those or let those in probably late '23 for construction in '24.
Okay.
So essentially, we apply for them, and then it lags a year just with the timeframe. I've had several conversations with Joe Anne Height, the project or the program manager that kind of manages the big program, and it's going to take legislation changes, but to allow the state to just cut us a check for these grants and let us administer them, and we can expedite the process because time is money. And, you know, talking to the contractor that got awarded, there are three reconstructions. There's just simply not enough bridge contractors out there to complete all the bridge work that's throughout the state. It's unreal, the amount of money that's out there and the amount of bridges that are needed to be reconstructed in the state, even nationwide if you look at it, so.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LeCroy.
Well, first of all, thanks for the questions because, I mean, there's pretty much what I was going to ask about this, you know. So we're working on six bridges so far with the big grants, right?
That's what we're going to apply for in 2023, yes.
In 2023, and we applied for how many before that one? Four?
Yeah, we've been awarded seven.
Seven altogether?
Altogether. I don't know. It seems like we missed one. We didn't get awarded one, I think, in the first year we applied.
Okay.
So we've only not been awarded one, I believe. I don't know the actual number, but I believe that's, it's one.
I mean, the reason why I asked is, like you said, we have 127 bridges, and I remember the study, and I don't remember the numbers offhand of our critical bridges that really needed to be updated. But just in the last two years, I mean, to be able to move forward with seven bridges is pretty outstanding. I mean, that's a step in the right direction considering most of our bridges were built after the '72 flood. And so I think we're moving forward, and I think, I mean, you said it, Joe. It was a learning process, this first part coming out, and maybe you can work with legislators and so forth to be able to free up some of that money because every delay costs money. And the longer we delay it, the higher costs go up, whether it's materials or finding the contractor. So if we can find a way to expedite the process better, I think, you know, I'm all for that, and I think we need to work that way.
Absolutely. You know, I think the biggest step is not getting the local government to oppose us, right? So I think they're in support of that because it's less, essentially, it's less work for them. They're trying to go that direction with our pavement marking program. So I think it's going to take our South Dakota Association of County Highway Superintendents to band together and draft some of that legislation and then find a legislator to try and carry that in the next couple of years. It's going to be a long process, but, you know, the big program works for many counties, but there's a lot of the smaller counties that don't simply have the funding to do the math, you know? Or, because you look at our bridges that we've awarded here in the last three or four months, since we were awarded the big grant, the costs have increased while your grant doesn't increase. So to be able to get the grant and then just go right to letting and not have to have their review process and everything like that would expedite that process, not only for the smaller counties, but for the bigger counties to make our dollars go further.
Okay. Any other questions? Need a motion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LeCroy.
I'd move to approve Resolution 2022-12-06-1, authorizing Pennington County to submit bridge improvement grant program applications for Bridges 52-308-298, Bridge 52-312-432, Bridge 52-460-329, Bridge 52-316-317, Bridge 52-318-318, and Bridge 52-320-312.
Thank you. Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Being done back to the commission. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item C.
All right. Item C is a Sherwin Lake Road affidavit of extinguishment, and I think John's still in the audience. So this is pretty much the nail in the coffin for Sherwin Lake Road, our pre-year project. What this document does is it extinguishes the Forest Service easements that were previously needed for the prior alignment of Sherwin Lake Road. So with the new alignment, we don't necessarily need these anymore, and this was a condition... And this was a condition of the letter of consent that the Forest Service provided us to realign Sheridan Lake Road. So if I may, also, we received the letter of consent for South Rochford Road. Sounds like those plan, the final plans have been uploaded to the state. So we should be on track for a 15th, February 15th mid-letting for South Rochford Road project, so.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haggard.
That was a big project, Sheridan Lake.
Yes, it was.
It's been a long time coming and what a, what an amazing project from beginning to end to watch. I don't know if anybody saw it, but the dirt that was moved on this project was the most amazing to see what started and where it ended up. Going through the process and just driving that road with Joe and, and myself. It's, it's crazy what you can do with a road and what you can do with an area to make it more safe, is a good way to put it as well. But Sheridan Lake turned out pretty amazing. And it's weird, like I said, I would have never thought that it went from this to this in the end, the way it was done. And how it was done, I had no idea. So it was, it was pretty crazy. But the amazing thing was how much dirt was moved in order to get where they needed to go to make this a safety factor on Sheridan Ra, Lake Road. So everybody that was, was involved with this project, I thank you from the bottom of my heart because that's, that road was pretty unsafe. So you guys did a great job. Like I said, it's, the engineering and everything on this project was just amazing to watch. And I've never seen anything like it since I've been on this commission. So it was a huge project. Thank you for everybody who was involved with it.
Yes, we had.
Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect.
I was just gonna move to approve the Sheridan Lake Road Eastman affidavit, affidavit of extinguishment.
Got a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Any public comment? Back to the commission. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaRoche.
I'll, I'll echo what Ms. Haggard said, but I also want to give some shout out to Scott. I think he did some work on getting some of the trees cleared out and doing some of that work. I mean, that's a plus for us also. But I mean, that's, that just goes to show the cooperation and planning that you guys worked through to, to help do that because.
Yeah. Ultimately, I mean, Scott benefited from it. You know, the, the trees cost us money, right? No matter what. So if, if, working together with Scott, it, it allowed him to supplement his budget. Was the sale of some of those trees, the same with what they did on South Rochford Road. We did the same project there. We're doing a project right now on Bogus Gym. They're up there cutting trees right now. So the, the trees only in a realignment or a roadway realignment, they just cost the highway department money. So I'm glad that Scott's able to, to have a benefit in, in selling those trees to supplement his budget. And, you know, I, I want to echo what both of you guys said. You know, Heiney had a, a great vision when this thing started, you know, 15 years ago. I think John was involved with it. It's fitting that you're here today, John. It, you know, John was involved with this from the beginning. And it took a lot of work from when, the day I got here to the day we got it, to the letting, all the way through the project. We had a fantastic project team. Off to the all was a fi, a fantastic contractor, the state's team, John's team. I mean, everybody seemed to work together to get this thing accomplished and get it across the finish line. So it was a fantastic project to be a part of. I'm proud to, to say our team was a part of it. It was just, it was a privilege all the way through, so.
So Scott, you talk about it, Scott Guffey, head of our natural resources, so appreciate that.
Good job, Joe. Your team.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Hey, Joe, what, where did that come in at as far as costs for Sheridan Lake Road? Wasn't that, wasn't that around 22 million?
About 22.8 million dollars. The state is currently working on the final couple pay estimates. Looking like we're gonna come in about 100 to 200,000, under that 2.8 million dollars. There was some deducts and there was some, some things, some value engineering that the contractor put forth as far as some deep pipe excavations. So looking like we're gonna come in either right at or, or under that 22.8 million dollar award. The original budget number, I think, John, I don't know, you might have to help me on this. Was it 25?
I think the state's final estimate was 24 and a half, somewhere in there.
Yeah, so it was 24 and a half million dollars for the, the final, that was the state's estimate before it was let, so.
Yeah, pretty impressive.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Item D.
Item D, this is a, a resolution to establish the criteria to award rural access infrastructure funding or the RAF. This was a, a law that was passed, I believe it was two years ago in 2020. And then again, it was funded in 2021. So this is to establish a criteria on which those funds can be awarded. This was put in place for the townships. Currently, we don't, Pennington County hasn't had any townships come forward and, and look for this funding. There are some requirements on the, the, the law or the legislation that requires them to have an annual tax levy of 50 percent, or 50 cents per thousand or impose, impose in a opt-out and also establish a five-year plan. I don't know that that's, you know, most of our townships are pretty conservative, so that's kind of a, a deal there. I don't know why the reason or what the reason is that we haven't had any come forward. But as you see there in the memo, there's quite a bit of funding awarded to Pennington County. We have some structures that we can use that for. So we can use it on any secondary roads with those small structures. So here in the near future, you'll see an application from the highway department to use some of this funds on our secondary roads, so.
I move to approve.
Second.
I've got a motion and a second to approve. Any public comment? Opposed in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item E.
Item E, this is a professional services agreement for the construction administration on the Sherman Street Bridge. This agreement is for the construction administration due to the state's requirement that they engineer from their approved list due to the administration of the, the, the projects that were awarded through the big program. We've selected KLJ as they're the firm that has designed all of our bridges. So they're, they're very familiar with them and saves a lot of back and forth and say, you know, saves a lot of time and money just having them be the firm that does that. Since it's a requirement of the, of the state and the big program, this is also funded at 80%. So the local requirement for this agreement is about $19,000.
Any questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I'll move to approve the professional services agreement 2103-00312 with KLJ Engineering LLC for Construction Administration of Sherman Street Bridge 52-246-298.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? Being done back to the commission. All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Item 24.
Mr. Chair. This is item number 24, North Haynes Avenue Road Update and Other City/County Jurisdiction Boundaries. I've talked to Joe and Tracy and I think you guys are, what we talked about is you're gonna reach out to the city of Rapid City. Maybe you can explain this a little bit better than I can, Joe. I'll turn it over to you.
So I don't remember what I was researching, but I was doing a little bit of research on some statutes and I, I came across the statute 311716, Secondary Highways on Municipal Boundaries Assignment of Responsibility. So what this says is the secondary highways on the boundary line of a municipality shall be assigned to such municipality and adjoining civil township or unorganized territory as provided in 31175 and 31176. So I had a conversation with Tracy. She had to go up to a meeting in her office there. She's gonna speak with Jay and figure out if it's a, if it's a Jay to Joel conversation or if it's a Tracy to one of the other attorneys in the city's office to kind of try and figure out what, you know, if they're interpreting this statute the same or if, if they, one interprets it this way and they interpret it this way, if they gotta get an AG opinion. So basically, this would help solve a lot of the issues surrounding the city such as Haynes Avenue, Country Road, South Valley Drive, Bunker Drive. There's a lot of secondary roads that are surrounding the city that basically this would assign the responsibility to the city of Rapid City. If that's the opinion of the, the attorneys when they interpret it.
Well, first of all, thank you for doing, doing the research and happened, stumbled across this because what Deb knows, we've, we've talked about South Valley for, for years. And so all of a sudden, for this one to come up, I, at, at least it puts a shimmer of light on what's happening. And, and I agree. I think, first of all, need to go sit down with city staff and, and if you guys come to the agreement, maybe, maybe not, you know, that this is a pretty big deal. If not, then we send it off to the Attorney General and get an official ruling, you know what I'm saying? So that way we know instead of being in limbo. Because I know it's hard for you and it's hard for the city unless somebody makes the decision on what that means. Because we struggle with it all over. I get it from both county and city residents. And, and they're, they're caught, they're the ones that are caught in the middle, you know? So I, I'd really like to find that clarification and I really appreciate getting the research and coming across that because, you know, that's something that's gonna make some concrete decisions for us.
Absolutely.
So I don't know if we need some motion to that or if you can just do that and then report back to us. So Chairman.
Commissioner Haggard.
So we've been dealing this, when I was in the city, same thing since, that's what, 15 years that I know of at least. There's a lot of limbo roads and what happens is when city and county don't work together or they don't have that, or they do have a jurisdiction problem, or they are, most of the time I'm seeing when a city annexes in property, that they're not taking those roads because of costs. So some of it is how our roads are built, maybe that they have to inherit. Some of it's just that, you know, they don't want to take over that jurisdiction because that road already, even if it was a piece of theirs before, is not in the best condition. But the bottom line is, is to figure out, like you said, the jurisdiction and whose jurisdiction that is because we have people in the county and city that when you have to go back and forth, the constituents are very frustrated, let alone a person in that district from our county commission that have to try and figure that out. And usually, we end up having to do something because there's either huge ruts or big enough ruts that are gonna be a safety factor. So we end up, as a county, ended up, since I've been here, most of the time having to fix those issues without the city's help. So I would hope we can find that jurisdiction or that, that process in which we can figure that out and get those done. And Joe, how many of these areas do we have that you know of?
There's half a dozen that I just named off the top of my head, you know, without doing any research. We're, we're currently, our, our team is, our engineering team is researching a lot of roads that John so kindly found for us that don't have a jurisdiction assigned to them. So our team is currently researching that and, and we were waiting for this opinion from our state's attorney. So, you know, we, there's a lot of, I think there's several other instances out there.
Well, this is just one of those things like the three-mile limit that causes the city and county a lot of distress trying to figure out that jurisdiction. So if this is one thing that we can clear up or, or try to clear up with the city or work with the city, our infrastructure is huge on both sides for city and county that, again, with the constituents and trying to be in those districts. I've never been so frustrated in my life trying to help somebody, whether it's my district or somebody else's. And it's South Valley, Lloyd's rights, been over and over again since I was in the city council. So that's a long time for the people to live in limbo of who's fixing a road. And if you've seen some of those roads, like we said, you could trash them pretty trucks or anything, any vehicles in these areas on these roads that have some huge divots and stuff in them. So it is a safety factor. So anything you can do to move this forward, Joe, I'm in favor of. And thank you, Lloyd, for bringing this forward again for us, so maybe we can find some solutions.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaRoche.
You know, Joe, how fitting that you give a report on how well our roads are when this comes out. I mean, that just shows that when you know it's yours, you take care of it, you know? And, and you guys have done an outstanding job. I mean, give my recommendations, commendations to the highway department because you have. I mean, we got the report that shows that.
Started long before I was ever here.
Heiney did it and, and he passed it on to you and you're carrying, you're carrying the torch and, and carrying it forward. So yeah, Heiney does get some credit, gets credit to it. Also, thanks for not, not letting me overlook that because it's a history of the work that you guys have done. But, you know, I really appreciate the work that you guys have done. I mean, you've, you've listened to our concerns when we've had problems and, and, you know, you didn't have to go out and fix that road in Haynes. We could have sat back and thought about that for five years and, and the citizens would have been upset. But you guys took it upon yourselves, same way with South Valley. We fought about that, about paving and stuff, and, and you finally made the decision to go out and pave it and fix it and make it safe. So you guys are doing a good job and I don't want that to get overlooked when we talk about things like this. And I'm, I'm really impressed at how you, you guys come across this legislation and let's see where it goes. And, and we'll work on that. If not, then we, we move to the next step.
So Chairman, point of privilege, please.
Commissioner Haggard.
We have lost our previous highway superintendent, Heiney Chungi. And we'd like to, as a commission, if I could speak for all of us, condolences to their family and to this commission. He has done an amazing job in Pennington County and was well-loved and he was with us for a long time. So in his passing, we just want to say our prayers and blessings to the family and his friends and that he will be well missed here in Pennington County.
Thank you. Anything else?
I think.
Item 25, Holly Hinnies.
Commissioners, item 25 is staff coming to you as a request to support continuing the Western Pennington Flood Management District. Just as a brief update to let you know, the board, the Drainage Commission met last Wednesday after a lengthy hiatus. And the intent was to get the board together to address two properties that were in the name of the Drainage Commission. In going through all of this and working on it, it's been possibly realized that that Drainage Commission could serve a beneficial purpose going forward in the future. So in your packets, you have a memo from the highway department and from planning and zoning with reasons why they support continuing the Flood Management District, which we call the Drainage Commission. So at this point, I can tell you that Box Elder and Rapid City staff were also going to address their governing bodies and ask for the same or to decide if they want to continue to participate in that Drainage Commission membership. But at this point, I'm sure highway and planning would be happy to answer any questions if you have any. But our request today is for Pennington County to support continuing the Western Pennington Flood Management District and to provide them with the documents submitted by highway and planning for their use and moving forward.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Haggard.
This is one of those commissions that I think is well-needed. I think it's a commission that for infrastructure moving forward for Pennington County, the city, Box Elder, or any other city that is surrounding Pennington County, I think is gonna be huge because of all the development we've had. And again, just like roads, drainage is just as important for that infrastructure. And moving forward, I think this board has a really good team that I've seen that was up here that I think is willing to find some solutions. Some people I thought, believed that it was one or two meetings, but I had talked to afterwards that they think it would be a great thing for us to have a jurisdiction with all the different entities in Pennington County to be able to move that forward and then work with the highway department and highway departments. It would be, and other people in order to attain some drainage stuff that needs to be done in, in our Pennington County area. So I think it's a, it's a no-brainer for our infrastructure to move forward and not, again, to have the same thing come upon our constituents like we had for roads and that limbo in-between stuff of whose jurisdiction it is. We're having that in drainage as well. So what's happening is one's flooding out the other with who has that jurisdiction. And at this point, if we can make it a team effort and talk about it. And at this point, if we can make it a team effort and talk about it together in these jurisdictions, things will get done a lot faster.
Holly, when you mentioned that you had a lengthy absence, it's been very lengthy, years as a matter of fact.
Yes.
So appreciate the efforts that you and Brittany at Planning and Joe at Highway and Jay at Highway, or at Legal, put together in order to pull this back together. And so I do see this as something that drastically is needed in the future, especially with the growth that we're now seeing. We may have some issues to deal with from the past with it also, but certainly have issues coming up in the future that this commission will be able to relate to. So thank you. Commissioner Adkar.
Thank you. Absolutely support this. I think a little bit of the history, you may correct me on this because you're the historian in this, but it was really started out from drainage problems in the valley, if I, Drainage Commission.
I think that's mainly what they addressed, but others.
That's one of the main concerns, if I remember correctly from some of the stuff that's gone on. And we're in the same situation than we was back when it was originally probably formed. And I think getting a little bit of the history, I think with meeting with the commission that on Wednesday, I think there probably was some people that thought it was gonna be a one-day deal and didn't really realize how much work that needs to be done out there. I mean, the city's down to drainage B because, you know, just as you've talked about in some of this stuff, developers are required to do drainage but do the very minimum and we have to look further down. There is not a year that doesn't go by that I don't get a call about flooding out in the valley. There really isn't. So I mean, I think it's important that we have the foresight and so forth. And I'll just give a little bit of my report on that meeting. Deb was elected chair of the Drainage Commission and Lance Lehman was vice chair and Brittany is treasurer and I forget the name of.
Michael Knight, I think was the treasurer.
Was treasurer, so. But yeah, I think you're right, they're all going back to their constituents, so I do support it.
Okay.
So Chairman.
Commissioner Adkar.
Motion to move support continuing the Western Pennington Flood Management District and to provide them with the documents submitted by the Highway and Planning Departments for use in moving forward.
Got a motion and a second. Is there any public comment in regard to Drainage Commission? Back to the commission, any further discussion? Saying none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Item twenty-six is items from the public. I don't have any speaker request forms up here. Is there anybody in the public that had item that they wanted to bring for discussion before the commission? If not, I would take a motion for a short break while Planning is getting their system set up. So moved. I've got a motion and a second, all in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Take a motion to go into Board of Adjustment.
Vote.
We've got a motion and a second to go into Board of Adjustment, all those in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, first item, A, Cody.
Cody Sack, Urban Planner. Item A is variance VA twenty-two dash twenty-three. It's to allow more than forty dwellings on a dead-end road system. The applicant is Leslie Rutter. Location of property is two four zero three eight Pine Valley Road. This is gonna be, this application is gonna be withdrawn. Section two four F states, in all zoning districts, no more than forty dwellings are permitted on a dead-end road system. A dead-end road system is a total number of roadways connecting that private, that provide only a single point connection to a roadway that functions as an arterial. Upon review by staff, the property does not fall under this definition of a dead-end road system, as neck yoke road does not function in an arterial road. Therefore, variance is not required. So staff is going to recommend approval of the withdrawal of variance VA twenty-two dash twenty-three with the applicant's consent.
Can I get a motion to move to approve the withdrawal of variance VA twenty-two dash twenty-three?
So moved.
Thank you.
Got a motion and a second. Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carried. Thank you. Item B.
Item B is variance VA twenty-two dash twenty-five. It's to allow a thirty-three foot setback for a section line for an existing structure. The applicant is Argyle Properties LLC and Neela Lee. She is in the audience if there are any questions. Location of the property is two three nine one one Hidden Valley Trail. Current zoning district is agriculture district with existing land use of residential. Access is off Hidden Valley Trail and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. When approving variances, there's a two, we take a two-pronged approach for prong number one, whether granting variance runs counter to public interest. Number one, yes. The requested setback will put the existing garage thirty-three feet from the section line that could be developed in the future. A setback to the right-of-way could create safety issues if it is ever fully developed in the future. Number two, all structures are required to meet a fifty-eight foot setback. Number three, no. The zoning ordinance requires a fifty-eight foot setback to all section line right-of-ways. Number four, does not apply. And number five, yes, a thirty-three foot setback to the section line could harm public safety if it is ever fully developed in the future. And prong number two, whether a special condition exists to grant the variance. Number one, yes. A building permit was approved for the existing detached garage. The garage was constructed in a location that was on the proposed building permit application. Number one, A, yes, without an approved variance, the applicant would be forced to remove the detached garage that hadn't approved, had an approved building permit. And one, B, yes, denying this variance would require a structure that had an approved building permit to be torn down. This was right around for interdepartmental review of the Highway Department as opposed to granting any section line setback. And the Hidden Valley Road District said that they did not receive enough information on the impact of the neighborhood. Therefore, we cannot make an informed decision, but it seems a twenty-five foot setback are reasonable and not met on the subject property. We are also waiting to hear back if it is right-of-way or an easement. One member called and spoke with someone who was checking that for us. We will wait for more information. At this time, we are not in favor of it. The detached garage on approved building permit, building permit sixteen dash zero one four five, and the building permit was approved for a twenty-eight foot setback. The structure sits thirty-three feet from the property line. This variance brings the detached structure into compliance and staff did not receive any complaints regarding the structure. So with that, staff is going to recommend approval of variance VA twenty-two dash twenty-five with one condition, as a special condition exists that would create an unnecessary hardship.
I'll move approval.
Here, I've got, I've got a couple of speaker request forms on this.
On this garage?
On item B, those marked as.
All right.
So Joe Tornell.
Joe Tornell, resident of two three nine six six, further down the road. I'm actually reading this on behalf of Christina Fisher, who is the neighbor to the north of this property. And I believe this letter was part of the packet. So I'm just gonna read this letter on her behalf. So from Christina Fisher and Susan Williams in regards to this variance request, I request we postpone any decision concerning this variance. My intent is not to cause anyone to lose money or property. I want to make sure everyone understands the ramifications, good or bad, and if this is the best solution. There's been a lot of discussions concerning the location of property lines and the section line right-of-way. If the survey was done, I was never contacted and it was never completely state. Since we are unable to a hundred percent rely on the GPS maps that we have, that have been presented, I've requested a survey or to come out and stake out the property line and the section line right-of-way. I am personally paying for this survey, which is considerable in cost, and was lucky enough to find one that would be able to fit me in within the next few weeks. I should know the exact date by the end of this week. When I purchased the property in oh-nine, I tried to get a clear understanding of what it means to have a section line right-of-way. Throughout the years, I would call and receive different answers. At one point, I spoke to a lawyer and received a completely different set of answers. The only thing they all had in common was anything done within the section line right-of-way will always be at risk of being removed. This risk is based on what percentage of the right-of-way is on your property. This variance is for a zero-foot setback from the section line. If Pennington County determines a need for this right-of-way, does this mean I will now be at one hundred percent risk of losing a portion of my property because of this variance? If there is little or no chance of this happening, then why is there still a need for the right-of-way? Do both parties need to follow the right-of-way regulations? Is this variance the only solution? Why must it be at zero? Have we looked at other options? I apologize for not being able to attend in person, but we would be willing to meet with anyone to discuss these concerns after the survey has been completed. I would appreciate it if we could postpone the vote until the survey has been completed and these concerns have been addressed. Thank you, Christina Fisher.
So Joe, do you know the status of that at this point in time?
I do not. This letter is dated December fourth, so.
December fourth?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
And then as myself representing me, member of the Road District, and then I did speak to the Road District members, we just would, in support of our neighbor, request if possible, if we can have a continuance on this decision until the survey information can be collected for Christina. But other than that, we don't really have an objection to this.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Tornell?
Ms. Tornell.
Yes.
You know, there was a building permit approved already for twenty-eight feet?
Yes.
And she's asking for five more feet?
Yes.
So, and it was, it's already built, if I'm correct?
It is, yes.
So.
Again, if you're asking me personally, I have no problem with this.
Right.
I have no problem with this.
So the building permit was approved on, if the building permit wasn't approved for twenty-eight feet, there might be a little bit of a difference?
Right.
But for me, it's twenty-eight feet from, to thirty-three feet and I know for a section line, there's thirty-three feet on each side.
Yep.
So when they approved this before they knew that.
Yep. I think, I mean, the other thing in my, speaking with Jason, the way this all lays out is there was a mistake. There should've been variance when this building permit was given and it's certainly through no fault, no fault of the new owner. And it sounds like this is the only opportunity for the new owner to maintain or to actually have the county pay for, because my understanding is if this variance is not approved, the county would have to pay for the destruction of a portion of this garage.
No, not that I know of. The county doesn't pay to take down buildings. They might have to abate or do something else if they don't tear it down, if I'm correct, but, no.
That was just in a conversation with Jason. I don't, I'm not gonna hold you to it, but it was just a conversation, yeah.
Since I've been here, Mr. Tornell, which is a while, we've never had anybody take down a garage.
Exactly, and I certainly don't want to, I mean.
Yeah, so for me, from twenty-eight feet, if she didn't have a building permit and it was her fault.
Right.
I have a little bit more heartache about some of this, but since it was there, it's twenty-eight feet from thirty to thirty-three, I don't think that is a hardship in that sense for the community that's already there, because it's been there for a while.
Yep, I agree.
Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
But again, this, just so you know, this Christina Fisher, reading that on her behalf, okay? And can I, I don't know if you have this or not.
Darcy Gunderson.
My name is Darcy Gunderson. I live at two three eight nine six Hidden Valley Trail, which is right across the street from two three nine eleven Hidden Valley Trail. My big concern with the variance is if it is approved and the county makes the current owner expand the roadway, that that is going to push that roadway closer to my fence line. And, you know, it's a big concern with me, with people going up and down the road, especially now with this is going to be a rental property. So that is my biggest concern with having this variance granted. And I think that would infringe on not only my property, but also, you know, the Fishers. But basically, that is just my big concern about the variance.
Okay. Any questions of Ms. Gunderson?
Thank you.
Thank you. So Jim, did you have comments you wanted to make?
Yeah, if I could make some clarifications.
Okay.
Jim Peterson, agent for the applicant. So I investigated the two building permits prior to this, one in two thousand for the house. And if you look at that permit, the county stated to the applicant at that time that the setbacks were twenty-five, twenty-five, and twenty-five. It's all on the permit. The house was, their drawing shows a hundred feet. Now, this is that north line up there. So not sure how it impacts the previous neighbor, but the house was a hundred feet. Then later in twenty, that was in two thousand. So that, if you look at that application, the staff told them twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five. It is a section line, so there should be thirty-three more feet added to that. But it's clearly not on there. And then in two thousand sixteen, it's consistent again where the staff stated twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five. When they put the garage, they said they would be twenty-eight feet back. So they were feeling like they were in compliance, yet technically, because it's a section line, people miss that thirty-three feet that gets added. So I just want to point that out. Certainly no, it's just a point of procedure right now to clean it up for everybody and the applicant has no problem with the condition that's attached to it.
Okay, thank you. That's all the speaker request forms I had on this item.
So I'm gonna move approval.
With one condition?
One condition, sir.
Okay, so the motion is to approve variance VA twenty-two dash twenty-five with one condition, is there is a special condition that exists on the property that would create an unnecessary hardship. Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion and a second.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Adkar.
Now, this is only gonna be for that particular structure. It doesn't cover the whole property. It's only solely for that structure because of the incident and I just want to make sure that that's clear so that even the audience is aware that it doesn't mean that that whole section line gets that, it's just that piece right there, so.
Any further comments? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Item C.
Cody Sack, Urban Planner. Item C is subdivision regulation variance SB twenty-two dash ten, is to waive the requirement of additional water storage for domestic use and fire protection on the subject property. The applicant and landowner is Joy, excuse me, Joy Jola and Tracy Mesher. Location of the property is north of the intersection of Rushmore Ranch Road and Eleanor Drive, along Eleanor Drive. Involves three acres. Current zoning is planning and development district. Existing land use is vacant. Access is off Eleanor Drive and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, when looking at variances, we take a two-pronged approach for prong number one, whether granting variance runs counter to public interest. Number one, yes. The request is not a blight on the neighborhood and does not appear to be a threat of nuisance, but if a fire occurs, the undersized water storage could affect the ability to stop this burn onto neighboring properties. Also, the Southern Hills Water District only has water hookups for seven lots within Mountain Meadow Subdivision. If storage is not added, four lots within the subdivision would require individual wells. Number two, yes. The subject property is owned PUD with a three-acre lot size minimum and matches the surrounding zoning and lot sizes in the area. The applicant's want to place a single-family residence on the property, which is a use by right in the PUD. Number three, no. Under the subdivision regulations, a subdivision of more than fifteen lots must be served by a central water system. Mountain Meadow subdivision. must be served by a central water system. Mountain Meadow subdivision is connected to the Rushmore Ranch Estates water system. Plot note, number thirteen for Mountain Meadow states that after sixty-five building permits have been issued between the two subdivisions, insurity for the wa- additional water storage is required. Number four, yes, the current and future land use is planned in development. Number five, yes, inadequate water storage has the potential to inhibit the ability to fight a fire in the area. That would in turn affect public safety. Also, inadequate water storage could affect surrounding properties and access to water. And for prong number two, whether a special condition exists. Uh, number one, no. No special conditions exist that would prevent additional water storage. The property is heavily enforced and flat. There's no impediment constructing additional water storage. Uh, currently, the lot is vacant. Uh, this was rather often under department review. The Battle Creek Fire District, uh, recommends that, at a minimum, state codes be followed. The applicants are proposing to place a single-family residence on the subject property. A note on the plot for Mountain Redo Meadow subdivision states that one sixty-five building permits have been issued between Mountain Meadow subdivision and Rushmore Ranch State subdivision. That no additional building permits for single-family residents be approved until adequate water storage is guaranteed by surety. The Board of Commissioners have approved three requests to not construct additional water storage in the past. With that, staff is going to recommend to deny subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-two dash ten. There's no special conditions that exist on the property that would excuse literal enforcement of subdivision regulations, uh, thirteen hundred. Uh, but if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and decides to approve the request, staff would include one condition.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
Cody, how many lots are in Mountain Meadows?
Uh, thirteen, there's thirteen lots and two of them are common lots where residents can't be placed.
How many homes are built on those thirteen lots?
Uh, one has been built and the Board of Adjustment has approved, uh, three other variance requests for the same item.
With that being said, what are they, are they follow, do they have to do the same that, uh, you're requesting for these folks?
Uh, since.
Do they have to have additional water storage?
Uh, no, since the Board of Adjustment approved those subdivision regulation variances, they were not required to do additional water storage. But they are required, the, the board has approved this request as long as fire sprinklers, uh, were constructed within the residence, and I don't, uh, they're not requesting to waive that note on the plat, which the Board of Commissioners will see on the twentieth of December.
When you say water storage, uh, are you talking five hundred gallons, five thousand, or fifty thousand?
Uh, I, I can't remember how many gallons of storage they have right now, but the equivalent of what they would need to add would be they need to have ninety-five thousand gallons of water storage. I believe they have like sixty thousand, so you'd be looking at thirty-five thousand. Yeah, it's additional water storage.
Mr. Chair.
I think, I think the problem with this was the notes on the plat. We, we agree we're not going to do that anymore, but I think this is where a lot of the problems come from, uh, when our folks did that plat.
Commissioner Oster.
Cody, just, sir, remember, I, I know we've dealt with this a few times, but I thought we did some requirements for the homes, uh, whenever they built them. What, what were those specific requirements?
That specific requirement is the spr- uh, fire suppression.
They put a fire suppression system in, do they have their own small amount of water storage for that, or is it just the fire suppression system? And then.
Uh, from my understanding, I believe that there's an additional, uh, tank that's within the house. Uh, Jerome Harvey might be able to answer that a little better than I can.
A- and, and they know this, and they know that that will most likely be a requirement when they build their home.
Yes, that, I do not believe that they're requesting to vacate that note on that plat.
Okay, that's, I just want to make sure of that, and thank you, Jerome, for coming up here.
Yeah, Jerome Harvey, Fire Administration of Pennington County, South Dakota. Uh, the, uh, system that generally referred to is, uh, NFPA, National Fire Protection Association, thirteen D. And those are, uh, we have several of those in the county. Generally, there is some type of storage, uh, facility within the structure that's freeze protected. Uh, we try to, uh, make sure that it's also, uh, connected to the domestic water to keep that water from becoming stagnated. And then the, uh, generally speaking, I'm not a fire protection engineer, but generally, you're looking about fifteen minutes worth of suppression, and it gives time for the occupants of the structure to escape. That's generally what they're looking at as far as a, a thirteen D system.
Okay, thank you.
Chair. Commissioner Ross Connect.
Uh, that storage is three hundred to five hundred gallons.
Chairman.
Mr. Adcock.
So I've been here for the last three. I think most this commission has, um, and the best solution for helping out the people were the fire suppression system with the storage. So, um, I'm in agreement that if they're doing that and they have agreed to do that, um, I'm in agreement with moving this forward.
Mr. Chairman.
Uh, Jerome.
If I may, just be your conscience one more time, uh, this is an historic fire path. And, uh, uh, survived the Battle Creek Fire in two thousand two, and the, and I've been on a couple other fires in areas. So wildland urban interface incidents do impact this area. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jerome.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Oster.
You know, I'm, I'm with Deb. I think we, we've seen the three. We've approved them. Uh, they do have fire hydrants in most of the area, and I think we've seen reports where the wells were good, when they don't, and so forth, and it seems like I remember us putting that on the plat, that, that note. Maybe I'm, maybe it's just been in discussions, but that hasn't stopped from what's happening. To me, it sounds like up to seven, a- and that's it. And so I, um, that's where I guess I might put this property in the property index is because, you know, we know there's seven. It's been stated from the, the water department, and after that, I think then we're, we got some serious decisions to make. But you're right, we, we approved them with the condition that they'd have sprinkler systems in the house or some type of fire suppression. Although uh, you know, I don't know how we can enforce that, but I, I just, I know that's what we've done in the past.
So it'll, it's enforced on their building permit. They have to submit their plans for that fire sprinkler system, uh, with their building permit for their building permit to be approved.
Okay.
Other comments? Is there a motion?
To approve.
Got a motion and a second to approve? Any other public comment? Although it's in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item D.
Item D is subdivision regulation variance SV twenty-two dash eleven. It's to exceed more than forty units on a dead-end road system. The applicant landowner is Brian Schroeder. The agent is Davis Engineering, Ron Davis. Location of the property is two four zero seven five Barney Road. Current zoning is agriculture district. The land is vacant. Access is off Barney Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, when looking at variances, we take a two-pronged approach for prong number one, whether granting the variance runs counter to public interest. Uh, number one, no. Currently, there are over forty units on a dead-end road system. The applicant is requesting to subdivide the property into two lots. Uh, number one, no. Currently, there are over forty units on a dead-end road system. Number three, no. Section nine oh four states that no more than forty units are allowed on a dead-end road system. Uh, number four does not apply. And number five, yes. There are already approximately eighty units on the dead-end road system, and the applicant is requesting to subdivide the property into two lots, which would increase density. And for prong number two, whether special condition exists to grant the variance. Well, number one, no. No physical condition exists to grant the variance. Currently on the property, the property is vacant. There's no, uh, uh, subject system on the property. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property into two lots. Uh, one will be approximately six point one seven acres, and one will be approximately eight point one acres. The request was rather often under department review. At the time of the staff report, there were no objections or concerns that were received. Uh, but I do believe that the Naughty Pine Road District does have some concerns with it. Uh, the applicant is requesting to subdivide the property to create two lots. The applicant is also proud for comprehensive plan amendment. CA twenty-two dash twenty to change the future land use from agriculture to rancher. Endurizo on the property from agricultural to rancher. Which will be heard on the December twelfth, twenty twenty-two Planning Commission meeting and the December twentieth, twenty twenty-two Board of Commissioners meeting. Again, there are approximately eighty units already on the dead-end road system. Uh, so with that, staff is going to recommend denial as there is no special condition that exists that would excuse literal enforcement of Pennington County subdivision regulation, section nine oh four. However, if the Board of Adjustment disagrees and approves the request, uh, staff does not have any conditions to include.
Any questions, Cody?
I mean, Cody, can you show us the whole area in that district instead of just this map? And what it's connected to, and what's the arterial, or there's a minor, a major connector in that area?
So the subject property is this property right here.
Hey, and then what is the other land uses around it? Can you show me that too?
It's all agriculture.
The whole area?
For the most part, agriculture, correct, yes. I believe there might be some ranches. So this is what the zoning would look like for that.
The green road is, I guess I could ask Mr. Davis when he comes up.
That's Hart Ranch.
Hart Ranch Road. So Hart Ranch Road follows all the way to Non- Naughty Pine Lane to Na- Naughty Pine Court to Barney Road. So what is the green? Is it a minor arterial, or what is it? Or is it just a?
I guess I'm not, I'm not sure what you're referring to.
Maybe Mr. Davis.
Mr. Chair.
Sorry.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I saw, hold on, Ron.
I, uh.
Hold on, Ron. They're trying to figure out the green road, please.
I believe that would be considered a collector.
Okay. And how many are on the collector? Is that what you're saying is over the forty-unit rule?
Yeah, so when, once you turn off of Neck Yoke Road, uh, there's approximately eighty, eighty lots. I think Mr. Davis has eighty-two. Uh, that's shown on here, so it's over twice the limit that would be allowed.
So on the collector road, we, we say we're not defining the road of how many forty unit means? Is it on a collector, on a register, is it on a sixty-six foot wide or a twenty-four foot wide?
So for this, for the subdivision regulations, dead-end road system, it just says any road system. Any, like, any road system that's on a dead-end road that's more than forty lots, like any road combined.
So Cody, tell me how wide that, that road is.
Hart Ranch Road, I believe.
At twenty-four?
I believe so.
And does that stay twenty-four feet all the way through?
No.
Okay, where's it go? What's the width when it goes to Naughty Pine Lane and Naughty Pine Court and Barney Road?
When you go to Naughty Pine Court and Barney Road, I, you get into the, I believe, nine to twelve feet. I know the road districts here, they'd be able to really answer that question a lot.
That's nine to twelve feet?
Yes.
So how did we put a nine to twelve feet road onto a twenty-four foot road with this many houses?
Uh, I guess I'm not sure.
So once we start letting people build on it, we never made them improve the road in any wider than the nine to twelve feet?
Correct. Naughty Pine might be a little wider than.
Joe, do you know?
I don't know the answer to your question, but the county has no jurisdiction over the road within a road district.
Right, but do you, have you drove that road to see if, how wide it was, Joe?
I have not. I was just gonna, I was gonna comment on your, uh, road classification, so I would consider Naughty Pine and west, or Hart Ranch West, your local road going to your Neck Yoke, which is the collector, and then Hi- US Highway sixteen would be your arterial.
So your collector is Neck Yoke, and the green road is just a minor?
It would be a local road, yes.
Okay. That was my question, just to, just to see how wide the road goes from twenty-four to nine to twelve. So we put all these houses in these areas with a nine to twelve foot road, and then I don't know what North Pine Court is, how wide that is.
Naughty Pine looks like it could be twenty feet. But Barney Road is.
Nine to twelve.
Yeah.
And you want two more lots on that? And how's the topography there, Cody?
It's pretty steep when you get down towards Barney Road.
Okay, thank you. Sorry, Ron, go ahead.
Chair. What I was gonna say, this was brought to my attention by the road district, so I did a site inspection, and I submitted those photos, uh, the last meeting or the meeting before. And Naughty Pine, or Barney Road is, uh, at best a glorified trail, steep ravines, uh, cars dumped over the side. Steep topography, I, uh, I can't support this because, uh, just the conditions of Barney Road and, uh, and the thoughts and, uh, comments by the road district, and I hope Shane can get up and explain that in more detail.
So I do have a couple speaker request forms on this. Uh, Shane Taylor. Just identify yourself, Shane. Just identify yourself, please.
I'm, my name is Shane Taylor, and I'm the current president of the Naughty Pine Road District. I want to truly thank Ron Ross Connect, um, for contacting me yesterday. I didn't realize this meeting was happen, happening today, so thank you, Ron. Um, we do have concerns with the road district. Uh, number one, it's a, quite a ways back in there. Especially Barney Road would need to be improved before, you know, up to a, like a twenty-four foot road. There's no way emergency vehicles, um, could get back there now. Should we have a catastrophic, catastrophic, catastrophic fire or anything like that, we're going to have a hard time getting residents out of there. Um, of course, you guys are very familiar with road districts, I'm sure, and our budget is pretty, is extremely limited to blading the road, gravelling the road. There is improvements. Um, before I was president, there was an engineering study done with suggestions and things like that, but I just don't see how we can approve any more subdivision back there and, until, or unless, number one, there's another exit out of there and that we can improve and widen, especially Barney Road. There's no way we could get emergency vehicles in and out of there. People's lives could be in danger if we had a cata- catastrophic event. That's my main concern with approving any more subdivisions back there.
So chairman.
I also, with me today is, um, Pat Briesmeister. He's our vice president. He might want to make some comments too.
Okay, then I have him down. Uh, Commissioner Adcock, you had questions?
Yes, sir. So Shane, um, your road goes from twenty-four foot to what on Naughty Pine Lane?
You know, I'm gonna say from Hart Ranch Road West going past my house is twenty-four foot. Um, once you hit Naughty Pine Lane, I'm gonna say that's probably about twenty foot until you get up on top.
How about Naughty Pine Court?
Naughty Pine Court's even smaller than Naughty Pine Lane.
Is there a lot of?
Barney Road's probably that nine, nine-foot road.
So is.
And that, that whole property that they're trying to subdivide is completely surrounded by Barney Road.
So let me ask you something. Is anybody using Barney Road besides these people that would subdivide?
Yes, there's two residents that live back there, Jan Rosinski, and then I can't say her daughter's name and husband live back there at the end of the road, and they've been there for years and years, is my understanding.
And you didn't, you didn't oppose them being back there?
Huh?
You didn't oppose them on this road?
Am I gonna oppose them on this?
Oh, did you oppose those two?
They were there long, they've been there for years and years.
And they haven't had any problems with safety factors on that road that you know of?
Now that I'm president, they have all kinds of safety concerns about that road. They never addressed them when they were a part of the, they created, Jan and Margaret created the road district, and there's always been, yes, safety concerns and stuff on that road, and, but nothing was ever done about it.
And how about Naughty Pine Court? Did anybody say anything about that road having a safety factor?
Um, no, not at this point.
And how many people are on Naughty Pine Court that you know of?
There's a lot. At least ten to twelve.
So you take a twenty-four foot road to a twenty foot road to less than a Naughty Pine with more than twenty, what, twenty people, and then you have a couple on Barney Road, but we're opposed to adding two more lots on Barney Road because there's a safety factor?
Right, definitely there is. I think Ron has been out there. When I spoke to him yesterday, he told me he had, and I think he understands our concerns as a road district.
Well, and I understand your, your concerns of your road district as well, but what happened is a lot of other people have used the same concerns, lived out there, over twenty on Naughty Pine Court without any issues, if I'm correct, and nobody opposing anybody else coming out there. But then we're going further back to a road that's only has two people that would go into two lots, that we feel that is a safety factor now. To me, if there was such a safety factor, then the road should have been to twenty-four feet on Naughty Pine Lane and then again widen the road on Naughty Pine Court before even got to Barney Court, but nobody opposed that.
You know, I'm not gonna, I'm not gonna disagree with that. How did you guys let that happen? You know, my, my comment, there is, there is concerns now back there legit from the people that are back there. I hear about them at every meeting.
Well, usually if there was an issue in between there, there would have been safety factors, it would have been fire department, there would have been highway department, there would have been, of course, not highway department, of course, now because there is a road district. But the road district is one that usually comes in and opposes these things to us and says, we can't do this on a road district because there isn't enough room, kinda like you're saying today. But they come and let all these people already use this road and now there's a safety factor. So for me, um.
Well, how would you look at that, Deb?
Well, how, how I look at it is if there was a safety factor, then you moved a bunch of people on Naughty Pine Court with a big safety factor, and then you said the other people on Barney Court were there for a long time. If there was a safety factor, the people on Barney Court would have came in and said, you know what? We already have issues in Naughty Pine Court. Adding to the road district, then why'd you let twenty in the, in the area if there was such a safety factor on it? I guess that's my question is because if I'm in the district and I, and I have.
So what you're telling me, Deb, is it's okay, have you been out there? You should go out there. It's okay to allow more people on that road district. Is, I, I mean, I'm just here be, I'm here on behalf of the road district and the concern of the people within the road district.
Right.
And they all agree. And I know Jan and her husband has been back there for many years. I don't know what went on back in them days. I've, I've been a resident there almost seventeen years and I'm in my second year of being the president of the road district, and these concerns do come to us at every meeting.
Well, Shane, and I, I respect what you guys are saying. I truly do, but somebody else owns this lots over here and how are they supposed to divide their lots or how are they supposed to have a lot where people can come and shut down their lots saying safety factor? But I can't come and say down, okay, so now you guys, maybe we just say we have to improve your road to twenty feet, four feet because there's a safety factor. So you're gonna shut down, I can shut down these people saying there's a safety factor, but I can't the others because I wasn't here to shut them down? Is that what you're saying?
Well, what I'm saying is, I'm not against the subdivision, but the road, before they, you guys approve this subdivision, don't you think you ought to make sure that the road is appropriate for emergency vehicles and things like that to get in and out of there?
And, and I agree with that. So this is, today is the subdividing of the lots. It's not about just doing the road right now, if I'm correct. This is about subdividing the lots today and then.
Next week.
To not do the road? So this is, so tell, so Mr. Davis, can you come up for just a sec? Is this for, when I'm reading of this, I thought it was to subdivide into, to exceed more than forty units on a dead end system, which is two more lots. So I'm, today I'm supposed to, if I need to, if that's my agreement, then I'm gonna subdivide two more lots on this road district or on this road.
Yeah, this is not the plat, though. This is just a variance to allow one more house, not two. There's already an existing law that they can build on.
Okay.
And they wanna split it in half and add one more house.
Okay.
Okay, and because it's at the end of a dead end road, there can't be over forty houses?
Yes, and that's what I'm understanding.
And there's eighty-something out there.
And it's not that today we have to say, okay, if you're gonna build those lots, it comes on the plat or it comes later that we have to make the road bigger.
Correct, it comes later. When we do the plat approval, that's when that will be addressed.
That's what I'm saying. So today is to allow them to have another, uh, to subdivide, not just having one house, but two houses. It's not on the, um, road. It's not, the road issue is a dead end road, and to me, for a dead end road, I've been in disagreement with the forty unit rule for a while, just depending on if there's a bridge, like at Bradsky's, there's a bridge, there's a safety factor there. There's areas that, can these people get out? Can these people go somewhere else if there's a fire, a flood, or an emergency? And if there is, we have a lot of issues then with some of these other areas and saying, okay, there's not a safety factor in the whole area. And if we need to, he needs to improve the road wider, just like we did in, what was the last one? Klondike Road. They have to come in and they have to improve that road bigger in order to have a safety factor for those people to go back in there. You see what I'm saying? So I'm with you, Shane, saying you should be able to have your property rights, but you also, when you want those property rights, those roads better be safe to get to your property and to get out. So I'm not in disagreement on the road, sir. Okay, just so you know that, Shane.
Mr. Chair.
I'm good. I understand.
If I can add one more comment for you, a little history on this. I did this plat in nineteen sixty-one or two, I don't know when it was, and there were no rules on roads. Back then, you did the plat, it got filed, there was no requirement to build a road, no standards, nothing. That's why all this got built this way. And of course, the people have been living out there for years, the Shwazenskis, and they've never had any complaints about the road, to me anyway, that I've never heard anything. I knew Jim real well. It's just a matter of, also, I think probably, these people already own this lot and they live out there, and the road district should probably be addressing some of that. I know the funds are always really low on road districts, but since it's a road district and not a county road, it's the road district that should be improving that road to serve the people in their district.
Are these people in this road district, Shane?
And how that's handled, that's handled by the road district.
Are these people that are subdividing, are they in your road district?
Barney Road is in our road district, yes.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that.
And we do gravel and blade the road, so I don't know where you're coming from, but we do gravel and blade the road to the best of our ability with the budget we have, which is very small.
Mr. Chairman. Patrick, your turn.
Thank you. Pat Briesmeister, I'm also part of the road district, but speaking as a resident, and you're, somebody created the forty unit rule for, for a reason, okay? Doesn't matter if there's a bridge there, if there's, it's a forty unit rule. We have twice the amount, regardless of what the road is, twice the amount. You're putting my wife and myself and the other eighty residents or a hundred and sixty of us without kids at risk by saying, to heck with the forty rule, we'll just keep adding more. And, and do we have to wait for a disaster to say, that was a bad idea? Somebody created the forty rule. Your world created that forty, i- if it's not a good one, I agree with you. Bring it up in a different setting to, to banter that to determine should it is the right number forty or fifty or whatever, but right now it's forty and we're at eighty plus. So from a road perspective, I would like to ask the man that, that created that road, that there is a steep ravine that Ron talked about. We don't know what's in that steep ravine which the road goes over. We have heard cars, old refrigerators, stoves that are supporting that road. So when you say that the road infrastructure is okay for the two people that live back there, they're at risk. She's seventy-plus years old. The road district doesn't have the funds to build that road properly. And to go and charge everybody a tax, for lack of a better term, to improve that road to twenty-four feet wide is ridiculous. There's two people that live back there. So it is a cluster. We inherited a cluster from a road district perspective that we have all different sorts of, uh, roads, twenty-four foot, twenty foot, nine foot. It is what it is. We're just trying to prevent a future incident from happening. And, and so hopefully you guys understand that, no, let them build on their fourteen acres, have no problem with that. The road still needs to be improved. They need to take ownership of that. They, the part of the road that is in serious condition unfortunately surrounds their fourteen acres. So, you know, I, I, I feel bad, but that's just the cluster that we're in and, and what we're trying to, to figure out. To add to it, this doesn't make any logical sense to, to myself to, to say, oh, it's okay because we've let, you know, this problem just continue. Well, two wrongs don't make a right.
Chairman.
Commissioner Haidkak.
So a subdivision rule is a forty unit rule, it's not an ordinance. So what we do is we, we, not just this board, but other boards had felt that it, there wasn't a safety factor. You believe there's a safety factor, or this group does maybe, on Barney Road, but who's going to be affected by Barney Road is the people subdividing and the person that's gonna be driving that. You guys won't be driving that. Now, if you're gonna improve or you're gonna do subdivision, then you're probably gonna wanna not only do theirs, then you're gonna wanna do that other naughty, or Naughty Pine Court. So, um, two wrongs don't make a right either. You made a decision after forty units, which have been around, I don't know, since ninety-six that we know of, in, in the county, to keep building out there and letting people go out there, including us. So it wasn't, you gotta take personal responsibility on both sides.
I, I, I'll, I'll take it, and I'm saying enough is enough. No.
Well, you're saying enough's enough while you're out there, but not when you're subdividing and being the person that's gonna be affected, but why you say is a safety factor. They're the ones that are taking that safety factor into their own hands when they wanna subdivide and put someone there. And somebody that gets on that road, I've seen it a hundred times where they build on six foot, nine foot roads, that's, they're putting that on them. And, and like you said, can the, um, emergency services come out there? I think that eighty unit rule came about because of disaster, fire and flood. Somebody decided to keep that rule on some of these subdivisions and to me, and ask Brittany, I have brought it up, up over and over again. It's not working, number one, and number two, some of these areas, people can get out. People, there is other alternatives, even though there isn't a road. There isn't a huge safety factor where we shouldn't be able to build past forty units. Some people used it so they didn't, so other people couldn't build around them. So unfortunately, yeah, I've been in here, I'm not making it up, sir, I've been in here, what, politics, I don't know, fourteen, fifteen years from the city all the way to the county.
I'm not talking politics, I'm talking lives. This is serious biz. We're not talking that just, you know, this is willy-nilly. We inherited a mess. What we're explaining is adding on to the mess will just create more mess. I don't care about your forty, sixty, eighty rule. I care about the people that are there, including myself.
So what number were you when you went out there?
I didn't build, I bought. So it was already there.
Okay, so you bought into the area?
So I have no idea. This was the first I've heard of a forty, forty unit rule. I don't know if it's good, bad, or indifferent. All I do know is we're double the amount, which should, alarm bells should be going off for everybody to say, ooh, that's not good. Coupled with the fact that the road infrastructure is poor at best.
Which would be on to a road district's area to fix.
Without any money. So we're doing the best we can. We've already said we don't have any money.
So personal responsibility is you went into a road district that doesn't have any money to fix a road, so the road was like it was when you moved there. Number two, you more, moved in and you said, now you're playing forty unit rule, which probably when you were there, there was more than forty units there.
Absolutely.
But if it would have been you, you would have fought just like the same lady. I'm, I'm saying that from, not politics, I'm saying that, I wasn't trying to be politically correct.
I, I don't know.
And, and I do care about people's lives, but I've noticed that it only comes into play when it's in your district, unless it's you personally being affected by it. A lot of people have a complaint with someone else being on their road, and it becomes a safety factor, but it wasn't a safety factor until they wanted to subdivide the lots. Nobody complained that these people were on a, on, on a bad road and came to us to say, okay, something's going on here, these people live on this unsafe road and now they, now that they wanna split it and, and it's their property?
If you would drive it, we wouldn't have, be having this discussion.
Mr. Chair.
Ron drove it and understands the limitations. So I, I, I get what you're saying, but road districts, that's why the county doesn't want anything to do with road districts, because it's a cluster, it's a mess. And you're expecting this magical road district made up of volunteers that have no money to say, well, you should just improve it. That's logical in statement, illogical in practice.
But sir, I didn't join a road district, that's why I live where I live, whether it's city or county, I know what I'm buying into.
We're into it, what, it is what it is. I can't change the road district.
Okay, not trying to be argumentative, but you moved into an area that had a road district that had the road there before you started. Number two, then you moved into an area that you said you didn't know about forty unit rule and nobody else out there knew about it.
Nobody knows about it.
Okay, so now we're gonna bring up a forty unit rule when someone wants to subdivide when we already have all these people, over forty extra people already out there?
So why are you adding, why are you thinking of adding more to it?
Because I don't believe it's a safety factor. In my, I don't believe it's a safety factor, them sub, subdividing one area. If they were to take, take those lots into two acre lots or, or turn it into a suburban or some of the areas that some of these people have done before in areas that I think are safety factors, I truly believe that.
They do wanna turn it into ranchettes, which is half the size of what normally is required out there.
Can I tell you, if they do it more than two lots, I can guarantee you, I won't be, I won't be voting for it.
Mr. Chair.
Well, at the end of the day, Deb, I appreciate your argument. Obviously, Ron feels it's not a good decision. Your staff recommended denial of the subdivision and President, us representing the road district feels, I'm good. If you guys wanna subdivide it, get that Barney Road up to snuff, put it in your plans, get it up to where it needs to be. I'm not against the subdivision, but I, and there is, I'm gonna stand, there is a safety rule should we have to get people out of there. I don't know if this eighty units includes Clydesdale Road, but Clydesdale Road out there.
It does.
It does, but there's a lot of people we'd have to evacuate, and someday there will be that catastrophic fire in that area because the forest is very poorly managed. I've tried to get some of the property owners, residents with the wildland fire, they've got a great program out there. It just seems like nobody wants to take action and, and nobody's gonna complain or bitch about it until that catastrophic fire does happen, and then, and that's, that's my concern, so.
Thank you, Shane. I appreciate your thoughts and that you understand what I'm trying to say. I'm not, I'm not always against subdivision or, or road districts or anything. In fact, I've been more than helpful to find resolutions with things, but I try to see both sides of the story, not just one. And if they can improve that road to Barney Road, that's actually a, a pretty big improvement. If they can make that road big enough to make it a safety factor.
If they can make that road big enough, my main concern is getting people in and out of there and, you know, being over that forty, double of that forty unit, you know, what is an exit program? If you guys go out and look at the forest there off of Barney Court and Barney Road, there's gonna be no stopping. That, there's been no forestry management out there whatsoever, so it's, it could be catastrophic.
Well, Shane, there is a, a fire and flood mitigation plan that we work on, especially with forty unit rules, that we can actually require as well, that I think is something that if this, if the people wanna do this, that that should be a requirement of anything that's over forty units, and we started doing that with Jason and Brittany. So we are looking at what you guys are saying, and we are trying to change our rules and regulations because of that, but that is one of the things for forty unit rule I think should have been changed a long time ago, is fire and flood mitigation. But what I'm trying to say, sir, is if they could improve that road wider and do what they're supposed to do on that road in order to subdivide, I'm okay with it. If they can't, I won't be agreeing with it.
And I just wanna clarify, the, the problems with Barney Road were always And I just wanna clarify. The, the problems with Barney Road were always there. You just never heard of them. We've always known that that was a high-risk area. And we've, we constantly look at what can we do to mitigate the situation with the funds we have. Adding more people to it, you then go, okay, even that plan probably isn't suffice. So, is bringing it to twenty-four foot the right answer? I don't know. But, but making it wider definitely is. They've got a big hurdle with that ravine that goes right across the road.
There's actually two of those ravines that are in question. And when we had the engineering study done, and this was before me, but I understand that, um, there's been big recommendations. There's two big ravines there that, um, need to be addressed. Um, one specifically, and really that there's a drainage issue with it. Um, and it just needs to be addressed. And it's funny, it is backfilled with junk, other than a little bit on the road. You know, the, the engineering study told us we could put two-by-six railing along there to keep cars from going off the edge. And it's very narrow. And, and I'm like, what's, uh, number one, you can't dig a post hole. Number two, um, what's a two-by-six gonna do to the propane guy, the FedEx guy, the truck like that? You know, there's, it might stop the little van that Jan drives from going over the edge. So, that's how come I haven't, um, I've been against spending money on a, on a, just to make everybody feel if, if it really isn't gonna do the job. So, there, there needs to, I'm all for subdivisions out there. Number one, there should be another way out of there. Number two, if, who's ever wants to develop that or put more houses in there, if they're willing to help get that road up to snuff, I'm not against the subdivision. I'm concerned about.
I appreciate that, you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Lacroix, first run, then I'll come to you.
Just for some clarification. Cody, this is, this discussion on the forty-unit rule, the variance for that. It, once it goes into the plating, that's when we can talk about the road improvement and that type of stuff. Correct. So, that.
Correct.
Okay. Before I address that, I wanted to make that clear because Deb's right on the forty-unit rule. We've been talking about that for quite a while. You know, folks, you say eighty, you're absolutely right. If, if the Black Hills were flat like eastern part of the state, we wouldn't have this problem. But we do have this problem because we, we live in the, the beautiful Black Hills and it's not always feasible to have two exits. Other parts of towns, we're pretty strict on that. It, it's able to be done. So, I just wanted to put some clarification on that. And, and there's a lot of arguments I heard going back and forth about how you let this, how you let that. Well, you know, this is a community and people bought into this, knowing what, what they bought into. And so, I just wanted to express the forty-unit rule, we never really had a good clarification on what it is, but I can tell you right now in our area, you know, we're gonna have exceptions. And we're gonna make safety. But right now, we're, that's what we're talking about is the forty uni, unit rule, not the road improvement. And so, that would come later. If this is approved, then we could have a good, long discussion on what needs to be done for that road in order for someone to do it, which may help you. Okay? So, I mean, there's a double-edged sword on there. If they, if they, it's too expensive to be done, they could say, no, they don't wanna do it. But it could help the road district at some point. Those are my clarifications that I wanted to make. Is, you know, I can't be steadfast on the forty-unit rule because of topography in our area. I can't. And I understand your guys' arguments on safety and wanting to stop this one, because, but you've all known it when you bought your properties, you know, and, and with the exceptions that there is. But I do look at this as a way it could possibly help you in the future. If they choose to split the lot and we make requirements of the road to be improved, it could help.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
Yes, there's a couple of things I'd like to talk about. Number one, if you went out there like I did, uh, you would see the condition of that road. And then you'd ask yourself, what's it gonna take to fix that road to the requirements that we've been talking about? And I, and trust me, it's gonna be major, major dollars. These folks bought this property last, or this year for three-hundred-and-thirty-five thousand dollars. Now, before they bought it, maybe they should've found out or done a little research to see if they could indeed, and what obstacles would they, would they run into. But, uh, I guess it's easier to buy the property and they just think we're gonna automatically let them subdivide. Just as, uh, Shane talked about earlier, just for safety reasons, there's no way I'm gonna support this.
Mr. Chair.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Travis, as this bull get. Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Luster.
You know, we've been dealing with this forty-unit rule for a long period of time. One of them, one of the main roads, and Commissioner Hancock talked about it, is, uh, it's in my district, it's Bradsky Road. And, you know, whenever, a lot of those lots were platted, just like in this case, it was platted before the rule came into effect. Then the rule came into effect, and then either we follow the, the rule for safety purposes or we don't. I get it. One road, or one replating is not gonna be a major impact. However, you replat one here, then someone says, well, then I wanna replat mine. And someone says, I wanna split mine. And someone else says, I wanna split mine. And we already still have a problem there. I, I can't in good conscience, whenever we already have over eighty units there, um, when we, when we have a rule, it's a forty-unit rule, um, that's specifically for safety purposes. Either we, A, put together a team and address the forty-unit rule from the county's perspective and actually define what that means and give some very specific parameters, so we can move forward without having to kinda guess, well, is there a bridge on this? Well, then that, maybe that makes it where we can't do it. But if there's not a bridge, well, then we can do it. That would be my concern is that we're, that we're, that we don't have a standard that we can go off of except the forty units. And so, in, in my view, I can't, you know, if they wanted to build a house on that because it was platted before the forty-unit rule, I have no problem with that. Because it was already platted, it was before the rule came into effect. Uh, that's the reason why a lot of homes are built after the forty-unit rules, 'cause it was platted. Someone didn't build it during that time, but twenty years later, they decided to build it. I can't argue with that, and I'll never argue with that because it was platted and it was done. But once that rule came into effect, and if it's a safety factor, I can't in good conscience add other lots to an area unless we address the forty-unit rule to make it more clear so that we know what we're dealing with. So, I, my stance at this point in time is that I can't be supportive of this until we are willing to figure out from, from the commission side of things, how we want the forty-unit rule to be impactful. What do we want it to address? Do we want it to address ingress, egress with a bridge, not a bridge? Is it, you know, I don't know, maybe even getting fire involved with giving us insight on how the evac and the egress goes in an area, whether or not, well, we can do eighty in this unit, in this area, even though it's a dead-end road, or we can only do forty in that area 'cause it's a dead-end road. So, I mean, those are things that I, I'm gonna look at and, and consider. And so, I think I just said my piece on that.
So, Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Adgar.
So, you have eighty-two lots served Hart Ranch Road. Um, that means none of y'all can subdivide, no matter where you're at out there, until this is addressed. Because this is, this is no different than the other areas, right? None of you're gonna be able to subdivide, bring your kids in, uh, add five-acre lots into it or anything else. And how much you wanna bet me that lasts for, if you're lucky, a year? Since I've been in politics, you're telling me this whole ag area is not gonna ever subdivide, ever, until we figure out a forty-unit rule? That's never gonna happen.
Has it happened since?
Number two, this is all ag. This is all ag. So, when y'all come in, in this area, you're gonna keep telling people this road district, and these people are gonna keep coming in and shoving everybody down in this district who wants to subdivide. Whether it's a hardship or not, you're gonna say no. 'Cause the road is not gonna be big enough. You, one person, a couple might, but I'm gonna tell you, if it's your friend, if it's your family, if it's your people that you're concerned about, that need someplace to stay and your sixteen acres need to be subdivided, you're gonna say no. I don't think that's gonna happen since I've been in politics, and I'm not politically correct. We just told you, sir, four times. We have never hardly followed the forty-unit rule unless there was a huge safety gap factor on a bridge going across. So, I answered your questions. I'm gonna tell you, since I've been in politics with fifteen, sixteen, eight, ten acre lots, y'all didn't keep your word. Okay? So, now all of a sudden, this has a road, which I've seen in Ron's district and everybody's district, that has a road that has a safety factor, Klondike Road and everything else. And we ended up giving them what they needed to to bring other people in on a nine-foot road, in a commercial district, in an ag area. But now all of a sudden, it's a, it's a safety factor too, Ron. I don't get you.
Mr. Chair.
Because it's your district, I understand that. But you can't pick and choose. Is there a forty-unit rule? Is there a safety factor? Is there a commercial business that shouldn't be in it, that it's having twenty people go on a road that's nine-foot to six-foot? My goodness. We pick and choose them by personalities. Since I've been in politics, I have not understood it. Be fair and just to everybody. Because if this comes in again and one of you guys wanna subdivide, I'll say yes. You know why? Because that's what you're gonna need to do. Because you're not always gonna be, uh, a certain age where you're gonna go into retirement age. And it's happened over and over. It, it did it in the city. Many people that said, Deb, I'll never do it. Those were the first ones when their family needed them, that they subdivided. So, I'm not trying to be mean to you. I'm trying to be fair to everybody and just. And if these people wanna improve their road and make it bigger and make it safe for them, they should be able to. Because that's fair and just.
Commissioner Ross, connect.
No, you're not.
I guess what I was gonna point out relative to the forty-unit rule.
You pick it.
They're not all, they're not all equal. When you take into consideration that forty-acre rule, you have to take into consideration the fire hazard. And this thing's located in an area of a fire hazard. You have to take into consideration topography. We've already talked about the steep, uh, gullies and terrains. You have to take into consideration the density. Uh, this property is located at the very, very end, uh, two lots, uh, beyond it, uh, at the end of that road system. That makes it more dangerous, because if you do have a fire, they're, they're the ones that are gonna have the hardest problem getting out. Wouldn't be like if they were only a half a mile off of Neck Yoke. And you got, and that brings me to the location they have to take into consideration. And then, as Travis mentioned, ingress and egress. Right now, you don't have ingress and egress that's, that's considered safe. So, there's, uh, five conditions right now that I think we have to take into consideration relative to the forty-unit rule.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lacroix.
This is my final comment. I'm just going back to what I had said earlier. We're talking about the forty-unit rule, either for it or against it. And quite frankly, I'm, like I said, topography, I'm, I'm properly on board for this because knowing, from what I've just been told from the road district, when this comes back, it, to, to get divided up, we could put on requirements for road improvement. If they so choose not to go that route, that's their choice. So, that, we're letting the residents make that decision, that it's unfeasible to do it, not us or anybody else. And I think I'd go for that for any resident in that area. We'd look at the roads and say, okay, if you wanna subdivide, yet roads need to be up to snuff. As I said, topography and the Black Hills make it difficult. So, that's where I'm standing. But right now, this is, what we're talking about is the forty-unit rule. We're not talking about the road, what needs to be done, safety factor, that type of stuff will come up when they decide to plat.
Okay. We've got a, uh, staff recommendation of denial, but I don't have a motion in front of me.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second to deny. Any further discussion?
Chairman.
Commissioner Adgar.
So, when this comes, comes up again, um, I expect to bring the same thing up without being facetious to people when they do this to other people. And they do this in this district because they say their reasoning today is this, but tomorrow is a whole different ballgame. Because I keep seeing this, in this district, where we pick and choose these areas, depending on a safety factor today and something else we make up the next day. 'Cause we just did an area that had a person with a, with a house, and there was only one way in and one way out. But they let him go ahead and do that. And they told him they could build the house somewhere else, 'cause that wasn't quite the place they thought that they should build their house. We are not in that job description. The job description is a forty-unit rule, not a safety factor at this point, until that road is not improved. And unfortunately, when you vote against it, because you're saying the fa, safety factor on a rule, then you didn't read what Lloyd just said. You're picking and choosing what you decide is a safety factor, and I don't think you have that right as a commissioner. You follow the rules and regs which are on the paper, and then you give those people, every person in here, the opportunity to fix a road or fix something, to make it better so they can have their property and their property rights. And I do it all the time. I don't just do it for certain people.
Got a motion and a second. Any further discussion by the commission? Uh, no, we're done with the, with the speaking from the public. All in favor of the motion to deny, indicate by saying aye.
We have to do a vote.
Aye.
That's, they're the other side.
You didn't offer the public.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I'm not sure that they spoke.
What?
I'm not sure the public spoke. I think we had a lot of conversation.
Okay, okay. I, I'm sorry. I'll back up on that.
Oh, is that what it was?
Public comments. I don't have any, I don't have any speaker request forms.
He had some comments he wanted to make.
If somebody has something to say, they can come forward. Okay?
Oh, sorry.
Can I make one comment right away?
Okay.
Ron Davis, Davis Engineering. Item A on the variance that you approved, or you approved them, uh, taking it off the consent. Um, the reason was because Neck Yoke wasn't an arterial. And so, this rule didn't apply. The forty-acre didn't apply because of that rule. Does this, is this the same thing? It's in the same location?
Saying no.
It's the exact same thing.
On the connector.
Uh, so Cody Sack, environmental planner. If you look at the definition of a dead-end road system under subdivision regulations, which is what this is, then arterial road isn't, uh, it, it's not part of that definition. That only falls under two oh four F, uh, which this is not a variance to two oh four F. This is a variance to the subdivision regulations.
So, Cody, this is a connector. Joe just came up and said that, that Hart Ranch was a connector. Is that the one he said was, which one? Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Davis, you need to come up here if you're gonna speak, sir.
So, what A, well, item A was under, was under section two oh four F, which has a different requirement than what our subdivision regulations has. This is a subreg variance, not a regular variance under two oh four F. So, this does not meet that, that requirement. This has the requirement for the forty-lot rule.
I'm gonna have to meet with planning and figure this out, 'cause this first I've heard of it. I don't know why it wouldn't apply in both cases, but I'll, I'll have to check that out.
Okay. Go ahead.
Well, I, I know Ron had another suggestion as well, is how to fix the road, how to make more access for the road.
Well, I had a schedule.
Uh, uh, wait a minute. Who's speaking? I don't, we have to have a little bit of control here. Okay. So, if you wanna speak, give us your name.
Sherri St. Pierre.
Okay.
Um, well, I know there was several subdivision of Naughty Pine, on Naughty Pine Road only four or five years ago. And those were all approved and sold. And, and that was against the eighty.
What do you mean?
Eighty-rule. And that's beyond Hart Ranch Road as well. Um, and then Ron had a suggestion of how to fix a road, to in, put another road in so there was a second access out. That didn't sound like it would be too difficult. I would, I would love if you, you would share that idea.
Okay.
Are you the Apkins by chance?
No, he is.
Okay.
Hi, I'm Brian Schroeder, the property owner. And the, some of the first people I met when I moved in were my neighbors just in the north of me, John and Ginger Olson. They were the previous presidents of the road district. And one of the first things they pointed out to me is that there's absolutely another way out in case of emergency overland at the base of, at the east end of Barney Road. Um, also, I watched big trucks go in that road, in and out, delivery trucks, propane trucks. Um, I don't see how they'd have any problem if there were an emergency getting crews in there. And third and foremost, I'm, I'm a very fire-conscious person. I've been taking all my limbs and my trimmings down to the dump. I won't even get a fire permit, just, just because the other neighbors had a problem with a pop-up fire that they told me about. So, I only have two neighbors in back of me. They know about the overland, how to get out of there. I'm surprised that the new, um, district president of the road district doesn't know that stuff. that stuff, if he's been there seventeen years.
So, Chairman.
Commissioner Adkar.
If I could, I'd like this to be continued so we can look at it, because I think it's pretty contentious and that there is a second way out, um, and it's...
Can I offer an amendment or a substitute?
I'll have a substitute to continue, so we all have a chance to go out there and look at this.
Sir, second.
Second.
Thank you.
We're welcome. So the next meeting?
Got a, uh, motion and a second to, uh, as a substitute, to continue this item, um, to the next meeting? Is that what we're talking?
Yes, sir.
December twentieth.
All those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close?
Motion carried.
Moved to come out of Board of Adjustments.
Got a motion to come out of the Board of Adjustment, and a second. All those in favor, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close?
Motion carried.
Jason.
Afternoon, Commissioners. Jason Dennison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item E is vacation of easement, twenty-two dash zero-three, to vacate an access and utility easement on the subject property. The applicant is by earning Kristen Mobley. Property is three point three acres, currently zone planned junior development district. Access is off Sawmill Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. The request was sent out for interdepartmental review to include the road district, uh, which I all noticed a typo in your packet, and says Blue Wing Road District. Should be the Sheridan Lake Highlands Road District. Thank you, Commissioner Ross Connect for that. Uh, staff's analysis of the request is that the applicant is proposing to vacate a sixty-six-foot-wide planted access and utility easement. The easement is located only on the subject property. There are overhead power lines of easement, so new twenty-foot-wide easement will be dedicated to Black Hills Electric Co-op for these utility lines. A little property history or area history is in February of this year, the Board of Commissioners approved vacation of right-of-way twenty-one dash zero-one to vacate a portion of Rockwood Road that would have been used along with this easement as a continuation of Rockwood Road adjoining Slum Mill Road. Uh, that portion of property that I'm talking about right now is right here in this previously vacated road. So this is more or less a house, uh, housekeeping situation for this property owner. Uh, there's, this access and utility easement is no longer required, so he's choosing to vacate that, so he has more buildable property, uh, on his land. Uh, so with that, on November fourteenth of this year, the Planning Commission approved minor planned junior development amendment twenty-two dash fourteen to remove a condition of approval that specifically called for the creation of the access and utility easement. And with that, staff recommends approval of vacation of easement twenty-two dash zero-three with one condition.
Motion to move approval.
Got a motion and a second to approve? Any public comment?
Back to the commission.
All those in favor of the motion, indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Close?
Motion carried.
Item F.
Uh, Cody Sacram, environmental planner. Item F is comprehensive plan amendment, CA twenty-two dash twenty-two. It's to amend the comprehensive plan to change the future land use from agriculture district to rancher district. The applicant is Leslie Rutter. Location of the property is two four zero three Pine Valley Road. Current zoning is agriculture district, existing land use is residential, access is off Pine Valley Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. So future land use has the property as agriculture. Uh, the map is on your right. The proposed zoning is rancher. So for lot size, uh, agriculture requires ten acres, where rancher requires five acres. Maximum density for a single-family resident is for agriculture is point zero one, or zero point one, and for the proposed rancher is point two. They both require a twenty-five-foot setback. Both have predominant land uses of agriculture and residential, and utilities are private. Uh, when looking at rezones and comprehensive plan amendments, we look at the surrounding zoning districts. Again, the current zoning is on the left on the screen, and the future land use is on the right. Uh, current zoning within, uh, one-half mile to the north, south, and east is agriculture, and to the west is agriculture and open space. For future land use within a half-mile, to the north you have agriculture and rural residential, to the south and east you have agriculture, and to the west you have agriculture and open space. And current land use is within one-half mile for north, south, east, and west is agriculture and residential. The access takes, the property takes access off of Pine Valley Road, which takes access off Pine Grove Road. Pine Grove Road is a twenty-four-foot-wide gravel road with a sixty-six-foot-wide, uh, public runway. And Pine Valley Road is a fourteen-foot-wide gravel road with a forty-foot-wide private access easement. The infrastructure would be private water and sewer. This was run around for interdepartmental review. There were no objections or concerns that were received. The applicant is proposing to subdivide the property, or the existing property into a ten-acre and five-acre parcel. Pine Grove Road is a single means of ingress and egress to Neck Yoke Road. The applicant has stated that the subject property was historically two parcels, but was forced into mine, uh, by the bank. The applicant has also applied for rezone RG twenty-two dash twenty-nine, which is the next agenda item. Uh, staff has received calls from the Rockerville Fire Department and the Pine Grove Water Association. Uh, the Rockerville Fire Department does not have a concerns in regards to this specific request. And the applicant has stated that the Pine Grove Water Association has approved additional tap on the property. However, staff does have safety concerns about rezoning a property that allows increased density on a dead-end road system with only one means of ingress and egress that exceeds forty lots. So with that, staff is gonna recommend, uh, denial of comprehensive plan amendment, CA twenty-two dash twenty-two. The staff has concerns with increasing density on a dead-end, on the road system with a single means of ingress and egress that exceeds forty lots. And then the Planning Commission recommended to deny without prejudice.
So Cody, uh, tell us again, how many, how many are on this, the end road system?
Uh, forty, I believe it's like forty-one or forty-two.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Ross Connect.
I did some research yesterday, and the subject property is located one point three miles south of Neck Yoke. Now, if you keep going down Pine Grove, uh, you'll go, it's a total of three point seven five miles from Neck Yoke to that last lot. And so where I'm at on this is that, uh, then I also counted the number of parcels between the subject property and Neck Yoke, and there's twenty-six parcels, ranging in size from two point two-five acres to four hundred and fifty acres, which is owned by the federal government USA. And thirteen of those properties are approved, a couple with egg buildings. Uh, I guess the point that I'm trying to make, if this was, uh, that property that was three point seven miles south, I, I couldn't agree with this. But where this property is located and the number of properties between this property and Neck Yoke Road, I don't see a, uh, ingress and egress problem relative to safety issues.
Further comments, questions?
Mr. Chair. I guess I'm just gonna stick to my guns and say that until we sit down as a commission or put a group together to discuss that forty-unit rule, then I'm still gonna have to say no, just because, uh, I don't think we're gonna be consistent if we do that and change our minds each and every time that it may impact it. We either need to set some good standards for that forty-unit ru- rule or not, and I just, you know, it impacts areas that I've already had to vote on in my district, and I, and I do believe it's for safety purposes, so I'm gonna stay consistent in that mindset as well, until we address the issue.
Well, Chairman.
Commissioner Adkar.
There you go. So we decided on forty-unit rule, depending on what we think is a safety factor. The rule on a forty-unit rule has been the same, and I'll keep saying it. We have used the forty-unit rule, but then we also have went and had people do a fire and flood mitigation plan that we have decided that even with the planning department, they said, "Well, if you guys decide you're gonna do that." We did that also on an area that is in Hill City that, for a campground and stuff too, you guys. So the main issue is they, if they have no fire and flood mitigation on these forty-unit rules, I have a hard time, um, approving them. Other than that, I believe, um, and I'm gonna agree with Commissioner LaCroy, that this area and other areas in the Black Hills, if you're gonna say topography every time, you're gonna be in trouble, because you're never gonna have anybody build enough houses, because we have subdivisions all over in this district and other districts that are past that forty-unit rule. So we had to make some considerations, since I've been on here, and most of it has been fire and flood mitigation on those forty-unit rules. So you can try and change that, but there was no, there were, there was no rhyme or reason at the time. I think there, there probably was, because of, we didn't have all the building and stuff going on today, that that was more, it made more sense. But now that you have, um, our planning department has changed, I don't know, tenfold, and even since I've been here in the last ten years, to try to find solution for people to build and be able to use their land for what they need to use it for. Because if we just, if we kept deciding that the neighbors got to decide what we gotta do on our land, we'd be in trouble. So, um, I'll keep saying, um, I don't have a problem with this one, and I didn't have a problem with the last one. If the roads can sustain it, and if they have a flyer, fire and flood mitigation plan from now on on these roads, um, it makes a huge difference. If there's a bridge that is a one-lane bridge for a forty-unit rule, that doesn't make sense to keep building, because you already know there's gonna be a huge safety factor. But I take in consideration all pieces and parts to these, to make a, an informed decision on safety and flood, and it isn't from me, it's from our fire department, our highway department, and people that actually have those qualifications, and are to der- determine that, as well as the planning. Planning's recommendation has to be what the rules and regs are, um, no matter what. So they are going to follow those rules and regs no matter what. It's ours is try and find that common sense between that, and still let you build and, and do what you want, to a certain extent, without causing safety factors for everybody else, so, thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, Commissioner Ross Connect.
Moved to approve comprehensive plan, CA twenty-two dash twenty-two.
Got a motion, is there a second?
Second.
And a second. Leslie, are, are you in the room? Did you wanna speak to this?
I'd like a follow-up afterwards.
Okay. Good morning.
Hi, I'm Leslie Rutter, I'm the property owner. Um, I, I do, I wanna emphasize for my property that it's, it's at the be, it's more, it's the middle, it's the first part of Pine Grove Road. It's only about a mile and a quarter off of Neck Yoke. The road is greatly improved, and as a matter of fact, they, they just put a bunch more gravel on, they put a bunch of delineators on it even. You know, the road is, is not a safety issue. And even Pine Grove Road, where it's not county-maintained, is, is a wide road. Um, the access that I would be allowing for this piece of property is a road that is on land that my family owns. Um, it's a road that's been in use twenty-some years, since my dad sold property years ago to some neighbors down south. And we just, my family's trust just spent fourteen-some thousand dollars improving that road with turnouts, and we made a cul-de-sac at the top of the hill where this five acres would have access to, just for those very reasons, to make sure that they would have a way in. And, um, I mean, just the way it lays, if there was ever a problem, those people could drive through my yard and get out. This lot has zero safety issues as far as ingress and egress, so I would appreciate your support.
Well, Chairman.
Any question? Commissioner Adkar.
Miss Leslie, were you the one that came in before that needed a, a Board of Adjustment, and then you ended up not needing it?
So the variant, they, yeah, I was told that I needed to get a variance.
Right.
And I was in here on November fifteenth.
Right.
And that was continued until today, because, um, one of the commissioners wasn't at, was absent that day, so I wasn't able to get the four out of five votes.
Okay.
And since then, um, Cody was able to do some more research and find out that Pine Grove Road isn't considered a dead-end road system. So the forty-acre rule, or the forty-lot rule technically doesn't even apply to my situation, I believe. So my application for the variance was withdrawn, and they're gonna refund me my money for that.
Okay. And that's, that's what I thought, I had seen you in here before on a forty-year.
Yeah, yeah, and we spoke on the phone. I think I've spoken to most of you multiple times.
Mr. Chair, can I get a point of clarification?
Yes.
So Commissioner Hackout's got a good point, and I need to understand this. If you came in here for that, a- and this is more for Cody, so i- if you, if we withdrew because it's not a forty-unit rule for the other incident, for the other application, the variance, but we're saying now the forty-unit rule applies to this particular piece, maybe that's where I'm confused.
Megan Krueger with the State's Attorney's Office. So our language for our subdivision regulations and our language and our ordinance are different. I don't know why they are, and that's why.
So tell us the difference, please.
So the difference between the two is the subdivision regulations makes no reference to the size of road, what type of road it is, what the subdivision regulations. If you're over forty and it's in a dead-end road, based on the subdivision regulations, then you can't build there. However, in our zoning ordinance, it makes reference to an arterial road. Technically, my understanding, based on what Joe's expertise is, is that Neck Yoke is not an arterial, and that's why there's the difference. So it needs to be fixed, is really the end point of it. I'm guessing that probably when the subdivision regulations were updated, that the zoning ordinance definition was not updated along with it. So we have the old definition in the zoning ordinance from before the zoning ordinance, and the subdivision regulations have the updated definition.
So, go ahead. Follow up with that. So can we get on that and kinda get that cleared up?
We already are.
Okay, I just, 'cause that just seems to be, all right, fair. Appreciate it.
We already are.
So Chairman.
Commissioner.
Megan, stay, please.
No running off.
So if they would've rezoned before they did the other, then the rezoned would've let them pass the forty-unit rule? But if they do the subdivision reg first, they don't pass it.
Yeah, that's, that's why we need to...
So all we had to do is rezone the last people?
So really, what we need to do is we need to fix our zoning ordinances. That's what we need to do.
So we should've rezoned those last people first?
They have other issues, so, every case is different, so we can't talk about cases of the, as if they're analogous to each other, because every property is different.
I guess that's why I continued it, because I wasn't getting that either. But Leslie, uh, thank you for calling me and, um...
Yeah, thank you.
And helping me, and then I ended up helping you as well. But, um, I appreciate everything you did as well, because it took some work to get where you were at too, so, thank you, Miss Leslie.
Well, I appreciate the work from all the commissioners. Everyone's been just super helpful and gone above and beyond, I think, so I appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman. Commissioner LaCroy.
I, I'm, got the same stance on this one as I did on the, the previous one. And I just wanted to clarify that, and I just wanted to clarify for people in the audience that, as you just seen, we went through Boards of Adjustments with variances. You know, we, we set standards to try to accommodate everything, but you can't. That's what our job is for, is to hear concerns and, and, because there is, uh, different circumstances that warrant different approaches, and that's part of our job. But I don't think there's any ordinance law or anything out there that covers everything, so I can't follow per ordinance every single rule, vote that way every time, because I believe part of my job is, is to be human and, and look at what differences there are before I'm making a decision. I just wanted to clarify that for some of you guys out in the audience. I think that if it's in ordinance, it should be stuck to that way.
So the motion I have is to a- approve the comprehensive plan amendment on CA twenty-two dash twenty-two. Is there any public comment in regard to that?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Alster.
Man, I think, I, I don't know. I, I'm kinda baffled on this one, but I, I'm, I'm gonna have to really think about this one now, after some of that clarification by Megan. I appreciate that, but, um, yeah, that's, when it, when it appears that we have some contradictory in there, that, that's gonna kinda drive some of my voting, and I may change my view on this particular one, so, um, especially since the, the variance was pulled, because it wasn't, it met the criteria of not being in there based on that, so I might ponder this one for a minute, but, just so you know.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion to approve the comprehensive plan amendment, indicate by saying aye.
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 Close? Motion carried.
Next item is the same property to rezon. Next item is the same property to rezon.
Okay, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item G is to rezon, is rezon, RZ twenty-two dash twenty-nine, is to rezon five acres from agriculture district to ranchette district. Again, the applicant is Leslie Rutter, involves the same property as the previous item. Um, again, future land use is agriculture district, and the proposed change is to ranchette. Um, with the approval of the Comprehensive Plan Amendment, uh, the rezon can be approved. However, staff still does have concerns about rezoning the property, as it allows increased density on a dead-end road system with only one needs of ingress and egress. So staff is, is recommending denial, and the, uh, planning commission recommended to deny without prejudice.
Sure.
Any questions to Cody?
Motion to approve.
Got a motion.
Second.
Approve in a second. Um, any public comment? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. Uh, item H.
Item H is rezon RZ twenty-two dash thirty, is to rezon five acres from agriculture district to ranchette district. The applicant is Quinton Larson. Location of the property is south of, south of the intersection of Pine Grove Road and Pine Valley Road. Uh, the lot size is five acres. Current zoning is agriculture district with an existing land use of vacant. Access is off Pine Valley Road, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, current zoning is agriculture, the proposed zoning is ranchette. The minimum lot size for agriculture is ten acres, ranchette is five acres. Maximum density for current, for agriculture district is zero point one, and for ranchette it's zero point two. They both require twenty-five foot setbacks from our property lines, both have predominant land uses of agriculture and residential, and both have private utilities. Again, we look at zoning within a half mile and future land use within a half mile. The, um, it's on, on the screen, um, the current zoning is on your left, future land use is on your right. North of the property is agriculture and residential, south of the property is agriculture, east is agriculture, and west is agriculture and open space. Future land use within a half mile, to the north you have agriculture and rural residential, to the south and east you have agriculture, and to the west you have agriculture and open space. For land uses within a half mile, you have agriculture and residential in all directions. This was routed out for interdepartment review, there were no major comments or concerns that were received. The applicant is proposing to rezon the subject property to bring the property into compliance. The property is split in two thousand to create an existing five acre parcel. Agriculture district requires a ten acre lot size. Future land use of the property is rural residential, therefore a comprehensive plan amendment is not required. Existing infrastructure and roads are appropriate for ranchette zoning district in the area, and their request to rezon appears to be in harmony with current zoning, future land use designations in the comprehensive plan viewed at twenty forty. So with that, staff is recommending approval of our, of rezon RZ twenty-two dash thirty with, and then the planning commission also recommended approval.
Thank you, Cody. So this property is right adjacent to where the, the previous property was that we was dealing with. In fact, uh, I believe Quentin is a brother of Leslie and some of the original owners of that property out there.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner LaCroy.
I'd move for approval of rezon.
Second.
We got a motion and a second. Any public comment? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Item I.
Afternoon again, Commissioners. Jason Thannison, Assistant Planning Director. Agenda item I is Public Hearing of Ordinance Amendment twenty-two dash twelve, and this will amend our section five eleven of the zoning ordinance. Uh, basically all it's doing is adding the fee for the special permitted use application. If you recall, about a month ago, I believe you approved the special permitted uses section for our zoning ordinance, and this is just kind of housekeeping for us to add the fee.
Okay. Have a motion and a second. Uh, any public comment? Back to the commission. Uh, all those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Item J.
Agenda item J is Conditional Use Permit twenty-two dash fifty-two for M and M Medical Solutions. Uh, this item is going to be continued until the next board meeting. Uh, the applicant did not provide the required information before the staff reports the middle deadline, and also the, um, the request will have to be read advertised for that next meeting.
Move to continue to December twentieth.
Second.
Um, okay, so the motion is to continue this Comprehensive Plan Amendment to December twenty. Is there a public comment on this? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
So I'm going to need you guys to go back on that one. I had a copy of the wrong agenda, so agenda item J was actually for Argyle Properties. Apologize.
Okay, so.
Move to reconsider item J.
Second.
Got a motion and a second to reconsider item J. All in favor indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion carried.
Uh, Cody Sack, environmental planner. Item J is Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA twenty-two dash twenty-one. It's to amend the comprehensive plan, change the future land use from ranchette district to rural residential district, and again to rural residential district. The applicant and landowner is Argyle Properties LLC in Italy. The agent is Jim Peterson, both of which are in the audience if there are any questions. Location of the property is two-three-nine-one-one Hidden Valley Trail. It involves thirteen point five-five acres. Current zoning district is agriculture district with an existing land use of residential. Access is off Hidden Valley Trail, and there is no special flood hazard area on the property. Again, we look at, uh, current zoning designation comparisons. So future land use for ranchette requires a five acre lot size. The proposed rural residential requires your three acre lot size. Maximum single-family residence dens- density for ranchette, it's zero point two. For rural residential, it's one. For setbacks, it's twenty-five feet from all property lines. Predominant land use is, um, agriculture and residential for ranchette, and it's residential for rural residential district, and utilities are private. Again, we look at the surrounding zoning designations. On your left is current zoning, on your right is future land use. So current zoning within one half mile, to the north you have agriculture, rural residential and suburban residential. To the south you have agriculture and open space, to the east you have open space, and to the west you have agriculture and rural residential and suburban residential. Future land use within one half mile, to the north you have suburban residential and rural residential, to the south you have ranchette and open space, to the east you have open space, and to the west you have ranchette, rural residential and suburban residential. Uh, land uses within a half mile are agriculture and residential. So access is off Hidden Valley Trail, which is approximately a sixteen foot wide ground road. It's a forty foot wide private access easement. Infrastructure is private water and sewer. Uh, this was routed out for interdepartment review. The Hidden Valley Road District, uh, came back and said all members of the Hidden Valley Road District unanimously opposed the zoning change. The applicants are proposing to subdivide the property into three lots. Layout plan LPL twenty-two dash fifty-three has been approved by staff. The applicant has requested rezon RZ twenty-two dash twenty-eight, which will be heard on the next agenda item. A portion of the subject property has the existing future land use designated as rural residential. Rural residential allows a large lot residential. Staff finds no significant issues with the request, as it appears to be in harmony with existing land use within one half mile, and is supported by existing roads and infrastructure. And the majority of the properties within one half mile uses, are uses as a large lot residential. So staff is recommending approval of Comprehensive Plan Amendment CA twenty-two dash twenty-one. Uh, however, the planning commission recommended to deny without prejudice.
So for the commission, um, with, without objection, I would allow discussion on both J and K, because one's a comprehensive plan amendment, the other one's a rezon of the same property. Uh, allow discussion on, on both of them together and then vote on them separately. And I do have, uh, several speaker request forms relative, uh, to this. Uh, Anita, would you like to start?
I don't remember this, so I don't know what's right.
Okay, Jim Peterson, you?
Jim Peterson, um, just want to, thanks for your time. I will reserve my comments to the end if that's okay. Is that okay with you?
Okay.
Yep.
Joe Torno.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cody. I just want to clarify something real fast. Cody Sack, environmental planner, the recommendation of the planning commission was actually just to deny, uh, it wasn't without prejudice.
Okay. Thank you. Joe Torno, would you like to?
Joanna Torno, I live at two-three-nine-six-six down the road from this. I respectfully just request that we stick with the future land use, that the planning, the planning has already decided that the future land use for our area is ranchette, which would be five acres, and we would, through this exercise, so you guys all know, um, we all learned about the future land use of our property. We didn't know this. I'm, I'm pretty sure I speak for all of us. We didn't know that, that we were planned for five acres. It's already done, there's nothing we can do about that. However, we respectfully request, let's just leave it at five acres. You guys have already done the work, the future land use is in place, um, going down to three acres will enable two additional homes on this road, and we have real concerns about fire. Um, I do have an email which is in the file from Rockerville Fire Chief Gil Schmidt, um, that she is very concerned about continuing to divide these properties into smaller and smaller acreage and adding more homes. Hidden Valley does not have any fire hydrants, nor do they have a common water supply. Therefore, our nearest water supply to go pull from is Pine Grove or from Rockerville System, neither of which are paid for by the homeowner requesting this variance. Furthermore, I believe we need to start paying attention to how emergency services are going to get supplied if we continue to grant variances and add more and more homes out here in these rural settings. So, that's my.
Okay, questions? Commissioner LaCroy? Um, does your home, homeowners association, do you guys have covenants?
We do not have a homeowners association or covenants.
So I just wanted to explain, covenants protect a lot of what the residents in the area want.
Yep.
We just approved a, a, a development that was over in Hill City area that specified in there is that they didn't want certain type of buildings and others, and so.
We're, we're now looking into all of that.
And I, and I'm not sure how that works, but I think you, if you go around to all your neighbors and you get a ninety percent or something along that, you can do, get a, get a percentage of them. I just wanted to pass that on since.
Appreciate that. Yep.
Anything else?
Nope.
Any other questions, uh, for, uh, Joe?
I do. Chairman.
Commissioner Adgar.
So, Ms. Joe, you're very kind. Um, and I appreciate your questions always. So, um, within the future land use, within the half mile, you have suburban residential, rural residential, ranchette, suburban residential in the west, with ranchette and rural. The only area is more towards the, depends on, we're looking on this map. So, are, can someone answer me? I, I'm sorry, Ms. Joe, um, are they subdividing into three lots, or are you subdividing into two lots? Three. So Jim?
I have a, I have a flat that surveyed, I was, if you guys like to come, I may.
Yes, that'd be good.
Sure.
And may I ask you, Jim, since we.
This is, this is the thirteen acres.
Okay.
There's existing home, these are the additional two lots.
Okay, so what's the, tell me what the acreage is.
Thirteen, uh, of the whole acreage?
Yes.
Thirteen point five-five.
Right.
This is six-five, three-nine, and three, little over three.
And then at one time, I'll let you go to the mic so I can, sorry, Joe. It's okay.
Okay.
Does it make sense to you? Here's the lot.
Yeah.
Whole thing's thirteen-five-five. That's where the home is now.
Yeah.
These would be two.
Okay.
I watched that.
Did you watch that?
Thank you.
Hey, here's the whole lot.
All right, Ms. Joe.
Yep, and this is what we were talking about earlier, right along.
This is where, uh, the variance, the neighbors over here.
Yep.
And then, um, so here's the house and the garage is here, and three-nine, three, little over three.
So Jim, my, Ms. Torno's up there, so she understands too. Is there, is this the one with the VHR on it?
Uh, yes.
The, this home right here, let's say it was right there.
Okay.
That was approved for a VHR.
Okay, so can I ask you a question, Jim up there with Ms. Torno there?
Let me go.
Yes.
Jim Peterson.
I talked to you yesterday, Jim Peterson, and maybe you were thinking, and I think it would probably pass, if I'm correct. I'm not going to speak for these commissioners, but in a sense, if you did just the VHR lot in this lot instead of subdividing.
Uh, I'm sorry, one more time.
Uh, this other, this other three to four acres, instead of, because you have thirteen acres, right? So you have, basically you have one broke down in seven acres, and the other broke down, right, in ten acres, if I'm correct?
I think so.
Or is it six? Six, four and three?
So, this is thirteen and a half for the whole thing currently as it sits now.
Okay.
Um, this is just under seven, so six and a half. This is the one that got the VHR approved, and these, so technically we're breaking it into three lots, although this already exists, so to speak.
Okay.
You know, as a home.
Okay, so to speak to that, the six acres makes sense for the ranchette, but the rural breaking it in into two, I think, and if I, I'm not the planning commissioner or anything, I think if you just broke it in and left the six acres and the seven acres, there wouldn't be an issue at this time, just because of future land use, just because of what's in the area, just because of.
But I add, and how we got to the rural. If you look at the, um, the, I guess it would be on your left, I don't know what screens you guys are, um.
Right.
The current thirteen and a half is ag.
Okay.
Um, with residential use. The, there's five adjoining properties.
Okay.
Um, the one to the north is five acres, it's ag, so it's a non-conforming but legal ag.
Okay.
The one is suburban and the, the tan, that's one point eight acres. The two yellow ones are, um, rural residential.
Okay.
So one six and one tenish, and then the property to the direct south is twenty acres, which is ag. If you go over to the future land use.
Right.
Of course, the suburban stays.
Okay.
The, all the stuff to the north turns into rural residential. Incidentally, this particular property has two future land uses on it.
Okay.
Uh, there's about an acre and an eighth, or one point eight acres that is already future land use of rural residential, and the balance of it is ranchette.
So.
So this, so we had a choice, we went with the rural residential, uh, if that, if that making sense?
Right.
And Cody, is that circle a half mile radius? So we're like a quarter mile from Neck Yoke Road, um, from a access standpoint. So that's the layout and the future layout.
So basically, Ms. Torno, what he's saying is there's suburban, like I said, there's rural, there's ranchette.
Correct.
And it's surrounding this whole area.
Correct.
And usually if it's all ag, I won't.
Right. I do have question, if I could, of planning. Um, how is it that the little corner of this parcel can be zoned rural residential, which is a limit of three acres, minimum of three acres, when a portion of this property that is in that zoning is only one point eight? So I did kind of question that, but again, I'm sure there was a tremendous amount of work that went into the comprehensive plan, and I understand that sometimes decisions and lines had to be, had to be made. But just as a logical, it's like, so I have a little smidgen, a one point eight acres. But just as a logical, it's like, so I have a little smidgen, a one point eight acres, that I can do nothing with, because you can't build on it, because it's not three acres. Um, so that's just kind of of note. But again, request stick to the future land use. You've already done the work.
One more point I might add, if you're, I may. Of the five adjoining properties, the property to the east is forest service, so that's open. So, that's, I'm not including that. But to the north, to the west, and to the south, if you take those, and if you were to approve this, all those lots with the two additional new lots would have an average density of seven point one one acres. If you, does that make sense? If you took them all and just averaged it.
So, so this is ripping apart our forty unit rule. This is ripping apart everything that we just talked about on these other people, and that they didn't understand. Now, this has been going on in this district for a long time, and you guys have to live with it. And not only did we do that, we rezoned it so we could add more people to your area on forty unit rule with the zoning, which doesn't make any sense. So, why, it's driving me nuts. So, we're trying to make a decision for both sides on this area to say that forty unit here is not good, because we have a ordinance, and then we have a subdivision rule. And then we have future land use that's showing, which I'll just truly tell you, I've never believed in future land use. It's designated by what people are building, whether it's politically driven or it's contractor or residential driven. So, you get mixed uses in this area based on zoning with a forty unit rule in the mix of it all. So, if you have a forty unit rule, why wouldn't you leave it so you could stay at a forty unit rule for future land use, if that's an issue in both these areas? And number, number two, holy crap.
Deb.
Making a good decision, now you guys understand why you're trying to make a decision based on all these rules and regs, that we just try to be fair and just to all you people that need our help. So, he's right. It's zoned that way. But you got a forty unit on it that says you shouldn't build in it, but then they're in the middle of the road, not the end of a three point seven mile road. So, it makes it so they can go and move where they need to go without a safety factor.
Deb, can I interject something, because you keep referring to a forty unit?
Yeah.
There's, this is a road district that has ten people on it.
Right.
With this addition, the road district is ten individuals, including this property.
Right.
This would go up to twelve. And we're at the beginning of the road district.
That's why I'm saying that it's gonna go further down, where it's gonna cause us another, whatever, because of a safety factor. So, we're just, we're just starting to rezone, so then the people further down cannot build, because there're gonna be forty units before they get down there.
I, I don't.
So.
With, with, if you count that, so if you look, if that map was go up just a little bit, below that, the tan on the future, that's all forest service, right? It's forest service on the east, to the south, and to the west.
Green is the ag, the green is forest service?
The darker green on both sides is, is your forest service or open?
And the light green is ag. We're currently zoned ag.
I'm, I'm referring to the future land use, and it's the same on the current one as well. So, the point being, if it's ranchette further to the south, you'd never be able to get forty units in there.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Tornow, for your kindness.
Thank you.
Yeah. I'm sure there's other speakers, but I have a few more points to make.
Commissioner Sacramento Planner, I just wanna clarify one thing. So, for this one, there's, I believe, thirteen lots from Neck Yoke Road down to the end of Hidden Valley. So, it, it wouldn't hit the forty lot rule even, even close. So, just to clarify.
So, can I clarify that it, nobody else can build further on this road in the future?
No.
It just stops because it's a ravine or something that makes it so they can't build again? It's, or is it just forest service where?
That, that I'm not sure of. So, for the future, I don't know what the size of the lots farther down are.
Is there a way to point? Just with, so Deb, so this is future land use here.
Okay.
So, the road district comes down into here, and there's like these two lots here that aren't on the road district. But these lots are all ten acre lots here. So, in theory, if it's ranchette for future use, they could be split, right? Five acre, in theory. And then this is a, this is, I think, a twenty acre.
So, just asking one thing. On this road, if they kept going further down or anywhere else, is there another outlet, or is there another road in that area?
This is all forest service here, forest service here, and forest service here. So, there's one.
How much acreage would you say the light, white colored is?
This all through here?
Yeah.
I could tell you pretty quick, I think. It's thirteen, ten, twenty, thirty, forty, fifty, sixty, seventy, eighty, hundred. Can you do that?
No, I'm just gonna.
So, you understand, you, you understand what I'm saying? So, you have Neck Yoke Road that you're gonna end up in the future with the same issue, because you have ten acre lot.
If it goes, for example, if the rural residential is approved, which can go down to three acre lots, we will get to forty on this road. If everybody divides down to three acres, we're gonna have the same issue that you guys have on Pine Grove. One way in, one way out, and our neighbor's house, right below the twenty-five, burned to the ground in fifteen minutes in twenty eleven. Gail Schmidt, she said, "I couldn't get water. I could not get water to you." She drove through the twenty acre to try, go through the pasture to try and get water, and then it spread, it went wildland. So, that was twenty eleven. We had a fire this morning on Kiefer Ranch Road. We have, Jerome Harvey and I have conversations, because I work in wildland fire. This is an issue. The wildland urban interface is an issue. The more houses we put out here in the forest, the more danger we all incur, the higher the risk.
So, Jim, I'm asking, if we deny without prejudice, and you had talked about splitting into two lots, to me, that makes more sense for this area, before we end up with the same neck yoke issue in this area. And I think it's fair to you guys, because you can split the lots.
So.
You also, then you don't start a three to four acre issue with one way in, one way out in the same district that we just had two other areas with the same area issues.
Can you put that future land use up here again? So, Deb, to say that going south of this property would be rural residential is a bit of a stretch. It's just our property that we're looking at that had both on there.
Right.
And so, if you go south, it's, it's ranchette in the future land use.
Right.
So, it's five acre, five acre. So, essentially, in these, you know, if these guys were wanting to subdivide, they could probably divide them in two.
Right.
So, we're currently at, on the road district, ten. We would add two more with this proposal. And there's a couple other ones in here that are not on the road district.
Would you wanna add, Joe?
I do. Just based on my conversation with planning, how they make this decision and then bring it forward to you is they look at the surrounding properties. And so, this will set a precedent in that if it is approved at rural residential, it will then be easier to approve further rezones in the future.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah, thank you. Commissioner La Croix.
I was gonna make that point as well, because, you know, obviously, they look at a half hour, half mile radius, I believe. Is it a half mile radius? It's a half mile radius. And if it is already rural residential, even though it's technically outlined, future is ranchette, if you have rural residential right to it, we all know, it, it's easy for somebody to come in and ask for that to be changed down. Whether you agree with it, it's a different story, but it is easy for them to come in and ask for it.
Well, Jim, I would, if I were you, I'd ask for deny without prejudice, so you can split the lot if there becomes an issue with not being able to get the votes for splitting those two lots.
So, what you're saying is deny without prejudice to be able to come back for a ranchette?
Yes.
And so, it'd be two lots. Is that something this commission feels like they could support?
I can't, I can't speak for the commission, but.
Then, I, I think we would be okay with that.
I don't, I don't think you should walk out of here thinking that's, you're gonna have the support of the commission on it.
Okay, then.
That doesn't happen until it comes before the commission.
Right.
So, I think that's what's being asked of me, though, right, as to.
That's what I'm saying personally.
That's what Commissioner Hancock is asking of you. Do I still have other speaker?
Why don't we deal with those, and I'll have a few more comments specifically on some of these items. So, thank you, Deb.
Mr. Chair.
Thank you.
Yep.
I have a question for Cody.
Got a question for Cody?
Yeah. Cody, I'm looking at this, and that's, in fact, that's, that's what I was showing Deb when you guys were. When you look at this, you see that's one sliver. It's two, three, nine, I can't see it, because it's covered by. Who's property and how many acres is that? Because that looks like that's probably a three acre lot.
Which lot, which lots?
It's two, nine, it's that brownish L shape right there.
Two, three, nine, zero something.
Yeah, that one right there.
It's one point eight.
That's one, one point, and somebody's living there. That's, and that's.
Yes, that's the Christina Fisher, you've heard some people bring up her name for, the, yeah, the variant, sorry.
So, her lot's one point something, and these, what he's requesting is a six, and a three, and a three.
Correct.
Which would be adjacent to a one point three that one of the neighbors. And then the two, three, eight, eight, zero, that looks like that's probably a little over three acres there, maybe four. The one that's surrounding the one point on that L shaped, right there, yeah.
It is three acres.
So, that's three acres. So, we got.
That's six acres.
Six acres.
Six acres.
That, that one, I think, is six, isn't it?
It said three. Says three.
So, that's, that's what I was looking at when I'm on this, is that two adjoining properties to that corner, you got one that's one and a half, one that's three. It's okay for them, but when we're talking about being fair, you know, I, I get that splitting it and doing it would probably work also. But the discussions we've had today, you know, it just seems odd that we got someone who's, who's already properly split to get that one point three was approved, that you wouldn't do a six, and a three, and a three, when you got two of them adjoining your property. I just wanted to bring that up.
But just gonna clarify.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify.
Thank you, Lloyd.
So, Commissioner La Croix, I think that, though, was done prior to the comprehensive plan.
Yeah, it, it could have been. The comprehensive plan's been done a couple different times, but I mean, I'm just, I just wanted to point that out. It's.
Right. Yeah, yeah. Darcy.
I, I interrupted. I'm sorry. I was just, my name is Michelle. Millie Marwan.
Oh, yeah.
We do have a.
Michelle, okay.
Yeah, yeah.
Now, to be fair, Michelle, I had Darcy down here next.
I was just gonna clarify what the brown is.
Okay.
And how that came to be.
Okay.
And if, and then I'll go sit down and then wait my turn.
Okay.
That was, that was originally designed as a well lot that was never, that was when it was built as a subdivision. It was never supposed to be built on.
A well, a well lot?
It was a well lot only. So, to say that at some point, somebody obviously let someone build on it, but that was never part of the subdivision.
So, on the next lot that's adjoining the well lot, it's adjoining this property that's three acres, what, what's the story on that?
My understanding, and my family's lived in, we live directly south of the proposed rezone. We've lived there since nineteen ninety-one. My understanding is most, most of that land off to the west was owned by one person, including that well lot, and it has just been parceled off by fan, to the family, and then sold. So, it didn't necessarily, maybe it was a while ago, but it went to family and then it was sold. And now I'll go sit down. I'll be back, though.
I, no, I just, I just, I'm bringing that up for clarification out in your guys' area, because, because it does exist. It's not like something new. This is something new. That's all I wanted to bring to you guys.
Okay, thank you.
Darcy Gunderson.
Darcy Gunderson, I live at two, three, eight, nine, six, Hidden Valley. And from my understanding, that little area there, that was in the seventies when they created that well lot, which was the well for my property, the, the property that is on the other side of my property, that small one there, and then the Beckers, which they own, they have about forty acres over this way. So, that's basically what that was. And basically, my issue is, is, you know, bringing this down to three acres. You know, you're adding more people into an area where we've got the one road that goes in and out. We've got issues with water, fire suppression, I mean, just a lot of, you know, issues that most people deal with in the hills. In fact, I had the opportunity to speak with Julie Fry Mueller this weekend, and she was telling me about Bruce and Sandy Rampelberg that just went through this. They're wanting to get theirs put down to the three acre lots. And you guys actually opposed that to breaking down to the three acre lots, which I'm kinda hoping that you guys hold that same consideration for us in this area. But, you know, like Jo was saying, we've learned a lot with this future land use. Most of the lots off of Hidden Valley Trail are agriculture right now. You know, there, granted, there is a couple of, of lots that aren't. But, you know, if we could keep it agriculture, that would be great. But I do see that the future land use does say ranchette. And basically, that's.
So, Darcy, what you say was the well lot for your property then?
Yes.
Is the well there? Does the well exist?
There is a well there, yes. But.
Was that the?
Over time, we, we dug our own well. The people next to us, Sables, they run that, they have their own well. Beckers, they have their own well. My well is quite deep. It's about seven hundred and fifty feet. I do have issues with water. I do have to haul water. The Beckers on the other side, they do have to haul water also. When we put in our own well, we basically cut off ties with that well, you know, just, because we didn't want to be responsible for two wells, basically, so.
Do you know if that well is even being used at this time?
Yes, the Fishers are using that well. They're, and they're the only ones that are on that well at this time. But originally, when that was, you know, set up, that was the main well lot for everybody in that community.
Mr. Chair.
Over time, people have put in their own wells, and it is no longer that. I think that's what happened, is nobody else was using it, and so then they were given a permit to go ahead and build a house on that property.
Okay. Commissioner La Croix.
So, Darcy, you heard the compromise up here, instead of three to two, what's your thoughts on that?
Three to two?
Two lots instead of three. Two, seven acre lots.
I mean, that's a better compromise than three. I would prefer to keep it, you know, as agriculture, but that's just my personal opinion. I'm right next to it, and that's adding another person there with, you know, the water use. Like I said, it's, it's very poor in that area. We're, we're on a lot of rock fractures, and it's very unpredictable. But, you know, that's just my personal opinion. I would prefer just to have it left as agriculture, but five is better than three.
Well, you know, I kinda agree on you. You know, we hear a lot of the water concerns, and I, I understand that, but there are alternatives, cisterns, and you haul your own water. I mean.
And I do have a cistern.
Okay, so, I mean, that's what would probably be.
And I do haul water.
Okay. Okay, I just wanna know where you thought about the three to, because I'll tell you right now, you know, when I see three. Okay. I just want to know where you thought about the three to, because I'll tell you right now, you know, when I see three and a one acre one right next to it, I'm pretty leaning to like, why?
Right.
Why are you opposing this? Why didn't you oppose those?
Right. And that was done, like I said, in the seventies, way before, you know, we even lived there. But I, I would say five acres would be much better than three. Yes.
Okay. Any other questions for Darcy?
Thank you.
Okay. Michelle, you're back.
So, Michelle Malin Marwani, I live at 23921 Hidden Valley Trail. We are the property to the direct south of the proposed rezoning. The property that joins the proposed rezoning in addition of multiple vacation homes. We've lived there since 1991. Three generations of my family have lived in this home. And we've seen many issues over the years that need to be addressed as this developer plans on changing her very way of life. Every member of our road district, except the applicant, has repeatedly expressed their grave concerns about rezoning and adding multiple vacation homes to our largely agricultural neighborhood. We do not have formal snow removal. We do not have the resources to maintain commercial activities that this rezoning would require. We have limited funds for our road, and we have to volunteer our time and our equipment as it is. It should be noted, it was referred today, there's one entry and one exit on Hidden Valley Trail. We have one way out in the event of an emergency, and it's proposed that it's now going to be obstructed by multiple short-term rentals, as the applicant has stated that her CUP and rezoning plan of ag land is to build vacation homes. And you know that the first home is already been approved for that purpose. It's been mentioned, one of our neighbors, his house did burn because they didn't have enough water. Ours was the pasture that the, the emergency vehicles passed through. You know, getting a fire truck in and out of a pasture is always possible. So, obviously, we have some concerns, and we would ask you to take that into consideration. We even had lifeflight in our neighborhood that had to come and get a resident out of our neighborhood. We don't have the the ability to support this fire. Joe mentioned what, what our fire department is dealing with, and landed their own concerns, and we've already lost one home in the neighborhood. My family was there when the Battle Creek fire went through. We lost all of our equipment, our hay, and when we were finally let back in, even our tractor had been used for firefighting purposes. Our livestock had run off when our fences burned. This plan seeks to add a bottleneck of homes and short-term inhabitants between seven of us on Hidden Valley Trail and Necker Road. The applicant has already had out-of-state people staying at her house without your fires going. So far, this for-profit development has not looked very promising, given the lack of concern for our neighborhood. The water, we have expressed as a road district, our serious concerns about a neighborhood already experiencing water shortages. Darcy mentioned that she, so on one side of this property, people are hauling water. On the other side of this property, people are hauling water. Within the last year, a well dug adjoining this property has come up with a half a gallon a minute. Another well has been dug and come up dry. Other wells in the neighborhood have been tested, and they are low. And now, we're going to develop for profit. The weak sources required of the plan pose great risk of keeping adjoining property owners that have been here for decades from being able to raise livestock and hay or property. Our limited ag property. That's how we make our living. That's how, that's what's being threatened to take away from us. You're gonna take away our water for profit, for one person's profit, and put us at increased risk of fire for somebody's profit. The entire for-profit plan is in direct contrast to the Pendleton County Comprehensive Plan adopted in 2020. The plan that outlines a general approach for the development of the county and examines a number of concerns that affect the quality of life, current development, and future growth in Pendleton County. The guide addresses the very issues that we are asking you to consider. The applicant is proposing a move from rancher, residential to rural residential, so that's more septic systems, more wells on an already strained and overtaxed water system. This is only for profit. This is someone who does not live in our neighborhood. This is, this is not out of necessity. This was made very clear at the 11/28, November 28th Planning Commission meeting. It's actually two hours and 23 minutes into the video, when the applicant's short-term rental manager, William Wade Walther, stated the reason this property lends itself well and has, it is located very conveniently to local attractions. It is just over five miles from Bear Country. It's 3.6 miles from Old McDonald's Farm. It's 1.8 miles from the Gaslight Restaurant, right there locally in Rockerville. And it's about 12 miles from the Mount Rushmore Monument. We chose it for those reasons. And we live there. What he left out is what every real estate agent, lawyer, appraiser, and even members of this very commission have recently pointed out. This is a largely agricultural area, and the applicant had every opportunity to make an offer contingent on rezoning. And, and adding her numerous planned solely-for-profit homes to a well-established and largely agricultural and peaceful community. This type of contingency would have been the reasonable and responsible course of action as every member of the road district, excluding the applicant, has vehemently come out against the rezoning of ag land by a solely-for-profit developer for her short-term rentals. Local realtors have stated that vacation homes in the neighborhood lower adjoining property values, so we get to have a lower property value so she can make money. Incidentally, they're not doing it in their backyard, which is closer to those local attractions. Mr. Walther, the applicant's manager, stated that her fears of fire were unsubstantiated, and that was his word. While as a lifelong resident of the Hill City and Rockerville area, I wouldn't wish a forest fire like the Battle Creek fire that went through our property on anyone. It's not an unsubstantiated fear when my family lost everything. The applicant has already had out-of-state renters with open fires during this time of drought. The applicant seeks to calm our real fears by adding these rules, which again were stated at the November 28th Planning Meeting. Their stay would be canceled, and they would be risk forfeiture of retained deposit funds. That's the plan. And now the plan is to rezone ag land, add fuel to the fire, and literally stand between our families and the only way out in the event of a fire. We have to live with the increased strain on our limited water supply. We have to live with the increased real threat of fire. We have to live with and police a for-profit enterprise on what is agricultural land. In so many ways, this rezoning flies in the face of the Pendleton County Comprehensive Plan, which, goal LUH3 says the county has attractive, stable, and safe residential areas. LUH3.2 says the county should provide for stable neighborhoods by minimizing adverse effects from conflicting land uses. That's what we're asking you to do. This is ag land. We want it to be ag land. We don't want a for-profit developer that does not, and has intend, had stated an intention of not living on the property, using it only for profit, and we get to deal with the aftermath. In conclusion, should this rezoning plan go through, our very way of life that we've had for over 30 years is over with her short-term rentals in our well-established neighborhood, and it's all for her profit. We've been blessed for the past three decades to live on ag land. We live here for a reason that's now threatened in terms of water, fire, and basically a motel of sorts, minus the staff. We're now faced with the excruciating fear that we may have little choice but to sell and leave the home. The only home that my kids have ever been in, so she can have a motel. And that's what an Airbnb in my backyard is. We've raised livestock, hay, and more. I'm not gonna live in a neighborhood where my way of life is dictated by a for-profit non-resident developer. If we go, we have 20 acres. It is ripe for development. So whoever gets ours, they should watch this if this goes through. We have no desire to do that to our neighbors, the actual residents that live in this neighborhood. We live here. We work this land. We enjoy this land. Three generations of my family and every single resident in this neighborhood implore the commission to deny the applicant's request to leave the property as intended with limited ag and respect the rights of actual residents. Please stop the for-profit sprawl. We desperately want to stay in our home of 30-plus years and continue the same lifestyle that ag land provides. For all the reasons mentioned here, as well as those by every resident on Hidden Valley Trail, the unanimous position from the road district, excluding the applicant, we respectfully request that the permit and rezon be denied.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Blaster.
I have a question for you. I'm dealing with the road district. Do y'all, does your road district levy taxes? Because I heard you say something at the beginning, when you were talking about the road district and about how y'all all volunteer to do snow and stuff. Does your road district levy taxes?
Yep. So, what we have learned as a collective, we get about $3,000 a year, and it's not enough to take care of our, our road. Most of the maintenance goes towards the beginning of the road where there's most traffic, and.
Who determines that?
The road district.
Okay, so the road district determines.
Yeah, so where's, where there's the most traffic is where we concentrate our efforts. And it's a neighborhood. We plow it. We help each other. And so, that's really hard to stomach when we got no problem helping each other, but helping someone who's profiting, that, that's, that's hard, that's a hard pill to swallow.
Would they not contribute to the road district as well?
Absolutely. And make, it's a for-profit enterprise. They've stated it.
But they would be contributing to the road district?
Absolutely.
Okay.
Everybody.
Second thing I'd like to point out, or at least ask a question in, what makes you think that a VHR, Airbnb is gonna reduce property values? I've been watching property values for the last several months, and I will tell you this, as an individual who's been looking for property value, because I have to find a place, I haven't seen property values going down. I've seen them going up. Now, just recently, the market's showing a little bit of a trend coming down, but we had a high spike in 2021, you know, at the end of 2020, end of 2021. So, I'm hard-pressed to believe that a VHR, and, and all the neighborhoods that I know that we have VHRs and that we've seen VHRs, whenever they come in for equalization, their values are going up. So I don't, I don't understand how you understand or you can believe that the value's gonna go down.
So, here's, so first of all, I missed that bubble. And yes, I agree to an extent with you. But in a case like this, where a home is appraised for 750,000, and it sells for 925,000, because it's, it's moving into commercial, that's how it continues to go up. We've heard.
But VHRs aren't commercial. They're residential. They're classified as residential because that's the use of them. I, I understand, and there's a lot, there's a lot of argument, and and people will say it is a for-profit, and I, I agree. We, we may agree with that, but that's not how the state of South Dakota recognizes it. It recognizes it as a residential use. So we have to be careful with that, because it's not classified as, and I don't know, oh, I thought Megan was gonna come over here, because usually when I start talking about this, she comes over and just clarifies anything that I may miss, must speak on, but it's, it's a, it's a residential use. That's the use of the property. Yes, I get it. Somebody's making a profit on it, but if she could do that with her land right now, and there's nothing you guys can say about it either. I mean, she can, right now, do that with her home. Every single one of y'all can do that with your home, and nobody can say anything.
No, I read the Supreme Court decision as well. So I'm aware of what, which is a little bit different because they were dealing with covenants, but it still defines a home as what a residence is. So I understand that. I don't remember the rest of your question.
Well, no, I'm, I'm just trying to understand how you believe that property values are gonna go down with somebody who has a VHR, because what we have seen, and y'all can correct me if I'm wrong, we have not seen any property values go down. We've only seen property values go up in the neighborhoods where VHRs are.
I.
If, if you're gonna correct me, please, but.
No, I've got some comments, I've got some comments on that. I just, but I'd like.
That's not what local realtors have told us.
I would love to see some evidence. By all means, I would.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner La Croix.
I, I just want to make some comments on the VRBO stuff, because I've got the numbers. You know, I, I researched not only over the weekend, but I have one vacation home rental that everybody was opposed to when we bought it, because it has a shop, and I wanted to live there when I retire, but I use it, I pay for it. So I know the numbers, and the only way is for real profit, is if you have cash in hand and everything you're, you're making is total income. I finance. I, I'll be straight up and honest with you right here now. I'm looking at the numbers. I don't usually share my financials, but I'm making like $12,000 a year after payments and insurance, taxes, insurance, when I'm, and that $12,000 that I'm making is going right back into the property to keep it up. And as far as the residents in, in that property, the, the vacation home rental people are more respectful and cleaning and keeping up, because they're hardly there than, because I've rented it out for two months, and I was more aware and tear my house and the, and the furniture for someone living there than the VRBO. So, that's where I'm coming from. So I'm, and as far as property values, mine have gone up. So, I'll, I'll argue that with that, because, but I just wanted to let you know that, and even my neighbors, they were all up against it. But then, after it got done, wanted, rented it from him for his family. And then they'd come back and said, sorry, we didn't know. You know, they were just as hardset against it as you guys, as you are. And what I've read in this, the reason why I'm saying all this, because I read a lot of this in the pocket, and a lot of it's blanking people who VRBO is because of, they think it's all for profit, it's corporations and so forth. Yes, there are some out there. There, there are some investors. It's all slowed down. And quite frankly, if you go to a bank and try, wanna buy a vacation home rental for a normal person like me, it, it's harder, because you gotta look at the numbers, and, and the banks do a lot of different stuff, so. But, but the interest rates go on, that's all slowed down. So, I just wanted to explain it. I've heard a lot of negative when it comes to vacation home rentals. We've had a vacation home rental board, and we've got the young lady back here who was on it. They've made the requirements of one acre, put in some good restrictions. But it's not all evil and, and negative people that people want to bring it out to be, and, and I've got the numbers to, to prove it. And it's not just my place. It's, it's for the whole Black Hills area. All we have to lead, Deadwood, and so forth. They're booked about 150 days out of the year is the average, which it comes out to five months out of the year that you, it's used. So, I mean, if you look at it, I would rather have a vacation home rental in my neighborhood than probably a resident who starts leaving their junk cars around and don't mow the lawn, you know? There's pros and cons to both of it, so I, I just, I hate to see it get all broke up, because you think vacation rentals are gonna ruin your neighborhood, when in fact, it could be a positive. Just, just saying.
Chairman.
Oh, could I just, when we first met on this, there was a, a nice lady that was here for, I think, a church thing, that stood up and said, I feel compelled to tell you what vacation, when we were talking about this the first time, I feel compelled to tell you what vacation homes have done to my neighborhood. And she, and she was just in the crowd, and she talked about how horrible they were down in Thunderhead Falls, and how they're loud, how they've lost their peace, how they are dirty, how they can hear people partying at night. So, while I'm glad you've had a good experience, based on the, the research that we've done, and we have been poring over this, ours is not an unfounded fear. It's an $8 billion industry, just Airbnb. And if you start looking into it, and I would assume your committee has, the horror stories are out of this world. So, you know, if we're rolling the dice in an ag neighborhood, I think I'm gonna, I, you know, I respect your, your opinion, but we haven't seen it.
No, just, that's why part of our deal was, is the person that's responsible for the property has to be within 50 miles, if I'm right, or responsive to that neighborhood. Absolutely, you're gonna have, you hear that stuff, especially in Florida and some other places, you know? But I'm, I'm just saying, to put a blanket on everybody is not good. I mean, there are some people out there who try to.
Commissioner Hancock.
Okay, so, number one, I'm not against vacation home rentals, because I've seen them really good and really bad. Okay, so number one, I'm not against vacation home rentals because I've seen them really good and really bad. And I run motels and I own rental properties and that happens on everything that I've seen. It's either you have a good manager or you don't. I think that's what it comes down to. Number one in this area, if a lot of people are hauling water, I don't think it's a good thing to put, start splitting lots when you're hauling water already. That's number one. Number two, I think you're going to start exceeding the same forty-unit rule if you keep doing over five-acre lots. Again, I'm not against vacation home rentals. I think this is six, six acres. It uses less water in commercial development, by the way, than it does more. And you can look that up because I did and I know that for a fact. And this would be used less time than a normal person living there all the time for water. So my issue here is listening to people and saying they're hauling water in this area. So there is a, there's some type of water shortage. Number two, the road system, I'm into infrastructure, so the road system is going to end up being the same thing because people don't want to fix the roads. We've just saw it. We saw it all the way to eighty acres. So they don't want to pay for it. We can't even get people to pay for a half mile doing it twenty-four feet. So, um, for me, it's adding the density because of water usage, the road that's going to ended up being over forty units. And we have enough areas for people to build and, and to split lots and do stuff what they need to do. Two lots isn't bad because it leaves it about six and seven acres, something like that, which I think is fair and just in that area. But when you start splitting it down into, um, more of the rural, I think in that area, you're going to do what you've done to the other areas and have the same issues. So for me, if, if they split the lots, I'm not against that. If they want to split it smaller than Ranchet, I'll keep saying based on infrastructure in that area. Um, I never heard the other people say that on, on theirs, that it was a water issue or anything else. It was a road. But the safety factor was the road that the people lived on when they wanted to split the lots. So, um, that becomes a safety issue for them, meaning the people that live on that, uh, other road. In this case, we are going to add to the same and, and, and more issues to this road if we keep breaking down into smaller and smaller units, whether future land use, I keep saying, you could future land use the heck out of it, but you've got to have the infrastructure in order to support it, the drainage, the water and the roads. And to me right now, to keep breaking this down at this point, it doesn't make sense. Uh, because if they're hauling water, so, um, again, I can't agree with you on the VHRs because what I've seen, I just see bad managers. I see that in motels. I see that in rental units. It depends on who the managers are. If they are not taking care of their properties, then that's on the manager. It's not the VHR. Um, in general, I don't think. The horror stories also are when you put it in residential areas to the point where it's overloaded, then you're going to see that a lot more as well. Like Thunderhead Falls, those lots are pretty small and you're living right next door. If you live in like five acres and ten acre, uh, areas, I find that it gives a lot more space for people than order to do what they need to do to rent their properties. And I, I really haven't seen a lot of bad issues in that. So, um, that's for my two cents in this, um, mostly the infrastructure in that area. I have said that before when the people came in for ag in this area before because they had same issues. The roads and the, and the water they had to haul just to, just to be ag even. So, um, I, I like your way of life in the ag, but I also, um, believe that people should be able to at least split their lots and make, you know, somewhat of a profit off their land to a certain extent, just so they're not, um, being over facetious on what they want to do.
I'm going to try to draw these discussions to a close, but Jim and Anita, do you have something else that you want to provide?
Thanks for your time. I'm sorry it's taken so long. You know, um, there's multiple things that I wanted to talk about and I'm not sure, uh, but for sake of we're here and we're doing it, I, I guess I'm going to go for it, okay? Uh, first of all, on the value thing, I mean, what's happened here, I've been in real estate for the last twenty years. What's happened here in the last two and a half years is you've got people fleeing other parts of the country then, and put pressure on this place. So if you're able to buy something for assessed value, you should buy it. Because this appraised value, as Ron would know, as a commercial appraiser, is that differential between assessed and appraisal got really big in the last two and a half years. Now stabilized and it's coming down a little bit, but you know how that goes. It only comes down so far. So anyway, in respect to value. And, you know, vacation homes, no matter how you slice it, they're financed, they still have to appraise for it to work. Uh, the only thing a vacation home does is if you have a range, uh, between, you know, you say it's between this and this, the vacation home probably supports the higher range. But it can't exceed a range that you can't, you know. But we know the last two and a half years, you had people paying fifty thousand dollars over assessed value, uh, appraised value, excuse me, or over the listing price. So anyway, enough of that. With regards to the, uh, you know, fire is a concern. I have been trying to get ahold of the Rockerville Fire Chief since eleven thirty. Uh, of this, uh, I've called seven times, tried to stop by. The voicemail is full, yeah, since then. And I, um, was able to talk to her last night. Uh, it was contentious. She was very frustrated. Her comments to me, this is not my job to specify. Because my, my approach to her was I wanted to find out, well, if there's, you've commented on a perceived issue, what's the solutions? And her comment was it's your job. It's the planning job. And, um, so I, I didn't get very far, but, um, if, you know, if you were inclined to, so it made me think further, what, what would be a solution? Because they're saying water is an issue. Well, before I go into that, well, I'll go finish this. If you were to support the rural, the three lots, I don't think we'd have any problem saying on those two lots. And, and we'll step back. They're not being, trying to be vacation rentals, these two new lots. The current house got approved for a vacation rental. Not, not, we're not assuming that these other two lots would be, they're housing. Um, but on those two lots, we would have no problem putting a stipulation, which I was involved in on the old Hill City Road, two hundred and forty acres that were split in tens, uh, that demanded, uh, through this board, uh, that they be sprinkled, uh, that the homes have residential sprinkle system, which adds probably about fifteen to eighteen thousand dollars to a home built. And we would have no issue with that because we think that would be a going forward if, if the fire thing is such, you know, that, that would be, you know, a solution that could be provided, I think. So that's on fire. With regards to the well, the current house has a well that's drilled. And I looked at all the well logs and you guys know, uh, has maybe for the audience. I mean, our water is held in fractures because of the uplift that happened here. So to say that, in fact, the, the one that presumably the well lot, um, you know, was a hundred and forty feet, um, the best of my ability to figure this out and, and, and do a lot of investigation was seven gallons a minute. Uh, the well that the neighbor just put in, uh, in two thousand and eight, uh, was seven hundred and fifty feet at two to three gallons a minute. The well on the property, the, the house that is there now, uh, that, that is five hundred feet with six gallons a minute and fifty feet of static. So it has like seven, nearly seven hundred gallons of water in that six-inch pipe. You know, the calculation is a foot, you know, a gallon and a half per foot. But, um, so when you compare these wells, they're different depths, they're different static levels, they're different flow rates. Doesn't indicate that they're in the same, so my well over here isn't necessarily affecting, that's the point. In the hills here, your wells, so to say that one well is affecting another well doesn't necessarily equate. The only way I can give you data on that is by looking up the well logs and see what actually happened. Uh, with regards to access, you know, I've already mentioned that, you know, we're a quarter mile in from Neck Yoke. You know, um, I, I guess that's really, a lot of that's already been said. So, um, we, you get why we went with the rural residential because it was already a future land use on this property, although it's not the larger portion, portion of it. But anyway, um, staff felt it was, you know, has recommended it. Planning commission did deny it, but it was a four to three vote, so it was actually close. And, um, we, you know, if you would support that, we'd appreciate that. If not, uh, you know, the denying without prejudice would be appreciated as well.
Any questions, Jim? Thank you.
Thanks, thanks for your time.
Thank you.
Okay, I do not have a, a motion. I've got, uh, let's, let's put these back in the position now. So, uh, we're back on J, which is the comprehensive plan amendment. CA twenty-two dash twenty-one. Is there a motion?
I deny, make a motion to deny without prejudice.
Got a motion to deny without prejudice. Is there a second?
I'll second for discussion.
Public comment?
Oh, he's going to go, ask, Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lasker.
So Cody, deny without prejudice and sounds like they could come back and ask for, to split it to two lots instead. What would be that process?
They would just have to, oh, sorry, Cody Sack, environmental planner. They would need to amend their layout plan to throw the two lots and then they would just need to submit a, a new application for Ranchet.
So would that, they'd have to reapply, go pay the fees, double the fees, just like they just did?
They don't pay the fees again, Cody?
They would have to pay the advertising fees. They wouldn't have to pay for a full application. They would just have to pay the advertising fee and for the mailings.
Okay, that's what I wanted to know.
Discussion is back to the commission.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Lasker.
I remember Commissioner Hickok saying she felt more comfortable with it just being split. Is that, is that what I understood? Uh, was there any other concerns from the commission? I, I, I mean, I still kind of see that splitting it would probably be, you know, be beneficial as well rather than putting two more lots in there, but that's kind of where I'm at.
Yeah, I, I can't support two lots. I don't know if I can support even splitting them. Any further comments? All those in favor of the, uh, motion to, uh, deny without prejudice, the comprehensive plan amendment? Indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Item K, this is the rezon. Same property.
Same motion, deny without prejudice.
Second.
Hey, I've got a motion. Do I have a, and I have a... Any public comment? None? All those in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried.
Thank you for your comments today.
Item twenty-eight, items from the commission chair members. Commissioner Lasker.
Oh, I was kind of busy the last couple of weeks. Let's see, so we're doing just all the other stuff, not our committee reports, right?
Right.
All right, so let me kind of look at what my notes were. I guess we'll start with, was that the, uh, centennial celebration? And that was a, a pretty good, um, event for the county. That little time capsule of shingding and luck a lot. And then, of course, we got to do the, uh, the tour of the, um, of the courthouse, um, with Mike. Gary, you and I were out in Wall for the economic development, um, annual meeting. And they, uh, basically awarded Pennington County a friend of the, um, of, uh, Wall Economic Team. I don't remember the exact name of that, um, award that they handed us, but it's friend of economic development for Wall because of the work we did for the, the, um, the sewer line out there. For their, um, for their, um, commercial, um, industrial complex that's out there. I'm sitting there going, I'm trying to spin the right word that's coming out. Uh, I was at the Liberty Center, um, ribbon cutting ceremony. It was pretty nice. That's a, if you haven't been out to the Liberty Center out in Bucks, I'd encourage you to go out there and, and take a look at it. It looks pretty nice. Um, I was at the, um, I did a radio interview post-election and after our post-election audit. Uh, I don't know if any of y'all got to hear it, but I was on the radio for about two hours answering questions and I got a lot of feedback on that, um, from constituents and individuals that listened to the radio. And they were very thankful for not only all the work that I did, but, you know, thankful for the board of commission for listening to the, for the individuals and for us working together to put the, um, for the document, the letter that we approved today. So just to kind of give you all some feedback that I received from that. And then, um, I did miss the, uh, community health board meeting, but that's for committees. And of course, I've been at Elevate, uh, for the water line, the, um, the Sadida and the Air Base Water Line. We've had, there's been two meetings since our last, um, commission meeting. And, um, they're in the process right now of, um, they're finalizing who's going to work or, you know, who's going to take control of certain zones, Bucks, Alder, Sadida and, and Rapid City. And they're working on a cost plan to see what's going to work out and pencil out and then come back for the next meeting here in a couple of weeks to, um, to see where they can start negotiating for that price, for that price point. The goal is to have something at least pretty close to a final by the end of the year so that, uh, when we have our community meeting in March, there's something that can be brought forward so the community can hear about that. Not to mention the EPA and the bases has, um, given some insight that the EPA is probably going to set that PFO at a lowered number, for water contamination for those impacted by it. So that may grow some stuff. Outside of that, um, that's about all I...
Okay, Commissioner Lasker.
As you guys know, when we were doing, uh, that like council, I was in LA for a national humanities conference. As we were, our humans relation MOA commission was asked to do a presentation on the work that we're doing in Rapid City and what, what's happening here on race relations, relations and what's, how things are working. And so we were a panelist along with other, three other, two others, one from, uh, Arizona, a border town, city and then another, uh, town out of, uh, South Carolina, North Carolina, gave presentations. And so that was city councilperson, uh, can't think of her name right now. Armstrong, there we go. She, she was there, Karen Mortimer, Amy Sazu, LaFang Janice, myself. And, uh, it was, it was a very good conference. I think, uh, some of the, the workshops that I'd went through, through the humanities ones, I felt a little out of place because they were a little more college orientated for facilitating colleges and so forth. But, uh, they were really impressed with some of the stuff that was happening in Rapid City as far as, like the red carpet, uh, event for the LNI and they are really impressed with, uh, some of the other stuff going on as far as the powwow, how things are going with the hand games and, and not only that, but doing mediations and, and cultural awareness, things that are happening out there. So that was, that was really impressive and our co-group got to sit with the other three and they really did some great, networking is what I call it. Amy Sazu and, and the guy from North Carolina talked heavily about how, because the North Carolina one was more geared towards back in the beginning when slaves were brought in from their culture and, and how their language got taken, you know, not taken away, but lost, I would say. And so Amy and them had some good conversations because here you are, two different cultures, but have the same, some of the same stuff going on. And that was quite the same with, uh, the Arizona group. So that was impressive. Um, I do have to say, doing the electric count was, was grueling. Two hours on, on Zoom. I give it to you guys, at least I was on, on Zoom when I could shut my camera off. But I mean, going through each and every precinct, uh, that had to go, you guys did. I mean, it took about an hour and a half to get a real good rhythm going, but I think you, you guys finally got it. But that was pretty grueling. I don't know if we have to do that every year, but...
I liked it because it was, it was a...
I liked it because it was, it was a good learning experience, Lloyd, just because you really start to look at and you see the, the precincts over and over and over again. And then numbers and just the information that you, you know, we usually look at it, but we don't have to really look at it. You know what I mean? I don't mean that in a bad way. It's because it's, it's repetitious this way more than it is normally when we look at it.
I, I think.
Kind of crazy.
In that sense, yes, but I think there's a, somehow we need to break it out to where it's simpler for everybody to follow along. I don't know how we could do that, but, yeah, I mean, I, I seen the difficulties as how it was working and, and I couldn't keep up with you guys because I had to do, I had my computer, so I had to flip pages. I didn't have printouts like you guys did. So I couldn't keep up. I'd catch the ones that did.
Ash Leder should be an auctioneer.
But I, I just, I just wanted to pass that on that that was grueling. If it's going to be an everyday, every year thing, I think we need to find a way, a form that, whether it's from here to there. Something that would.
They did. They laid them out right along there. And I think Ron took half and Deb took half.
Yeah. Lassiter opened them and Cindy opened them, so.
But I just wanted to share that with the humanities commission, our, uh, conference that was very well attended and eye-opening for me. I've never been to a deal like that. Um, as you guys know, probably I can't remember earlier in the year, uh, with the safety justice challenge, I was in Atlanta, um, for their conferences. Our group was presenting their, their board, their news board and we attended, we gathered, we, and we networked. Um, we did have one networking session back then with just county commissioners from the safety justice challenge. And, and that's where this county officials advancing racial equity came into, uh, discussion. Uh, Cindy Heidenberg and myself, and I think there was about four or five other commissioners in there. And so when I came back from that, that conference, I'd gotten an email asking if I was interested, you know, if you're interested, you can apply for this, this, uh, uh, networking group. And so you had to do an essay and so forth. So I did the essay and sent it out and received it back that I was accepted into the, the network. Um, had my first session, talk session with, with, uh, I think her name was Leslie. And I explained to her, you know, the safety justice challenge for our county. She asked what, what can the county do for policies and so forth? I said, we, we really don't set policies for, for, uh, the equity and racial equity in the courts and safety justice system. What we do is we're behind the scenes. I mean, we have the care campus. We do, uh, we, we support our state's attorney's office with some of their diversion programs. And, and I, I said, quite frankly, what rap, what Rapid City has done and what we have done is, is, uh, we've worked through it. We've been on the flying deer and we've implemented everything. I said, what we could offer is, is help with other people as far as we can show them our numbers and give them some stuff that we, we have done. But, uh, there's going to be several of the county commissioners on this. And so our first meeting, uh, it is Thursday, the two-hour meeting. We're going to do two, uh, uh, virtual meetings, quarterly. So, uh, I'll give you reports on those and see how they go. But mainly what they're going to have is speakers. We're going to have one with norms for community practices, um, foundation of the core network and paradigm shifts, you know. So this is going to be a, um, two-hour meeting over Zoom. So I can give reports on that. But I just wanted to give you guys a heads up of what, on that that I've gotten appointed to, so.
Okay. Uh, this doesn't necessarily, uh, uh, come to me, but I have a copy of a letter from, uh, Governors Noem and Gordon, uh, out of Wyoming to address to Jeff Tomac, supervisor of Black Hills National Forest. This is overall more concerning the timber industry as we move forward. And, uh, the two governors say, we continue to have concerns about the future of the Black Hills National Forest. The Black Hills National Forest is immensely important to Wyoming and South Dakota, to our citizens and to our visitors. We are concerned about the outcome of the Black Hills National Forest Land Management Plan and the United States Forest Service's first attempt at assessing the Black Hills National Forest's current conditions. And they point out that they think they find some shortfalls in it. Uh, they said there's, uh, countless statements that are not backed by scientific material. Assessments also fail to include critical and readily available information that accurately portrays the current conditions of the Forest Service. And, uh, we request the Forest Service produce another set of draft assessments with a public comment period that those assessments include citations for factual statements and that they contain discussion of why one authority was relied upon over another. We look forward to meaningful participation with the Black Hills National Forest Forest Plan Revision Process, signed by the two governors. Commissioner Hagcock.
Good, except for committee reports. I did go to some of the stuff, but you guys reported on it already.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Roskinak. Your mic is not on.
I was told to shut it off.
No.
So this would be, uh, other than committee, uh, I got out of the hospital on the eighteenth and on the way home, uh, Sue was nice enough, uh, so I did a personal inspection of Hidden Valley and Barney Road. And then after those inspections, I take those pictures and I put them into a document. And then I put maps and whatnot and, uh, I submit those to Holly and hopefully you guys get them. If you, uh, still need some for Barney Road, I've got those exhibits and location maps, topography maps. So that was, um, more on a local level. Uh, Thursday or Friday, I went to the Black Hills Council, uh, or Black Hills Association of County Commissioners and Lloyd was there. And we got to visit with, uh, some of the representatives and, uh, senators, uh, talking about some of the current concerns that we have and, you know, what, uh, we might be looking at, uh, this next session. And it was a good visit. Uh, got to do some networking. Uh, Gary and I, we zoomed on the South Dakota Association of County Officials the other day. We participated in some discussion on the regional jail study. And, uh, the pros and cons and the unanimous decision was that we're going to go ahead and, uh, continue looking at that. It's not that it's, uh, going to happen, but it was something that we felt was still worth, uh, moving forward for discussion. And then finally, I, uh, Jay sent me the agreement for the Silver City Volunteer Fire Department. Asked me if I'd, uh, do the final wording on it. So I went through that. So what you read the day was, uh, what I put together and that's it.
Very good. Thank you, Commissioner. Back to Commissioner Lassiter on committee reports.
I was not at the healthcare trust board because I was, uh, ran late in that interview that I talked about earlier. But I was at the LEPC, uh, meeting and a couple of things that were touched on there was a comprehensive hazardous materials emergency response plan, uh, was reviewed and adopted. Um, they're also going to be looking at doing a commodity flow study for, uh, it's basically a comprehensive study related to reportable levels of the com, uh, the companies here locally. And so, uh, basically they're going to have a meeting in January on how to move forward with that particular committee, committee being formed for that, um, commodity flow study. And then, um, healthcare trust board, we talked about, uh, COBA rates are going to be increasing on the first of January. Um, we talked about some open enrollment. We talked about the life insurance premiums and the long-term, um, healthcare updates, uh, updates to the language. And then, uh, the retirees being able to still have their medical, uh, if they meet all those requirements, um, that they currently have right now for time and all that, and all that kind of stuff. So, um, that was the bulk of the healthcare trust board meeting. That would be it for me.
Um, community health was usual business.
Usual business?
Usual business.
Fair enough.
I mean, that, that's about the best I can put it. You know, we, we went over the dashboard, you know, number of visits per doctors and, and some of the finances and, uh, the numbers for the month were up higher from the, the month before. Um, and that's probably about the most I, I can report on that. It was usual. Um, the extension advisory, the 4H one, um, we zoom, I zoomed in and, you know, they talked how their budget was doing and how they had to do the increase and how they had enough to do it and, and so forth. And, uh, they talked about, uh, members are going to be coming, I believe it's January for approval for new members for the 4H. So that was part of the discussion. Um, after that, I'll leave the drainage commission to Ms. Hagcock.
Okay. So on the, um, planning commission, we've dealt with all the issues that come before the planning commission already today. The thing that I attended last week that was probably of most interest was the Western Dakota Regional Water System Conference, which was their second annual meeting. It was held in, uh, New Underwood. Had a great turnout for it. Had probably seventy-five or eighty people in attendance for that day-long, uh, conference. Uh, one of the things that I came away from there with, they had, they had a lot of great speakers, but the speakers that I took, uh, a lot of note on are those that run other water systems in South Dakota. Most of them all in eastern South Dakota. All of them are supportive of this system out here. And so, you know, that was one of the concerns initially is that we maybe get some, um, you know, feedback from other parts of the state of saying, you know, why do we need to have this water brought out to western South Dakota? But they all supported, which is, uh, which was really good to hear. And, uh, we, I participated on a panel with, uh, a number of mayors on it, just talking about, um, the need for western South Dakota for the, for the water for the future. And it was a excellent, excellent conference. Deb, back to you.
Ron's not next.
Ron be late. He's, since he's sitting on the other side of you today.
He's a second. So the Pennington housing and redevelopment, we looked at some of the budgets and moving forward with, um, what we want to do at the RAD, um, trying to pick somebody to do that for us. Um, we had some issues, as you know, uh, from the newspaper stuff in our, um, housing units, uh, two, uh, issues there. Um, the police department has been very beneficial. We have changed a lot of things in Pennington County housing with, uh, having cameras and different things too. And those changes have made a big difference for, um, safety for our, um, people, our residences. So I'm going to give that credit to the team, uh, and our CEO, uh, Brian Ockback. So, um, we talked about how we, uh, did some refinancing and some different things with the money even that, but that we had like a million of it for here. So, uh, when we were ready to go, uh, we'd even have a little bit more money, uh, than the two million that we had been financed just to get that project that we wanted to move forward from the county, um, where it needs to be because we already know because of inflation and all the prices right now, it wouldn't be the time to build. Um, the drainage commission, we talked about if we're going to move it forward in the future. It sounded like we had a consensus to do that. We also talked about, uh, we made motions on city lots. We gave city lots that were drainage lots back to the city, which worked really good for them and for us. So that was a no-brainer. Um, I do like working on infrastructure committees. So, uh, that was pretty awesome. So thank you for letting me be on that. Uh, the care campus advisory, uh, Barry, uh, told a really nice story about one of his, uh, frequent flyers, as he calls them. He, um, they, he really didn't participate in a lot of stuff, but they took him out to the Raptor Center. And he just like clung to that, like it was just an amazing story. It was one of those heartfelt stories that was pretty amazing how, um, they have changed this man's life. And it was pretty cool. And Barry was pretty excited to tell us. So I thought that was pretty cool. And we were a part of the Raptor Center because we all decided that that was a great place, uh, to take care of the, the birds that, like the eagles and the hawks and the owls, the bigger birds. And, uh, I thought that was cool because we were part of them as well as, as approving that. And we also said it was, uh, Kevin Tom's last meeting for our advisory board. So we all thanked him and, uh, told him how great he was because he's did an amazing job for Pennington County. And you already know that one-stop shop care campus that we have and the, the things that he has moved forward for Pennington County has been amazing, uh, for Pennington County. He's been a big part of that, uh, political arena in order to get money and those move forward for us. So we thanked him. So that was a pretty awesome meeting. Compensation committee. Um, you've seen some of what we've done today. Ms., uh, Carol talked about the day, uh, today, our HR director, um, did an amazing job at, um, asking the questions and, and moving what we wanted forward. So you did a great job today, Carol. I don't think I could have remembered all that or explained it very well as you did. And then, um, for the future, Ms. Holly's going to have a department head and we're going to talk about, they're going to not work, but they're going to talk about budgets and how they can, uh, look at Condrey and Gallagher and other ways to be able to do compensation that would work for our county. And I think that's pretty awesome because everybody has kind of a different idea in one sense and the other. I think it'll bring the team together in a, in a way that'll really, um, make it so it works for all the departments instead of just having the old way is the best way or this way is the best way. Um, they're going to put their heads together. So thank you for doing that. When is that tomorrow, Holly? Or Thursday?
Thursday.
Thursday, ma'am. So I think that's pretty good with our HR director and generalists, Carol and Ms., uh, Sandra. Then, um, what else do we have? Fire service board. Uh, we had our Thanksgiving party special. It was pretty cool. Um, we also did some changes on some of our budget and some of our, um, we, they talk a lot about, um, training and things like that at the awards. And they do amazing, a lot of training. I, I don't know how, if you guys know, but they, they train more than anybody I know, which I'm glad because they are, number one, um, it takes a lot of time for the volunteer fire departments to put that time in because remember they have other jobs. So to be able to have all those trainings and train, um, and be there for that in order to be in, um, basically a volunteer fire person takes a lot of time and effort. So, um, I congratulated people and them on behalf of this commission of what they do for us every day and that we're thankful for them. So, um, I appreciated that and what they do. So hopefully I covered everything that I've done so far.
Okay. Commissioner Roskinak.
How many has?
Uh, well, Deb kind of touched base on the, uh, Pennington County housing redevelopment. One of the things we did talk about that, uh, I did that on, they don't have Zoom. It's called GoTo. It's another platform that you can, uh, do the same thing I'm, I'm doing here. But we talked about our, uh, I think it's twenty-eight, uh, unit facility in Wall and the Wall Economic Development wanted us to dedicate that solely to the elderly and based on their, their latest, uh, housing study, it just didn't, that just wouldn't work for what we're doing. It, uh, we didn't feel there'd be enough, uh, demand to keep that building full. So we're, we're just going to keep it the way it is for now. But, uh, we would consider maybe down the road if somebody, if one of those entities wanted to buy the property, we would, uh, probably consider that, especially if we're considering repositioning to, uh, RAD. And about a month ago, we talked about how do we recognize long-term employees? So I, I offered to, uh, look at some different, uh, ideas. I worked with a company out of Keystone called LIU. And, uh, they had an assortment of different plaques and wording. And so I, uh, sent the, sent one to Brian. I said, well, this is the plaque I like. And what it is, it's a, a clear acrylic plaque mounted on a wooden base. And then it says, we, in recognition of your twenty-five years and, uh, you know, we, and then we put the logo on there. And I believe they got delivered today. And it would be anybody with, uh, from five years to thirty. I think we did ten or twelve of those, but they really turned out good. And, uh, I'm anxious to see, uh, see what they look like, the finished product. Then, uh, Elevate, I did Zoom and we basically, it was business. Uh, you know, we looked at the budget and their forecast. Now they're going into their second, uh, cycle, their campaign cycle, which would be two thousand twenty-three to two thousand twenty-seven. And, uh, you know, I think everybody's aware that they're going to be coming to the commission for fifty thousand dollars. And, uh, so that's something we gotta take around. I think their budget was about ten million and then Tom says, well, maybe we can get twelve million. But, you know, there's a lot of key players who are going to have to step, step up to that. Rapid City, I, I think they're doing, now they're doing it over five years. I think it's six hundred thousand a year. I'm not sure. But that was basically the, the nuts and bolts. It's more of a business meeting. And then, call me stupid, but I, I, uh, I, uh, I listened to the whole planning, uh, meeting that Gary's talking about. Start to be, start then. And it was, uh, probably in my, what year, 1:30, 2 o'clock you guys got done?
Yeah. Somewhere near.
So I was kind of, I seen a lot of faces today that I saw the other day. That's it.
Okay. I need a motion to, uh, for vouchers. I need one in the amount of, uh, for Commissioner Hadd- Haddcock to abstain on, uh, voucher for the Rose N LLC in the amount of a hundred dollars.
So moved?
I'll move.
Uh, we got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Next one is to approve the remaining vouchers in the amount of $7,148,303.86.
Don't move.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Now I need a motion to go into executive session.
Go into executive session.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carried. Ron, can you hear us?
Uh, yes.
Okay. Very good. So I need a motion to come out of executive session.
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carried. Okay.
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Laster.
Moved to place Casey Kendrick at DBM L4 Step 7, $3,083.20 bi-weekly effective November 27, 2022.
Second.
Okay. We got a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor of the motion indicate by saying aye.
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 Opposed. Motion carried. Uh, next one is, uh, Commissioner LaCroy.
Mr. Chair, I've moved to increase the 2023 annual salary levels for Pennington County elected officials by 4% to mirror the wage scale adjustment as listed.
Second.
We've got a motion and a second. Uh, any discussion? All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Now I got the second motion on this. I moved to allow the board chairperson to apply their signature to the Pennington County elected officials wage policy resolution 2023.
I've got them.
That wasn't on the agenda.
Wasn't it?
We have to do that at the next meeting. That resolution was not advertised or was not noticed on the agenda. That's.
Oh, so that particular one we have to do. Okay.
We'll take away that.
Okay. Okay.
You don't have that.
I mistake. I rescind that.
So on the risk management position?
That's not on the agenda either.
Okay. So put that on. Okay. I need a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Motion carried. Thank you.